Hi Trevor, thank you for an informative Brownett training today. Hi Jeffrey.
Hi.
Great seeing you there.
Sorry, Mr. Mr. Trading Trevor.
Hey Trevor. Been through a couple of them before.
Yeah.
Hey everybody.
Good evening, Craig. Craig, Dennis is joining right now. Yes, it's Skylar.
I have pneumonia Craig.
Uh, pretty good. I still have some sort of residual bronchial stuff, but I'm, you know, thankful to be here. How are you doing?
Oh, how much time have you got? Had a plan once, you know, that's not good for you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting a hint of that. There's Skylar. Hey Skylar, there's John, Dennis.
Alright. Okay. We're at six thirty-two, we got. Uh-oh. Who are we missing?
Um, we don't have on video yet Adrian and Richard, but they are in the meeting.
There we go. There we go. Mr. COVID with a tie-on.
Yeah.
You have COVID?
Yes, I did. I ended my quarantine and I can be back in society. I can start, you know, meeting people again.
And after today, you might be sorry about that.
Yeah, it's overrated. Okay. I think we're good. Good evening, friends and neighbors. I would like to call to order the special Malibu Planning Commission meeting of today is the thirty-first, May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting is being held teleconference due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are practicing in the, participating in the Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. At that screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing not to, wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up, but must be present in the meeting. Instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the raised hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is open. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute from each speaker that defers time for maximum total of eight minutes. Alex, would you please show that slide? And there it is. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Peak?
Here.
Vice Chair Massa?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Uh, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as staff recommends.
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll take a roll call on that.
Vice Chair Massa?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carings.
Okay. Since it's a special meeting, we, uh, they got the agenda, we part of the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's see here. Looks like we got a full house looking at us tonight. How nice. Um, okay. New public hearings, extension of, wait a minute. Wait, wait, what happened? Well, we have two things, that right, that's right. We brought those folks back. I remember now. Extension of coastal development permit number sixteen dash zero-six-four, variance number seventeen dash zero-one-one, site plan review number seventeen dash zero-four-two and minor modification number seventeen dash zero-zero-eight, an application to extend the planning commission's approval for construction of a new one-story, single-family residence and associated development, continued from May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have? This is just an extension, so. It requires a motion. We still have to have a hearing and a staff report and all that. Yeah, well, we had that thought because we had that before. Okay, so who, Richard, are you doing this? Director Malika.
Yes, I'm looking for.
I saw Tyler Eaton a moment ago, but maybe he's hopped in and out.
Perhaps.
He, he was going to be, oh, Tyler, Tyler's president, Tyler's president.
Are you hearing it?
Okay, now.
Okay, um, we didn't prepare a full presentation because it's just an extension, but I can give you a little bit of the background. So the, um, extension was submitted in, um, before the project had expired in March. And the, um, owner had cited a couple of things, COVID-nineteen and some staff delays. Um, his project is currently going through a, um, CDP amendment um, that is still being processed by the city. And the regular, um, CDP uh, is still, uh, going through plan check. But yeah, there's not much more than that. If you guys have any questions, uh, we're open.
Okay, um, disclosures.
Done. None, none.
None.
And none by me.
I have a question. No Tyler?
Thank you Tyler, um, or senior. No hands are raised, no discussion here?
I think, John. Public comment?
Raise my hand. Uh, just a quick question, uh. The applicant used staff speed as an excuse uh, to get the extension. Is that something we recognize and do we have a specific uh, reply period to be able to evaluate that?
Yeah, so we, we try to, um, oh, go ahead Trevor, if you wanna, if you wanna go ahead. But I was just gonna say, we try to, we try to turn things around within a reasonable period. Uh, obviously you guys know we have, you know, some staff shortages, uh, so we do our best to kind of maintain, uh, responses within thirty days. Um, I'm not exactly sure how long it took the previous planner to, uh, return this, um, owner's uh, response, but, um, but like I said, we do try to be reasonable about it. I would say in this, in this case, uh, you know, there's, there's other things brought on by the owner. Uh, the CDPA, um, is kind of, you know, a new, uh, project component that, that he is electing to go through, and so, um, you know, the extension of the CDP is not necessarily staff's, uh, fault.
Yeah, I, you know, if there was some significant delay by staff, I mean, it could be considered as part of good cause. I mean, that's what you're, you're looking for here. Uh, but I would doubt that any delay from staff would constitute the, the amount of time that they're sort of requesting here. So like, it's the amalgamation of that, that was probably a throw-in, um, you know, on it. And I'd be surprised if it's, there were any significant delays with staff. We are, you know, everything moves a little bit slow. That's just the normal processing speed. That wouldn't count as a kind of exceptional, you know, delay for good cause.
Do we need to open a hearing for me to make a motion?
Yes.
Go ahead if you want.
No, you have to.
We need to take public comment if there is any.
Oh, that's right. I'm very sorry, you guys, um. Okay, um, Rebecca, do we have anybody who wants to speak on this matter?
Uh, we don't have anyone who I'm seeing visually in the meeting, um, if James Byford is in the meeting, if you could indicate your presence by clicking the raise hand button. If there is any other member of the public present in the meeting, please also click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen at this time.
Okay.
I'm seeing none.
We will close that public hearing and, uh.
I will make a motion to approve as staff recommends.
I'll second it.
Great. Um, a roll call, please.
Vice Chair Massa?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, on to one B. Malibu Inn Motel. Coastal development permit number zero-nine dash zero-six-seven. Mitigated negative declaration numbers two-zero dash zero-zero-three and initial study number twenty or two-zero dash zero-zero-three, conditional use permit number eighteen dash zero-zero-two, variance numbers eighteen dash zero-three-zero, eighteen dash zero-three-one and two-zero dash zero, two-zero dash three, zero-three-five. And site plan review number eighteen dash zero-two-five. An application for development of a motel project continued from April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Now, for report.
I have a question.
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, this is for Trevor. We got a uh, email from Bill Sampson, who's an attorney commenting on uh, recusals and specifically uh, the state act and, uh, the, um, violation of our code section seventy-one, eighty-seven, one hundred and eighty-seven, four-fifty uh, pursuant to section ninety-one, oh-oh-three. Can you comment on that, please?
John, when we, uh, when we start here, then I'll come back and I'll, I'll point on that.
Okay, um. We'll go to our staff, staff report. Who do we have?
We have Adrian and Rebecca. Is he still connected? He let me know he was having some technical issues.
Just a moment, I'll scroll through. I was trying to locate the correspondence being referenced to send that over to Trevor.
Sorry, what?
Um, I don't see Adrian in the meeting at this moment. I suspect he's trying to reconnect.
Okay.
Do we take disclosures?
We have not yet.
We could do that.
Chair Smith, would you like to call for disclosures?
Uh, we can do that, uh, disclosures. I have nothing since the last meeting that was on, except that I talked to Adrian today about a couple of items in the staff report, uh, but nothing, well, obviously it's in the staff report, so nothing beyond that. Vice Chair Maza?
Uh, my disclosure is exactly the same as Jeff's.
Uh, Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, a couple, um. I looked in the window of Malibu Inn in April and saw that the large opening between the two spaces is still not blocked up. The council resolution of April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two required that it be an actual wall at least forty-two inches high. Um, there's a few portable, maybe three-foot stanchions with velvet. I'm sorry, who, who is trying to interrupt me here?
We, I just have some background noise at City Hall I'm meeting.
Um, uh, there's some velvet ropes that hang down to within a foot of the ground, so it, it's a violation of the CUP and the Jupa, I believe. I'm not sure if it's both, but I wonder if that has implications for this, um, application where they interact in terms of parking, for example. It's a code violation, and I guess Trevor, you could answer that in a minute. What else? I just, I got an email about, uh, not about, at quarter to six from somebody saying that they were trying to send an email this afternoon to all of us and that the city servers were blocking it as spam. I don't know, did, did they send it to everybody? Did you get a note saying that, or am I the only one? It was, you know, a, a, a review of the piece, a critical review. Uh, so I just wondered if, if that one email was being blocked, how many other bits of communication might we not have received this afternoon?
Do we, do we have any reports, uh, Rebecca, that there has been some kind of problem with, with, uh, the city servers today?
I have heard no reports of issues with the servers. We have been getting correspondence throughout the day that was being processed by another staff member while I was in the training. Um, if file size is exceptionally large, the city servers don't accept, um, I believe their limit is maybe thirty-five for an attachment. So sometimes people submit really large documents and they don't initially go through and have to have a reduced file size or be sent in multiple parts. But, but even the one that we got from, uh, I mean, you saw that you had one piece of correspondence, it was three hundred and eighty-nine pages and that came through.
Yeah, this was a two-page Word doc, so.
I, I don't see any sign of that. Uh, what, could you tell me the name of the sender by any chance?
Peter Jones.
And did he mention if he sent that to planning commission?
He said, yeah, did anybody else get that? Oh, I see.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so you guys got it. He, I, it, it, I didn't see any other names on it, so it looked like it was just coming to me. It was addressed to me personally.
Yeah, it was.
Okay, so, um, all right, uh, and that's it for disclosures.
Uh, Commissioner Pete?
Uh, no addition, or, I met with Adrian today, just pointing over some stuff in the staff report, nothing different than what's already in there. Last night I received a call from, uh, Steve Hakim and I didn't receive anything from him, uh, other than what's in the report, and that's what I have.
Okay, and the same with me. I talked with Stephen, uh, Keane today, um, nothing really, just kind of a call, um.
Yeah, I, I need to report too that, um, I had some email with him and I asked him, um, I thought a big part of the delay here was to get the regional water quality board stuff sorted out and that I didn't see any documentation about that yet, and he said they would be providing it in the meeting tonight. Which I have to say as an aside, is troublesome that we would be getting documents presented to us live, but be that as it may.
There's no problem. People can, are allowed to submit materials as part of their, their presentation. There's no requirement to submit in advance.
Yeah.
It does help, um, if it is large document to give time, but there's no requirement for that.
Okay, um. Do we have?
Hi.
There we go.
I, I can answer, I, I can address John's question now too, if you want me to do that.
Yes, please.
So, uh, I, I reviewed that, that correspondence and it was asserting that basically because of, of the professions of, uh, Chair Smith and, uh, Commissioner Peak, that they would be prohibited basically from, uh, participating in a project that comes before the, uh, planning commission because there would be some potential in the future, um, that they would have a financial interest. And there is no evidence that there, in that email, that there was any specific interest that they would have. And we know for the record, both have also explained that they are not, um, have no intention of, um, performing work on projects that, uh, do come before them in their roles as, uh, planning commissioners. There is no requirement for them to be disqualified under the political reform act. Um, the other sections cited were just a general provision stating that if there is a financial interest, you need to recuse yourself. Um, there isn't here, so it wouldn't be required. And the other one was, uh, you can't participate in a project where you are involved in the contract. Um, there's no contract here or evidence of any contract between, uh, Chair Smith or Commissioner Peak and the applicant or anyone connected there. Um, to my knowledge, if, if I'm incorrect, Commissioner Peak or Chair Smith, please correct me. But, um, based on the record, you know, laid before us here, there is no interest. Um, and we can confirm for the record, Chair Smith, do you have any financial interest, uh, in this project?
I do not. Had earlier today.
Okay, and there is no, uh, financial interest or, uh, you have with the applicant, correct?
Correct.
Uh, Commissioner Peak, is, uh, the, is there any financial interest from you in the project or, um, has the applicant been a source of income for you?
I wish, no, I'm just joking. I know, not at all.
Okay. So I, 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 I've not seen any, any, uh, evidence presented that would require, uh, recuse under the political reform act here, um. Nor has there been any, uh, you know, a basis been laid here that there would be a requirement for recusal, um, based on common law at this point in time, so. Um, based on that as the record, um, basically this is just a claim that, um, people in these professions cannot participate and that is, you know, not, not the rule in, in California. Architects and other people can all serve on a planning commission. They just can't be involved in a project where they have a, a financial interest themselves.
Chair Smith, can I respond to that? Because I'm, I'm really confused now.
I don't know why, but go ahead.
Okay, I don't need that ad hominem comment, all right? Let's, let me, let me jump to another comment I wanted to make, uh, later, but let me say it first. We've got a lot to get through here tonight. There's a lot of stuff on the, the, the menu and there are, there's legal parties and money on, on multiple sides of this issue, and it's very likely, a hundred percent likely that this will be appealed by somebody. And with that in mind, I think our main job is to get things in the record here, not to be fighting the money each other or, or, you know, being too opinionated about anything in particular, but just making a point of getting, getting our thoughts on the record and then moving on, and so I don't think we need to have any long discursive debates about things tonight. When something's been tabled, it's like, okay, there it is. We'll let the, the, the money players work with it later. So let me get back to this question though now, um. I, you know, I saw this and I went and looked at the, um, uh, League of California Cities guidance on this and it doesn't seem to say what you just said, Trevor. It basically said, and I'm using the language they have here. I'm looking on page ninety-two of their PDF. It says that recu- recusal is required if there is a realistic possibility, dot, 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 that, uh, they would have, oops, what did I do? I just turned, turned the page. Um, oh, here we go. If it's a realistic possibility that they would have an opportunity to compete for, uh, a benefit resulting from the decision. a benefit resulting from the decision. In other words, if they, if they had an opportunity to bid on this or similarly situated work, they would have to recuse. And the example they give, they say, yes, you can have an architect on a planning commission, but, um, the architect can't bid on a proposed new development because he might get architecture work in the future. And so I don't understand that, cause it's, and the architect case sounds even tougher than what we have here, cause he's, he has no prospect of getting the work on the, the application in front of the commission, cause it's already been architected. Right? So he's, but he has to recuse because he might get architecture work in the future. And so I, I don't know, I mean, this kind of speaks to what Bruce was talking about at the council meeting about, you know, if they're, if they play a development role in the community, then why should they be voting on development? But it sounds like League of California, and I, you know, I don't know what the state codes say exactly, but the league is basically saying, if you're a development professional, you're not supposed to vote on this stuff. You're muted.
That's, that's not what it says. I'm happy to look at anything you want to forward, you know, I mean, to, we, we discussed this topic a few times at the council meeting and at the training today. Um, you know, this, this, this has, has come up over and over, but you know, as we laid a record here, neither of these, you know, uh, commissioners is has any intention of, um, seeking any financial interest or anything in the property here. It has no connection or financial interest as it exists, you know, right now, so. You know, as we're sitting here. Any, any, uh, financial interest of them that would require recusal in this particular situation.
And, and I'm not accusing, I'm just, I'm, I'm sincerely confused here and you know, I guess the other side of it too is, recusal is a personal decision, but at the same time, there's if a decision is subject to invalidation because somebody should have recused, uh, how does that work?
Uh, it, it, it's, it's, it's not a voluntary decision if it is a financial interest, that there is a requirement under the Political Reform Act. It is, um, a voluntary, you know, decision, um, in other circumstances potentially. If they are aware of, um, any reason why they feel that they could not be impartial or that there would be an unacceptable probability of actual bias in that, or just to avoid, um, any appearance, they are welcome to recuse themselves. But if there is a financial interest in the Political Reform Act, um, the recusal would be mandatory. And like I said, I haven't seen any evidence that would demonstrate that that would exist here and require mandatory recusal in this situation.
Well, let's, um, talk about page ninety-two and around there, um, in this guide, in the coming days.
Sure, uh, forward me what, you know, the, the, the material, I'm happy to, to discuss it further with you.
Great, thank you.
Oh boy, um, okay. You ready, Adrian?
I think so. Hope I'm ready. Uh, thank you and, uh, good evening, Chair, uh, Smith and, uh, members of the planning commission. Uh, this item is, uh, for the construction of a seven thousand six hundred ninety-three, uh, square foot, uh, two-room, um, motel with a subterranean garage, surface parking lot, uh, area, uh, rooftop deck, swimming pool, retaining walls and, uh, septic system. At the January eleven, uh, twenty twenty-two meeting, uh, the commission asked, uh, staff to verify with the original water board, uh, whether the project uh, complies with the MOU, uh, between the city and the original water board. Uh, staff met with Dr. Jim Ken, uh, of the original water board, uh, to discuss the project on several occasions, including, uh, one time at the site. Dr. Ken, uh, concluded that the proposed project remains on the provision exemption list uh, despite the project changes, uh, since it was initially enlisted. However, he pointed out two main deficiencies in the project's, uh, OWTS design, uh, which, uh, include the average water, uh, waste, uh, flow and the future expansion, or the lack of future expansion dispersal area. The final, uh, revisions to, uh, the OWTS design report um, uh, show that, uh, the design now meets all of the recommendations from the city environmental health division, the, uh, regional water board and the city's third-party consultant, uh, Tetra Tech. Uh, the project includes a proposed and future expansion dispersal area and a separate future dispersal area expansion for the Malibu Inn. Uh, next slide. Um, part of the project also includes a rooftop swimming pool. Uh, the swimming pool was brought to question at the last planning commission meeting specifically whether the swimming pool is a permitted, uh, conditionally permitted or not a permitted use in the underlying, uh, zoning. Uh, the code is not clear in this matter. Uh, the municipal code does not mention whether pools are permitted, conditionally permitted um, or accessory to any primary use other than for residential, uh, zones. Uh, the LAP is, uh, similar but identifies pools for recreational facilities as a conditionally permitted use. Uh, both the municipal code and the, uh, uh, LCP uh, permit health clubs and conditionally permit motels, which are known to include swimming pools. Uh, the commercial office building, uh, across the street, the, the tide pool uh, was granted a CDP for the construction of a swimming pool without a condition, uh, uh, conditional use permit. The tide pool pool was restricted only, uh, to be used by occupants of the office building where the, uh, pool was sited. Uh, however, the same principles apply given that the tide pool pool was permitted without a conditional use permit, uh, for a non-residential zone property. Uh, it is, uh, possible that the pool was approved because as a use that is incidental to commercial development, it was not necessary to be listed as its own separate land use. Uh, staff, staff is seeking direction from the planning commission about whether it finds the proposed pool to be permitted, conditionally permitted, or not permitted at all. Uh, if the commission finds that the pool is permitted or conditionally permitted, then the resolution can, uh, be adopted as is. Uh, if the pool is found not to be permitted, uh, then the commission uh, may request to bring back a, uh, revised resolution as a, a consent item, uh, reflecting, uh, that motion. The subject property is currently a surface parking lot located immediately east of the Malibu Inn. Uh, the parking lot is used to provide the necessary off-site parking spaces for the Malibu Inn as a, uh, public and as a public parking. Uh, the existing parking lot consists of approximately thirty-eight of forty parking spaces. Uh, until recently, thirty-one of those, uh, parking spaces were required off-site parking spaces for the Malibu Inn. Uh, this, this meant that only about seven to nine parking spaces were allowed to be used for the public. In an appeal, the city council recently approved a separate application that allow, uh, the Malibu Inn to reduce its off-site parking requirements to twenty-three spaces. Uh, next slide. The proposed project includes a fire access, um, uh, one way in and, uh, two right turns out of the facility. Uh, staff is also conditioning the project to remove the next, uh, driveway approach to the west, uh, in order to improve access. Uh, both, uh, both access and, uh, parking will continue to be joined with the adjacent Malibu Inn. Uh, the applicant, the applicant is proposing auto lifts within the garage to supplement the required parking spaces and to, uh, rent, uh, the spaces to the public. S- staff, however, added a condition to the resolution that requires the lifts to be u- to not be used for public parking. Uh, this was done due to concerns about the code not allowing parking as a standalone use. And, uh, it would, uh, be difficult for code enforcement to regulate the, the proper appropriation of parking spaces between the, um, various uses. The applicant also opted not to pursue a public works review of a valet plan that would show safe, uh, uh, drop-off, pick-off, uh, pickup uh, and access, uh, for use of lifts or stacking vehicles in the aisle with. Uh, next slide. The project includes three variances, um. Uh, one of the variances is for construction on slopes steeper than three to one. The second variance is for the retaining wall in excess of, uh, the, uh, twelve feet required for, um, retaining walls are an integral part of a, uh, building. Uh, the proposed height of the, uh, retaining wall is twenty-one feet, uh, ten inches uh, as measure above, um, finish grade adjacent to the wall. The, uh, retaining wall would also extend below the finish grade to accommodate the subterranean parking level and, uh, provide adequate foundation. Uh, the, um, the third variance is, uh, for parking within the required front yard setback. The code requires that um, parking, uh, lots be placed within the side and rear yard, um, and, um, outside of setbacks, but not within the front yard setback. The front yard setback for the property is forty-seven feet, uh, five inches. Um, compliance with the setback would eliminate all the surface parking spaces between the building and PCH, which would result in a variance for less, uh, parking spaces than required. Uh, since the last time, the subject item was before the planning commission, the applicant reevaluated grading, uh, you know, grading calculations and found a, uh, an error in the grading, uh, numbers, uh, after revising the project to, uh, retain much of the soil over the vehicle access uh, into the subterranean garage. The grading, uh, quantities were never updated to reflect this change. Uh, with this error fixed, the total amount of non-exempt grading was reduced to seven, uh, hundred and twenty-seven cubic yards, uh, which avoids the, um, the variance. Uh, while the project includes twenty-three, uh, parking spaces for the Malibu Inn, these parking spaces were, um, accommodated below the building, which visually screens the parking spaces from PCH. It would be important to, uh, mention that, uh, staff would not be supporting this project had, um, uh, had they not, uh, found a, uh, solution that would avoid a, that would not have avoided a variance for the number of required parking spaces. Uh, the subterranean, uh, spaces added a considerable cost to the project, but facilitated compliance of the required parking spaces. The applicant, uh, also includes lifts as, uh, extra parking spaces. It should be important to know that the code does not have any provisions against the use of lifts provided these spaces are not uh, required to comply with the minimum, uh, parking regulations. The commission may choose to include the, uh, lift parking spaces. Um, or they may choose to exclude, um, the parking spaces, um. Uh, until such time, the applicant demonstrate a valet plan is submitted and is accepted, uh, is acceptable to the, uh, public works department. Uh, next slide. Um, here's a photo simulation um, of the project. I have all my notes here. Um, there has been some questions, um, brought up in some of the public correspondence about um, the, you know, the, the point, um, some, some people are making that the property, um, hillside, uh, constitutes a bluff. And, uh, I have a couple of definitions, um, one from the local coastal program, uh, that defines coastal bluff. Uh, it's defined as a high blank or bold headland, uh, ten feet or more in vertical extent with a broad precipitous, sometimes rounded cliff face overlooking a body of water. Uh, we also have a coastal commission, uh, definition. And they define bluff or cliff as a scarp or steep face of rock, uh, weather, rock, uh, sediment or soil resulting from erosion, uh, faulting, uh, faulting, folding or esc- uh, excavation of land mass. The cliff or bluff may be simple, uh, planar or curved, uh, surface, or it may be, uh, step-like in, uh, section. For purposes of the, uh, statewide interpretation guidelines, cliff or bluff is limited to those features having vertical relief of ten feet or more. And sea cliff is a cliff whose toe is or may be subject to marine erosion. Um, while evaluating the hillside, um, we did not, um, find any evidence that the hillside was created through wave action. Um, it appears that, uh, they're just part of the normal, uh, rock formation. However, if the planning commission feels that, um, this is a bluff face, um, then we would have to continue the item and apply a variance, um, because the development would be on a bluff face if that would be the case. Uh, next slide, the slide. So, um, there was a, a correspondence from the coastal commission. Um, the main point, uh, from the letter was, um, that the applicant should be providing low-cost, uh, overnight accommodation onsite, um, instead of, uh, paying the in-lug fee. However, after, uh, careful review of the LIP, uh, requirements, uh, the code does allow for the in-lug fee, uh, to be, um, uh, to meet the requirement of offsetting, uh, the need for, for affordable, uh, overnight accommodations. Uh, and the applicant opted to, uh, pay the in-lug fees, so the project would be consistent with the code. Um, as conditioned and mitigated, staff recommends, um, the approval of the proposed project and adoption of the initial study and M and D. Uh, staff added a couple of slides requested by commissioners to be included in the presentation. Uh, these slides can be made available upon the request of the commissioners. Um, this concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Mazza?
Yeah, I just want to correct one thing, uh, for starters, and that's Adrian, um, made the point that the Tide Pool Gallery got a pool and the pools are acceptable for, uh, for motels. Uh, if you look on page five of the LIP on motels and hotels and swimming pools, a swimming pool may only be granted for use per- permitted only if available to the general public. Period. And that was the case in the, in the Tide Pool Gallery. Um, this is a very hard and fast rule. This is, this particular project is restricted to n- the public not using the pool. And in the case of the Tide Pool Gallery, I appealed to the coastal commission. Uh, and they accepted, and we're going to hear the item. Larry Ellison's attorneys came to me and the city staff and we worked out an agreement to drop the appeal if the Tide Pool Gallery was restricted to not use the pool until they rezoned. And to this day, which has, it's been maybe ten years, they still have the cover on the pool. It is not allowed to be used and there's absolutely no question about the intention of the LIP taking. Um, no question at all. And I've got the file on it if anybody wants to read it. Um. So that's, that's a misstatement. Um, now. Um, I also want to understand where these auto lifts are in our, our, um, um, what you call it, uh, the conditions, because auto lifts are not proper sized. And we've gone through turning down, I believe, five projects for using auto lifts consistently. Uh, blue plate, uh, there's four or five of them. Uh, in fact, right across the street, right on the same-sided street, the Husky Boy, the Malibu Inn tried to get car lifts so they could get a pool for their hotel, not motel, and we turned them down. So, but I don't see it in here anywhere. Now, this is obviously a giant report, but I don't see a, uh, a provision that allows in, in our approvals and they are not standard size and may not be operated by the public. So on any, any, um, emergency, people can't get out. They can't get their cars. people can't get out. They can't get their cars. But it's been consistent determination by the planning commission that they aren't, aren't allowed. Now, we were supposed to treat everybody fairly, but we should at least where, where does it say, Adrian, in here that they are, they are approved? Because I don't see them. Now, we didn't get a giant set of plans, so is it in here somewhere? Or is it something that?
It's part of the architectural drawings. I'm also sure it was mentioned in the staff report, but I can, I can verify if you'd like me to.
So to get rid of them, we have to make a provision that they can't be in there, right?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the in-lu fee situation. We all know, we all went through Norm's Hotel over and over and over again. And the result of that was the coastal commission said, no way. No way you're going to pay fifteen grand to get out of this, which is what our requirement is. I think they ended up charging him a hundred and fifty thousand per space. But this idea that they don't need to provide this is questionable at best. I just want to point that out because we, this is going to coastal, obviously. And they're not going to go along with that, obviously, because they haven't just within the last month or two. So I want us to consider that. Now, I guess we can get into this later, but the hotel itself or motel, what is really a hotel. I want to ask you about this change in grading because it is fifteen feet from the the retaining wall and something like a hundred and forty feet long. And that amount of grading still was graded. There's no way it has dropped down to that small number unless you're somehow figuring that that piling the dirt on top of the parking lot is something. Trevor, you want to talk?
But, you know, I, you know, unless these are questions that we need to get up before the public hearing, we should do that. I just want to make sure we don't get into too far into analysis.
I just want to I just wanted to point out that that Tide Pool Gallery analysis is absolutely not true. And the, the page five of the LIP use table is Claire's Bell. I was reading it directly off of that sheet. So let's go to public.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Chair Smith.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd have a few questions before the public hearing. I had asked Trevor about the the implications of the enforcement violation at the Malibu Inn. Is that, does that impede these hearings in any way? Or that's dealt with as a separate thing?
Sorry, you're talking about code violations on the property right now?
Yeah, the wall between the, the, it's supposed to be a wall and there isn't.
Yeah.
Trevor, he's talking about the Malibu Inn, which is the property next door, which we just did a CUP on.
Okay, well, you know, this isn't a code enforcement action. Is there, is there something, is this wall preventing, affecting this project in any way?
That was my question. There, there, there's interaction on the parking and that code, the wall was conditioned of the Jupa. So I just thought, you know.
Adrian, with this, with this wall, there's a unpermitted or a wall that's operating in violation of the Jupa conditions. Is this wall, I'm not aware of this wall or what the issues are with it. Is that impacting the operation of this proposed project here that we're considering tonight?
I, I think what we need to also point out is the, the fact that the resolution for that project was just, was just issued. And so we haven't given the applicant enough time to bring the site into conformance based on conditions that were imposed in that resolution. They do have time to do that. So as far as planning would be concerned, they're not in violation because we haven't really given them enough time to bring the site into conformance.
Fair enough.
But the, once, once, you know, and again, the resolution on that, I think, was recently signed and, and provided to the applicant. We have yet to get an acceptance of condition affidavit. So, so the CDP is not even in effect yet. So we want to give them enough time to address everything. Once, you know, if we give them enough time and they're not complying, then at that point we can open a code enforcement.
Got it. Good. Thanks. For the record, Skylar, you have watched all the past commission hearings on this. There are three dates in particular, we had actual hearings.
Yeah, it was pretty exhaustive and I did it before our last meeting on this.
Okay, right on. Oh, yeah, I, I spoke with Trevor yesterday about some other matters and he asked if staff was still recommending denial. And I said, well, I don't know, I've seen this application for a few years and it's always been for approval that I knew of. So Adrian, you just said that you might have recommended denial, but for the fix in the parking space numbers. Was that the only reason why this might have ever been considered for denial?
Well, no, there were a lot of reasons. The, the application's been around for a long time. We actually worked on multiple issues over the, the course of the application. But one of the sticking points from the very start was that we were not going to support this project if they could not find a way to provide the required parking spaces in, in compliance with the parking regulations in the code. And so, and you know, they had a, they had a a challenge in that they also have to provide some of the offsite parking spaces for the Malibu Inn. And so without, without being able to provide the required parking spaces and trust me that they tried arguing for reduced parking spaces because one was primarily a nighttime use versus the other was more of a daytime use. And the code does allow for a reduction in parking spaces and they, they asked for, you know, lifts and various other things. But again, one of our sticking points is that they needed to comply with the not just required number of parking spaces, but the dimensions required by code in terms of both the standard sizes and the number of compact parking spaces. And once they were able to do that, then we were able to move forward with the application.
So you don't need to go into detail now, but apart from the parking, you just said there were a lot of other reasons it might have been denied. But, right? Okay.
Yes.
A couple more threshold questions here. What were the, it says in the report that there were changes to the plans that were date stamped on March tenth, twenty twenty-three. That's really recently. It's Hakeem Letter of April twelfth said that. What, what, what changes in the plans were made then?
Primarily, the, there was, I think there was a dimension change on one of the sheets. There was an error and then the changes to the grading plans that we discussed in my presentation where they corrected the numbers.
Okay, that was that one. And then, by the way, thank you to staff for watermarking the draft with the big word draft on there. That didn't go unnoticed. And then on, on the question about the regional water quality control board, we're just told that the Dr. Kang came out and he looked at it and said, this is fine. This is, you know, good to go. Is there any letter or documentation from them to that effect?
There were multiple meetings with multiple city staff and, and the very last meeting, there was a a, you know, a statement made by them that they were okay with the project. But no, we did not get anything in writing, just, just their statement and staff attesting to that statement.
All right. Well, those are my questions. I find that answer problematical at, at, at least, but if nobody else, I'd be happy to open the public hearing now.
Okay, let's do just that. Rebecca.
For the applicant team this evening, we have Alex Hakeem, Stephen Hakeem, John, and then John Yaroslavsky, Sina Samimi, and Doug Burge are also available for any questions. So we'll open with Alex Hakeem.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission and Chair Smith. This is Alexander Hakeem. I'm here with my brother Stephen and we are representing the ownership at two two nine five nine PCH. My brother Stephen and I have been ingrained in Malibu for close to fifteen years now. One of our first jobs was waiting tables at the Malibu Inn and managing the restaurant and bar. We have seen this property change throughout the years and and we are proud of what we accomplished there. The property is now home to Aviator Nation and Aviator Nation Dreamland. And it is one, one of the top brands in the country and is operated by a local and we're very proud of what we're able to accomplish there. Next slide, please. And being in Malibu for so many years, we've noticed that there's an inherent problem in the city of Malibu. There's a severe lack of motel hotel accommodations. We have heard from many different people, locals, saying that have friends and family visiting for Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, holidays, and other momentous occasions such as their son or granddaughter graduating from Pepperdine, and they have nowhere to stay. Malibu Beach and Nobu are too expensive. Airbnb has also gone rampant in this city. So many locals have told us the neighbor next door to them is Airbnb-ing their home. The people who Airbnb their houses don't care about their neighbors. They throw parties, they make loud noise, and then they leave. Next slide, please. We have a solution, part of a solution towards this problem. We're proposing a twenty-room motel. Next slide, please. And as you can see, it's situated very nicely in the commercial visitor serving zone next to two other hotels, Surf Rider and Malibu Beach Inn across from the pier. Next slide. Next slide. These are just some renderings of the hotel, of the motel, and you can see there's a rooftop bar. Next slide, next slide, please. And some seating as well as a pool facing the pier. Next slide, please. There's definitely criteria to build a motel in Malibu, and we wanted to go through them. Is the project zoned for a motel? Yes, it's in a CV one commercial visitor serving zone. Does it meet the code for parking? Yes. Does it meet the strict FAR guidelines of Malibu? Yes. Does it have approval from the Water Controller Control Board? Yes. Does it have support from the coastal commission? Yes. Does it meet the height requirement? Yes. Are there findings to support the limited variances? Yes. Is it in conformance with the LCP, MMC, and Malibu General Plan? Yes. Does it fit nicely in the surrounding area? Yes. Next slide, please. There are also many positive this motel will bring to the city of Malibu. It will provide an affordable option for friends and families of locals to stay. It will provide approximately five hundred thousand to a million dollars in TOT revenue to the city. It will help curb the Airbnb problem that has plagued this city. It'll decrease traffic and congestion on PCH. It's a significant upgrade to the fire flow and water meter in the neighborhood. We will be paying close to about three hundred twenty thousand dollars to the water district. There will be less vagrants and trash in the current parking lot. We'll be beautifying the neighborhood across from the iconic pier. We will employ locals and we'll help the surrounding businesses. Next slide, please. We think this project should be approved on its own merit. However, we want to be good neighbors and create a project that everyone loves and addresses all the community concerns. Next slide, please. There's been some community feedback about this being a hotel and not a motel. That is false. The project does not have any meeting rooms or spa or massage rooms. The motel is only open to motel guests. The prep kitchen is only to serve motel guests, unlike the hotel, which is open to anyone and everyone. There's a separate entrance leading directly from the outside of the building to automobile parking space conveniently located on the lot or parcel of land, which is a direct definition of what a motel is. Next slide, please. Doesn't have approval from the water board. That is false. We have verified again that this project is on the four ZZ list and within the average gallon, daily gallon flow from, which was requested from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Dr. King from the water board has blessed this project in writing and in meetings with staff. And there's also a conformance review that has been completed. Next slide, please. I will now show the conformance review being completed. It's checked off. It is signed by Palo Quinto and the date on the bottom. Next slide, please. This is our conformance review. This also stamped and completed that has a date showing all of our gallon flow and calculations. Our engineer, John Yaroslavsky, is available to discuss this further if needed. And also the bottom right corner, there's also final issued for permit as well. Next slide, please. And I know this was asked if there are a letter from Dr. Kang. Adrian, there actually is. He is a letter to Palo Quinto. Since the property is on the four ZZ list, it seems that concurrent review from the Regional Quality Control Board is not required. Next slide, please. This project will increase traffic on PCH. That's false. In initial study, M and D, traffic study and public works all agree there's no increased traffic. The parking will only be for motel guests as opposed to an uncontrolled public parking lot, which is currently there. We'll be adding another point of ingress and egress. Circulation is drastically improved coming in and out of this new project. Next slide, please. The arrow that you see is currently the only way to get in and out of that parking lot. There's a bottleneck that happens because there's only one way in, one way out. The circle that you see in the bottom right corner is the additional point of ingress and egress that will be adding to the project site. Next slide, please. Here's a closer look now, the additional point of ingress and egress with close to thirty-foot wide fire lane for a fire truck to be able to go through the much, much better traffic and circulation for cars to be able to float in and out of the new project site. Next slide, please. And here's a closer look at the new point of ingress and egress showing cars being able to go in two lanes, and you can go down into the subterranean parking garage. Next slide, please. People have said that this is not within the twenty-four height limit. Straight from the staff report, height, the motel would reach a height of two stories or up to twenty-four feet above finish or natural grade with an elevator shaft at twenty-three feet, eight inches from finish grade. Next slide, please. On January eleventh, the planning commission asked us to come up with evidence to support the findings for the limited variances. Next slide, please. We have come up with several projects, some before cityhood, some after cityhood, that all have large retaining walls or have cut into the slope. And most of, a lot of Malibu on the PCH side over there would not be able to be built without these retaining walls. Next slide, please. We also go further into detail about those in the staff report. There has been discussion about the pool in the last minute of this project, which we don't even know where this came from. In the previous staff report, there was a quote. The permitted chart in the LIP indicates that swimming pools for recreational purposes are conditionally permitted only if available to the general public. The tide pool for Casa Motel and Sea View Hotel were approved to have swimming pools because it was previously determined that hotel motel related swimming pools are open to guests which consists of the public. The pool is also incidental to the motel and not its own separate lane use. We cannot build this motel without a pool. Unfortunately, due to the strict FAR guidelines, the motel rooms are not that big. They're quite small. And we are going to be competing with the June Motel, the M Motel, the Sea View, and the Nobu Hotel, which all have pools. We're going to be at a severe disadvantage and we need to have an amenity to be able to draw our guests in to be successful. And there's no reason why we should not be able to have one. Next slide, please. There are some conditions that, there are about a hundred twenty conditions placed on this property. There are only about four that we have an issue with that put us at a competitive disadvantage that other motels and hotels enjoy. Next slide, please. Firstly, is the liquor hours currently as proposed, we can't even serve a mimosa or a beer for brunch if guests are coming from out of town. They're too restrictive and the CV was just approved for certain hours of operation for liquor. We'd like to match those hours of operation, please. Low-level ambient music. Currently, we're not allowed to have any music, not in the hallway, lobby, pool area. We want to get to give guests a pleasant experience to be there. There's no reason why we shouldn't have low-level ambient music in the common areas, as, as long as it's not plainly audible within five feet of any residential dwelling. There was a noise study done for this project as well as a noise study that was, had a planning commission hearing and was approved for the CUP for the Malibu Inn next door on the outdoor patio, which allows low-level ambient music till ten PM. And that project is closer to the residences than this project is. There's no reason, the traffic on the PCH is louder than low-level music to, to give an ambiance. Next slide, next point, public parking and lifts. It is a shame for us not to be able to provide parking to the public. We read Joe Drummond's email and Joe Drummond had a lot of false points in there, but the only good point she had was that she said that we are not providing public parking to the beach. We would like to be able to provide beach parking if it's available. There will be times when the motel is not full and it's a shame not to provide beach parking. We have the ability to provide lifts in the subterranean level, which we, we should like to explore, but we, there's no point in doing that if we can't provide beach parking. We don't need it, but we think it's a nice thing to have. And the next one is the number of employees. We meet the code for parking. No other project has this restriction on the number of employees. We'd like to remove this restriction on the number of employees we can have. We meet the code. And there's no reason that why we should have, be the only establishment to have this restriction. Next slide, please. Next slide please. In summation, we feel as though this project is a huge home run for this great city and the locals. We have listed about a dozen positives we know this motel will bring. And we can't think of any negatives. Some people have spread lies and misinformation in order to delay this project. We can't afford any more delays. This project has taken an exorbitant amount of not only our time, but staff's time as well. Planning staff has given us hell to get to this point and they are recommending approval. Their recommendation should count for something. Let's please focus on the facts and finally give the locals what they are asking for and bring this much needed project to fruition. Thank you. We'll save the rest of our time for rebuttal.
Thank you. You have four minutes and thirty three seconds remaining for rebuttal. Um our next speaker, well, actually before we call our next speaker, could I please see raised hands for those of you who are planning to donate time this evening? Okay, and um. Tia Renee, could you tell me who you are planning to donate your time to?
Hi, I'm in front of the hotel and I just, I sent an email and I have something to read as well.
Okay, well, if you could pause for that, at the moment, I'd just like to get an idea of who has an intent to not speak, but instead donate their time. To another speaker. That's fine. Uh Rosemarie?
Hi, um would like to donate to Joe Drummond.
Thank you, Colin. And Rosemarie?
Hi, yeah, it's Rosemarie Idy. And I will donate. One minute of my time to Joe Drummond. Colin Drummond will also be donating one minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this time, um I'd like to open for Joe Drummond. And. You'll have five minutes. If you could give me just a moment to find your speaker identity.
And I think there's a video to play. Let me know when I can go.
You can go now. Thank you.
So Trevor just commented on their B B K document sent to city council and even though Chair Smith and Skylar Peak's contractors income relies on new development and appear to have a conflict of interest. Serving on this commission, they apparently need not recuse themselves. For the public's sake, this meeting, I hope your comments that you both will never work. Or bid on this project or any other project. Hold on, that's enough. It is hopefully not a question that if Smith and Peak participate tonight, that the outcome of this hearing may be held to be invalid. I hope you both see the multiple code violations and. So to get to this item, firstly, the height reported in the staff report is inaccurate. The first floor as measured from the ground level according to planning. I'm just waiting for the video to keep going.
Can we pause your time if the video's not operating? It's supposed to.
Okay, yeah. So firstly, the height reported in the staff report is inaccurate. The first floor is measured from the ground level according to planning, which is four feet above the bottom of the garage. Is eleven feet. The second level above this is eight point one feet and the third level is eight feet, which makes a total of. Twenty seven point one feet, which is far over the twenty four feet allowed. For a flat roof. Also, the over forty six foot high retaining wall would be the highest ever allowed in all of Malibu. The commercial development standards show twenty four feet is the max allowed and in no event shall the number of stories above grade be greater than two. With the rooftop pool and bar area and elevator access, this is actually four stories. All needs to be addressed before moving forward. It towers over next door's Aviator Nation. There should be no pool, food or bar service, public special events such as weddings, et cetera. Or parking on a different level than the rooms which classifies it as a hotel, not a motel and requires a change in zoning from C V one to C V two at city council level. Even Alex Hakim called it a hotel. The plan is to remove over twenty million pounds of the coastal bluff. The California Code Regulations Article eighteen, section thirteen five seven seven. Says coastal bluff is those bluffs, the toe of which is now or was historically generally within the last two hundred years, subject to marine erosion. And this means over a thousand truckloads carried off the site, blocking traffic and causing safety issues and delays on P C H for years. There should be a variance as this is not supporting the whole structure just underneath. Imagine that the trucks multiplied by a thousand. The area designated for a hundred percent expansion area for Aviator Nation septic is the entire lot of the proposed hotel. The applicant cannot just modify these plans. They must go through the proper channels to change it. It's been stated by the project's geologist that the area has high groundwater, but no further necessary details have been given. High groundwater can infiltrate the already. Overcapacity septic system and overflow into our delicate ocean. Our beaches are already polluted with, which has caused water ban in the area. This new markedly different project with four times the fixture count should have been required to submit a new application after ten years and thus would not be allowed in this area. A variance cannot be granted that would allow reduction or elimination of public parking for access to the beach, public trails or parklands. I don't know how planning department got this so wrong as the public parking lot is regularly full, especially in the summer. And there is not enough parking for Aviator Nation events, which require a minimum of sixty eight parking spots. According to the transportation study completed, and they only have twenty three spots. Parking lifts would be dangerous during a power outage, also during evacuation. Evacuation during an emergency will be difficult as it is configured worse than Nobu Soho House, where emergency vehicles could not even get into the parking lot during the fire last year. They have at least two exits and entrances where this will have two exits, one of them going right through Aviator Nation, which causes chaos. And will not be safe on one of the most dangerous highways ever. The noise study was not completed properly, one from Aviator Nation and the other right above. It will certainly disturb the peace for the children and babies at the daycare center next door. A liquor license can also be denied within the immediate vicinity of a church or school or residence also. The affordable housing details also have not been submitted by the applicant as required by the coastal commission. The Malibu Beach Inn charges over eight hundred dollars per night during the week. And the June Hotel, four hundred dollars to seven hundred dollars a night, so it must be somewhere in that range and not affordable housing. Therefore, there must be a specific buyout made to the city as a condition. This is far from the least environmentally damaging. There was a couple of plans submitted. For the former retail project that did not cut into the bluff at all and use way less wastewater. These should be considered and not all these plans with multiple egregious variances where the findings cannot be made. Or it should simply stay the much needed parking lot that was already there and help preserve Aviator, Aviator Nation Dreamland. At the very least, an environmental impact report needs to be completed to answer all the concerns, questions about noise, groundwater toxins from underground. And air from construction, traffic, parking and safety, geology, et cetera, from an independent consultant. But the right thing to do for the safety and security and to put Malibu residents first is by following the law and deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Our next speaker will be Bill Sampson, followed by Susanna Owens. And Bill, if you're present in the meeting, could you click the raise hand button at this time? Okay, I don't see him. We'll circle back. Uh Susanna Owens.
Hi, my name's Susanna Owens and I live close by to the proposed project site. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I have been following this project for a while now and after reading through the staff reports in detail, I wanted to express my support for this motel project. I think it is commendable to see an applicant coming forward and staying within the zoning which is permitted. I know that projects such as these take a great deal of time and money and many other applicants have asked for many variances in order to better increase their bottom line. Or financial outlook on the project. I do not see any of this happening for this project. The only variances I see are for items which you see on almost every new construction project in Malibu. Such as slopes or retaining walls. Without such variances, a great deal of Malibu would never have been built because of the challenging topography. I know sometimes we as a city continue to look at what we might find wrong with certain projects. But I see a lot of positives in this one. They don't have any more events other than the allowable. Six T U Ps per year, which appeases neighbors. They have an abundance of parking. Not sure when we have ever seen that before from what I can remember. They're bringing hundreds of thousands in T O T to the city, which we need. They will deter, deter vagrants in the area and create a project many local. Locals and visitors will be proud of for years to come. I for one am tired of looking at those story polls. I did not support this project without looking at the facts and the facts are that there are very little negatives and many positives for this motel. I also was curious and looked up the recent Sea View Hotel approval, which evidently has almost the identical lot size, lot size. The main difference, of course, with Sea View had an entire zone change and essentially tripled the allowable floor area ratio. From what I can tell, this project has no development agreement, is under the allowable floor area ratio. And is applying only what they are zoned for. Once again, I just wanted to say that I support this project. Commend the applicants for staying within the code requirements and want to thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Susanna. Our next speaker will be Scott Dietrich, followed by Tia Stevenson, followed by Pat Healy. Scott, if you're present in the meeting, please click the raise hand button. I do see him present. If you could uh unmute Scott R Dietrich.
Hello?
Thank you. We can hear you.
Thank you. Yeah, hi, Sheriff Smith and Commissioners. This project really needs a lot of attention by you guys. It's right in the heart of Malibu. It's the most congested area in our city. We don't have enough parking as it is. And uh yes, it is a hotel, um as Hakim misstated, but it is a hotel. Uh motels. I stayed in a lot of flea bitten motels and uh and a few nice ones. But it's, it's operating as a hotel. We all know it. I really do question. Why staff? Is recommending this? Uh my understanding is that staff is supposed to be working for the citizens of Malibu. And this does not benefit the citizens of Malibu. It will create a parking nightmare. And I hope you all can see that just because of the location, if it was. Half mile in either direction, I think it would be a great project. But it's not. Um it's a terrible project. It should be denied. When Hakim was talking, or was it Adrian, talking about uh, no, Adrian was defining the bluffs. And I'm looking at the slide he's showing us and I'm going, that's exactly what he's describing, that first. Uh description that he gave definition. So it fails on that. There's a huge retaining wall required. It should have never been given a variance. Variances should go for small things. And not big things. The, the parking just isn't ever gonna work. And you're going to bring gridlock to the center of Malibu? When you look at the plans themselves. You go, wait a minute, this, this is uh, yeah, except for maybe having meeting rooms. It's not a hotel. I remember when we were discussing the Sea View Hotel and it had lots of positives. But you guys kept putting in restriction after restriction and charging norm a million bucks. Where's the million bucks to the city for this? So I urge you, please deny this. It's a nice project in the wrong location. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Our next speaker is Tia Stevenson, followed by Pat Healy.
Hi, everyone. Um. So I live close by to this proposed development and I am in support of this motel being brought to our city. Uh the applicant has clearly gone through many different agencies to get to this point. And the staff has vetted this project thoroughly over the past many months and even years and has recommended approval. Uh I think that this motel would fit nicely in the area and fill a much needed void in the community. I also think it's about time that Malibu has gotten a new motel. I am sure we've all heard the complaints from many others in the city. About how tired they are of the neighbors Airbnb and renting next door. Uh but we do need to keep this where it belongs and it belongs here as it's done for it, after all, as it's C V one. And I for one would, would love to book a staycation for myself and my family to enjoy a nice break in a new project. Especially with the nice pool on the rooftop. Uh thank you again for your time and I would support the approval of this project.
Thank you, Tia. Our next speaker is Pat Healy, followed by Jeff Stibbe and Nick Eleopolis.
Good evening Commissioners. In the thirty plus years, the Malibu coalition for slow growth has been in existence. This is one of the most code violative projects we've ever seen. The project has a total disregard for our codes, the laws that were put in place to protect the special place. From destructive in de- development. The applicant is asking for concessions that are totally disrespectful of the city's planning law. It's hard to believe that staff is recommending this project for approval. We can't help but ask, how could this happen and why? Without question, this project should be non-nod and we ask the commission to do it unanimously. Slow Growth submitted eighteen pages of things that were wrong with this project, which you hope, we hope you have read. We obviously can't go into detail of each transaction in three minutes. Suffice it to say, it harms residents and the environment, sets a precedent for the continued destruction of the things we value. Some problems with the project are. It meets, meets the definition of a hotel, not a motel, which is not allowed in the zone. It destroys a coastal bluff, which is not allowed. The project would be constructed into a bluff face, which is forbidden. It's a four story project when two stories are permitted. It's asking the commission to honor. Our rules and approve the excessive height under site ground review. That is a clear code violation. To justify this project is, misleads one to believe that the fiction that the parking structure is subterranean when it's actually above grade. The staff report admits, admits it's far above the allowable height of twenty four feet. To prevent this verge of the hillside from toppling on the project, it requires a raining. A retaining wall anywhere from fifty two feet to seventy feet. When a six to twelve feet is allowed. If the bluff is. If this bluff is not forever properly maintained, it could cause problems for the project. And possibly cause the house above it to slide down the hillside and forever is a long, long time. It ignores the fact that traffic at this, at this location is more often than not gridlocked. Leaving residents to sit in traffic for long periods of time. There's not enough street parking spaces in this busy area of town as it is. But to make matters worse, it leaves the project's employees to find street parking spaces if they can. And if they do, they're taking away needed parking for residents, their friends and visitors. The project has taken away. Away much needed required parking for Aviator Nation, leaving many of its customers with no place to park. They're planning to serve alcohol when it's not allowed since the project is next door to a school. And to make matters worse, requiring the city advocate for them if needed to get a license.
Thank you, Pat. You are at time. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jeff Stibbe, followed by Nick Eleopolis, followed by John Stockwell. And Jeff, if you're present in the meeting, please click the raise hand button to help our staff look at you. Yeah, I, I'm not seeing him at this time. Um I do. Let's see. Okay, we're going to move forward to Nick Eleopolis next.
Hello, planning commission. This is Nick Eleopolis. I would like to express my support for the proposed motel across from the Malibu Pier. I live in close proximity to the Malibu Inn. And I personally find the parking lot in this location and I saw. The proposed motel will be a welcome addition to Malibu. Malibu desperately needs more lodging. To my knowledge, there are about six motels with a hundred and thirty rooms. And a hundred and forty two R V sites and thirty five tent sites in the city. In my view, having more R V sites and lodging rooms doesn't make. In my view, having more RV sites and lodging rooms doesn't make sense. Having only one hundred and thirty motel rooms with a population of thirteen thousand is woefully inadequate. Laguna Beach, for instance, with a population of twenty-three thousand with similar access as Malibu, has over thirty motels and approximately two thousand rooms. The Malibu Inn is only twenty rooms, as in comparable size to the Am, Malibu, Surf Rider, the Native, and the Country Inn. The rendering of the proposed motel is beautiful and well-thought-out, and is perfectly located across from the Malibu Pier and beach. There's a traffic signal across from the motel that makes crossing to the pier and beach easily accessible. The motel is very well-designed and includes subterranean and grade-level parking that is more than sufficient for the project. Having more lodging will help alleviate the often unwelcome Airbnb use and help small businesses in Malibu. The project is very much needed. It'll be a great benefit for the city. I hope the commission will do what the locals want and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Our next speaker is John Stockwell, and he'll be followed by Bill Sampson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is John Stockwell. I'm a Point Dune resident and owner of Malibu Farm with my wife Elaine Henderson across the street, and we are both in support of this project. I know there was an earlier speaker who suggested that maybe it should go a half-mile in either direction, and I think, or you know, that was a great project in the wrong setting. I think it's in exactly the right place in the commercial core of Malibu. And to be honest, the reason there is congestion there and the reason there's no parking, what we find is because there's surf. When there's no surf, and it's not a nice beach day, there's never congestion, but we have great synergy with Surf Rider. You know, they'll have groups that will take over the hotel, and then they'll all walk over to the Malibu Pier. The whole idea is to try and create a world in which there's a certain part of Malibu where people can park their car, stay there for the weekend, never drive again, walk to the pier, walk to Cross Creek, and create, you know, not always be getting in and out of your car and driving over the valley, or driving to Santa Monica and coming back to Malibu. So I think it's a well-designed project. I think that at the end of the day, honestly, we would advocate for, people get upset because they have to go from forty-five to thirty-five. I think the speed limit in that area of Malibu should be thirty-five. It's really dangerous with surfers running across the street, and I doubt that a twenty-room motel will have much of an impact. If we had our druthers, we would advocate for a real parking structure, because I do agree with everyone who says parking's terrible. I mean, there's, you know, what can you do about it? Right now, there's no metered parking. Surfers come in at 6:00 AM and stay till midnight, and you know, that's probably never gonna change. So I agree, parking's terrible. None of our customers, none of our employees, nobody we know uses that lot. I don't even quite know how you pay for it or how it's operated. Definitely not visually appealing, so really advocate for seeing this thing go through and creating a world in which the development in Malibu is contained to a certain place. I don't think it's viable. I don't know what's gonna go into that new center next to the Whole Foods Center. It's all retail. I don't, and office space, and almost no food entitlement, obviously no hotel. So I think the only viable thing for anyone going forward now is to try and create some motel rooms, some hotel rooms for overnight stays in Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Sampson.
Hey, am I on now?
You are.
Thank you. I got here just as there was some discussion about the possibility of recusal of two of the Commissioners. And you already have my letter. It's reasonably foreseeable that a financial interest could involve Commissioners Smith and Peak. I am not suggesting that they are already bidding on this. I have no idea if they are or if they wouldn't. However, most of you doubtless recall one of the theories of supply-side economics, as they called it, or the Laffer curve, as it was called, or Regonomics, was a rising tide lifts all boats. A rising tide of development, and that is what is before the Planning Commission more than anything else, certainly is going to raise all of the boats owned by contractors. They may not bid on this deal, but it's gonna make it easier for them to get other deals. Just the possibility of that is deeply concerning as a matter of good governance, and I believe they should recuse themselves from this. As to the merits of this, shocking, I am shocked that there are surfers at Malibu. I was just thinking of nineteen sixty-three, about when Bruce Brown made the film Endless Summer. I saw him narrate it before it had a soundtrack. Laughingly, he said, "This secret spot is known as Malibu." It looked like there were the same number of people then as now. The only distinction was that they were not wearing wetsuits back then. Somehow, they got here without lots of motels. I note the double speak going on here. Some of you people talked about Airbnb. I think my opposition to that dastardly entity is well-known. I've got a whole bunch of motels on my street. They look like single-family residences to me. Somehow, this thing with a wall on the top is now a motel. Somebody mentioned Laguna Beach. Go down there. If that's what you want for Malibu, move to Laguna instead. I didn't, I didn't move out here to have it be like Laguna. One of my dearest surfing buddies moved to Laguna shortly after he got out of the Air Force, six years out of high school. He's been there ever since. He has told me every time we talk or surf together or have dinner together, I made the right choice by coming way out here instead of Laguna, which I happened to love at the time, as did he. Let's not make this look like Laguna. Who needs two thousand hotel rooms for nine thousand people? We don't have thirteen anymore. We got nine, and motels don't really do us any good. But, Mr. Smith, Mr. Peak.
Excuse me, you are at time. Our next speaker will be Jefferson Wagner, followed by Kelly Ferrano. And Jefferson, if you're in the meeting under another identity, please click the raise hand button. Otherwise, we'll move forward to Kelly Ferrano for now.
Hello. Thank you for having me. Hi, I'm Kelly Ferrano, and I'm the Managing Director and Partner of Aviator Nation Dreamland. I'm also a resident of Malibu. Not only do I support this project, as an operator of Dreamland, I deal with patrons every day. Many are locals and many are conscious world travelers desperate for more affordable lodging. As John Stockwell said, "We work closely with Malibu Farm and Surf Rider to support an ecosystem of amenities for locals and visitors, but the lack of lodging options is the biggest deterrent." We work very closely with the Hakims and are not concerned about parking issues. The motel would be an incredible addition to the community, and I am in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Our next speaker is Mikey Pearson, followed by Ann Donin. Or Donin. But Mikey Pearson next.
Hello, Planning Commission. I have been involved in the past on this project for a number of renditions, a number of years, and the main issue with this project, in my opinion, was always the height of that wall, that retaining wall in back. And I think this is the first time a project's come forward that honestly, you won't see that wall behind the building, and the variance can be made, because there's other projects just to the east of that that have walls larger than this one. So the variance makes sense. The other two variances also make sense, but lowering that wall and having it not be visible, to me, was a huge win for this project. And to the comments about the zoning, this is exactly a Malibu where lodging should be located. This is that zone, and a twenty-unit room in a hotel, and, sorry, in a city with so few rooms.
You see a raised hand button?
I don't see a raised hand button. Just makes sense. So, sorry, I think I heard Jefferson there. So after many renditions, and I know how hard the Hakims have worked, I did talk with them. I think this project makes sense. It's small. It's smaller than a lot of houses you approve. It's in the right zone. It has parking. They've mitigated some of the issues. It's, I don't know, to me, it just makes sense. It's small, and it's well-designed. I think it's a Doug Bird design. And so I'm in support of this project. Thank you all for your service. Good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Donin.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. I am Ann Donin. I was born in Malibu in nineteen forty-seven, and I'm speaking for Malibu Township Council. Honorable Planning Commissioners, Malibu Township Council objects to the City of Malibu's Planning Commission hearings Malibu Inn motel. These cities, the city's planning department, report for the project in the record with descriptions of the project's features and amenities, falsely categorizes and identifies the proposed project as a motel. These reports and city staff contentions attempt to justify the proposed project as a motel, comporting to the definition and constraints of a motel building in use as defined in the city's zoning code and State of California adopted Local Coastal Plan Program zoning. Staff's contentions comprise misinterpretations of zoning. The reports and the city's contentions for this hearing comprise categorically false data and record, and the proposed project's construction and uses are ineligible for its zone. City staff knows full well that the applicant's proposal is a project for which the design, configuration, amenities, and proposed uses, including bar, rooftop bar, rooftop pool, and valet parking remote from the guest rooms, exceed the city's zoning code and local coastal program plans specific constraints for definition as a motel and instead comprise a hotel and hotel uses, also specifically defined in city zoning and LCP. Malibu Township Council respectfully requests the Planning Commission make the finding of fact that the application is ineligible for the zone. Further consideration of the applicant's proposed project is unnecessary. The agenda is defective in that it does not notice the intended action, a concurrent zone change, to approve a hotel and hotel uses at the project location, a concurrent application for the zone change of land underlying the proposed project's location, and notice of public hearing thereof is required before this currently ineligible project is considered for approval. Under current conditions, it would be impossible to make the first finding of fact that the project complies with zoning. By reference, Malibu Township Council incorporates all objections and concerns contained in our prior correspondence to the City of Malibu's Planning Commission dated April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Thank you for the opportunity to talk here.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Ryan Embry, followed by Barbara Broderlin.
Thank you. You know, this could have been a nice project, but it's a little too much, not enough land, not enough parking. A hotel is appropriate for this type of use and location, but it's not being processed and presented in that manner. So I agree with the prior speaker that this project is really a multi-phase project. If you look at it, if the tenant in the Aviator Nation parcel has no problem with reducing their parking by seven spaces and is in support of their landlord's project for a hotel next door, you gotta have to wonder here. I think that the correct project would be a lot merger and to incorporate all of the parking as a clean sheet hotel project. And maybe the best thing for Malibu and for whatever nightclub is to be in Malibu might need to be moved to a slightly different location. But there's already alcohol sales going on there, we all know that, and they have a restaurant use which would benefit a hotel operation because you get an extra diamond in the rating system. But this is not the right project. It's not noticed for the zone change. So we know there's a high financial stake involved with all of this. That's not to be considered by the Commissioners in tonight's meeting at all. And we're watching, because this is not noticed for what is to occur here. This is a hotel, not a motel. The zoning is incompatible, and I just, I'm waiting to see the dance, because it's not possible to get there from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Our next speaker is Barbara Broderlin, followed by Josh Christensen.
Good evening, everyone. I am in support of this project, and I think it serves a deep function of bringing more parking to the area. We all know that it's dangerous getting in and out of there to no one's fault. It just has never been updated, and I think this is a great, very sensible application. It's beautifully designed. I have a lot of faith in the building department, and I have a lot of faith in the Hakim brothers, who have been great community members. So it's bring more employment, it'll offer parking, it supports all the restaurants that are nearby that need the business throughout the year, and I don't see any reason why they shouldn't be able to have a pool being used there. It's a very sensible and sensibly sized project, and I'm in full support. And thank you, everybody, for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Josh Christensen. He'll be followed by Jefferson Wagner.
Hi, my name is Josh Christensen. I am a representative for South West Mount Stage, we're helping out the partners, and I'm representing recreation in that area, and the city of this project. And I believe I will be impacted by the environmental impacts of this project. Should you require a Malibu Inn motel, you can build with contractors who will hire local, pay prevailing wages, and utilize the resources from a state-accredited apprenticeship training program. Force requirements reduces construction-related environmental impact while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. In a recent study, twenty twenty, a report titling Putting California to High Road: A Job and Climate Action Plan for Twenty Thirty, top force development board concluded that the investment of enrolling the first line of scaling California's workforce can positively affect returns of climate mitigation efforts. South Coast Air Quality Management District recently found that local high requirements can reduce a result in air pollution reductions. Recently, the state has reiterated its commitment towards encouraging workforce development and housing affordability through Affordable Housing and IRO Jobs Act twenty twenty-two, otherwise known as S U B Bill twenty-eleven, which requires projects to pay workers the prevailing wage and hire from state-certified apprenticeship programs for the project, meaning certain citing affordability and development standards. Again, this project, you know, if we're talking about community benefits, why not start with the people who are gonna build the project? And they should be paid a fair wage, which is a mortgage-paying job.
And Josh, I've lost your And Josh, I lost your voice. Does that conclude your comments?
His audio disconnected, so I, I would assume he's done.
Okay, thank you. Um, our next speaker is Jefferson Wagner.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you, Planning Commissioners, for your time and effort on behalf of, uh, your constituents here in Malibu. Uh, this difficult project, uh, has gone through a number of years, uh, of ups and downs. I'm familiar with the Hakim family, Steven and Alex especially. Um, the difficulty you have is negotiation, uh, on the positive side, um, of your activities are to do what you can for the benefit of your community. Because of the lack of a strong Airbnb rule, when I was on the staff at the city as a elected council member, I voted in favor of following the Santa Monica projects, applications, and through court, the Airbnb rules that we would have had would have made it a lot stronger, and I would not have been in a favorable position for more hotel rooms. However, since our council did not pass the Santa Monica plan that went through the courts, we're faced with now supplying hotel rooms in the commercial area of Malibu. I have a business nearby. I see no objections to another twenty rooms. The difficulty you have as Planning Commissioners is negotiating with the property owners as you try and extract what you can. The benefits for the community, of course, are the T O T tax and the extra rooms, so the Coastal Commission can't say we're denying rooms. The difficult decisions are yours. I wish you good luck. The project seems favorable. It's just negotiating how to get it done. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Uh, last call for Jeff Stibbe. If you're present in the meeting under another identity, if you could click the raise hand button at this time. Sorry, I'm cycling through the pages. Um, and also Rosemarie, if you're able to lower your hand, um, it would help us to track who's here. Thank you. Um, and then several of our speakers signed up multiple times, so I'm trying to be accurate and, and not miss somebody, but hopefully not call someone twice. Um, John Stockwell?
spoken.
He spoke.
Thank you. Um, yeah, there was, there were multiple identities there. And then, uh, Don Randall. If you're present in the meeting under another identity, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Seeing none, um, we're going to move back to our applicant team for rebuttal. And you have four minutes and thirty-three seconds. Let me correct to your time.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Architect Doug Birdge. Just wanted to make sure you can hear me okay?
We can.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to go through a few points. Um, we've been looking at this project a number of ways, and there's been such great, uh, community interests. And you have to understand, and when we, when we did the Surf Rider motel, that was strictly a job where it used to be under needed for repair. When we redid it, being a similar place nearby, this project really took, um, cues from a lot of the great things that the Surf Rider has been providing. And it's definitely a motel because it's not a restaurant. It's, it's got a prep kitchen servicing hotel, motel guests only. It's got, um, a pool, but as most people have alluded to, there are other motels, certainly in Malibu. The native hotel one just got a pool installed. They're definitely a, a motel. And it has the parking and you have the codes, parks. It's clearly, clearly, clearly a motel use. And it's, it's not anything close to a hotel because there's a whole nother set of requirements, let alone it's zoned only for a motel. We had set it up and designed it, so the commissioners have an opportunity tonight to talk about if we'd like to increase public parking, we have set the design so you can. We, we could set a, a valet parking plan, and there's no valet parking ordinance in Malibu. So we, if they want to talk about it, we can certainly provide that. Um, and, and the lifts or something that you have the heights to do that. So if we feel there's a need or the commissioners feel the need to do that, we would be able to accommodate that in this design. But we didn't have to propose it because we met all the parking requirements. Um, there was some negative, uh, talk and, and some, um, speakers that talking about inaccurate heights. The heights are accurate. Uh, the, the lobby down below is not, there's no floor above it, so that's considered its own floor. It's not four stories. It's two stories. It meets all the code requirements. Um, it fits in with neighborhood standards, the way it's built. Um, and, and you may have to be really understanding of, of, of what these projects are. And during emergencies, these motels and lodgings are the first place where the locals can go. And they provide the generators and provide a place to stay. And that was proven during the Woolsey Fire. And this will prove again as we, we go down a lane and hopefully not have these types of calamities. But if they do happen, then this owner and this facility would be supporting that. Um, again, supporting the local businesses, as it says. Um, it certainly doesn't harm any residences. It helps the local residences because it's available. People even can walk there from certain neighborhoods. Um, the traffic is better for this type of design. I mean, in short, there's always something you can find wrong about a project, but there's so many things right about this project. We're excited in, in being part of the Kimes and be able to design this. And, uh, we look forward to, um, if there's any more time, I know that, uh, Alex wanted to say something. And, uh, how much more time, by the way?
One minute and thirty-nine seconds.
Yes, quickly, there were some negative comments about our hotel being compared to Norm's, uh, our motel being compared to Norm's hotel. And we are not asking for a zone change. We are not asking for a development agreement. We are not the same. And we're being compared to Nobu by Joe Drummond and the traffic that'll create. This is only open to motel guests. Uh, this is not one of the largest hosting restaurants in the country in California, and it's not open to the public. And, um, you know, Nobu Hotel, every, anyone and everyone can go there. Nobu restaurant, anyone and everyone can go there. This motel is only for motel guests, only twenty rooms. Um, and, uh, though, we would like to go through the conditions. We're happy to discuss them more in further time, if you would let us. In regard to the lifts, um, we do not need the lifts. We meet the code for parking. They're just a bonus that we can provide if the commission says that it is, uh, that it's doable and allows us to. So, um, that's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And that does conclude our public speakers.
You're muted, Dennis.
Dennis, can you unmute? Thank you.
Okay, uh, here we are, back to us. Thank you. What an nothead. Um, okay, uh.
Can we take, can we take a ten-minute recess before we start deliberating?
I was just gonna ask that question before we get started. It's probably the best thing to do. Um.
Good idea.
You guys want to come back and say, we'll come back at eight-thirty. How's that?
Commissioners, make sure you, you mute and turn off and do not, uh, take any comment from anybody else during that time.
You've closed the public hearing, right?
I did close it. Even, even when you didn't hear me, I closed it.
Okay.
Public hearing is closed.
Thank you. And thank you for canceling your video and microphone.
And Josh, I've lost your voice. Does that conclude your comments?
And I'm back in the meeting when the last Mark Commissioners is present.
Commissioner Peak shows his smiling face. We'll fire off on this deal. Another high-speed car going by Commissioner Jenny's window. Well, we could probably get this thing started.
No, we need to wait for, like.
You want me to wait? Okay. Thank you.
Hey, I have no power, so I'm just, uh, ringing up stuff real quick.
We can call an electrician.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can install a Gen Rack.
There's some, there's some aphorism.
Skylar, can you confirm that that's just like a you issue rather than a neighborhood power outage?
It is. That's me issue because I came late today and we're doing a panel change and guys are still working.
More than fair. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'll be back in one second.
Ah, the irony. Yeah, no kidding, huh?
There, there's some aphorism like busman's holiday, but that's not it. It's something.
I was thinking more like physician heal thyself.
Shoemaker's children never have shoes.
Oh, that's another good one.
That's the one.
His gerbil on the treadmill died. He's got to get another one.
They actually do that at Seesun for the sports center there or the exercise facility. The students on treadmills are providing, I think, about eighty-five percent of the power to the building. Well, treadmills and bikes.
They have somebody whipping them?
No, it's just an exercise-friendly crew. And I thought that was a wonderful idea to turn the exercise into power.
Do they give tuition credits?
Maybe. I believe we're ready to go again.
Okay, here we are, back at the, at the meeting and we have two commissioners that started first before the break and I'll start with Commissioner Hill.
Oh, thank you, Chair Smith. Okay, we've gotten a lot of communication. We've discussed some of the project before. We've sort of had time to weigh the plans, the letters, to get a sense of how this is taking shape. When I first saw this a few years ago, I wanted to like it. The renderings looked pretty. The applicants are nice guys. It would be nice to have a motel, although clearly this has become a hotel. And, and we were in a climate where we would need to fill the gap that would be left when the city would radically curtail the STRs. Like, yeah, we need rooms. But that reality has evolved and it's clear that Coastal isn't going to allow anything like the hosted ordinance. That there, we, we're going to have to have a fair number of STRs when that shakes out. So the need factor is reduced from what it was. And the more I've looked at this, the more it's clear that the multiple variances make a mockery of our code in the end. And so on that note, you know, we've received some pretty cutting views from several prominent architects. So I, I have typically have three to four pages on an application of notes. This one I have twenty-four pages of notes. And so I thought before I try to get into the details in, that it might be helpful to just give a quick sort of bullet list overview of some of my main questions and concerns. Kind of give the terrain or a roadmap, whatever. And I have a lot more detail on each of these, but yeah, there are a few good things. It looks aesthetically pleasing. That's not our direct concern. And, you know, it would be nice to have some more rooms, but I don't see any data that supports that it's needed. So looking at my list here, there's some real questions about the project need, including the affordability concerns. There are issues in the septic and zoning issues. By legal definition, this is a hotel, not a motel. And it's interesting, they compared it to the Surf Rider, but actually Surf Rider advertises as a hotel. As a four-star hotel. And there's, there are geology issues. For example, the slope is officially potentially unstable. It's in a liquefaction zone near the Malibu Fault on the coastal bluff. Above which construction was not permitted. Or if it's not on a bluff, then by definite, definition, it's a freestanding four and a half story building. I say four and a half because the garage is fifteen feet high. It's only allowed to be twelve. So that's really kind of a story and a half there. It is, the garage is approximately at street, street level. It's not subterranean. There's less than a foot of elevation difference. And it may be that the garage is higher than street level, depending on how you count it. There are hydrology issues. There's no storm drain anywhere nearby to do any of the pumping that might happen with excavations. There are multiple variances, each of which has serious issues. The grading, retaining wall, the slope. The slope in turn invokes issues with FAR, which then invokes issues with setbacks. The height requires the SPR. It is clearly, well, I'm calling it four and a half, but it's clearly four stories with, with an overheight garage. The traffic, Caltrans has required right turn only signage and confirms that the U-turn pocket is not available for eastbound vehicles in their letter. So that has unstudied implications, impacts on traffic and on how do valets work and parking. There are a number of parking issues. There are some noise issues and some miscellaneous issues with the pool, the archaeology, the fire flow and lack of evacuation plan. So, and then out of all that, I have what's turned into a long list of unexamined potential impacts. And I have a list of about twenty items roughly that are missing data that we need, we really need. And maybe the top of that list is the, why we've continued this twice before, the water board and getting the authorization and the determination that this qualifies on, on the listing now. It's clear that the water board's determination is per project, not per parcel. And I'm sorry, but it's not adequate. It's not a legal letter that we've gotten from them to get a note, a note from Dr. Kang saying, it seems that this would work. That's, that's just not a determination. So I would move now that as, as much as I hate it, we have to do this right. We have to, you know, we already put it off twice because we didn't have the proper determination and we still don't. So I would move for a continuance. And in doing that, I guess anybody that wants to second it for discussion, I could quickly run through what I think are the missing pieces of information that would be helpful to have.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a second for discussion. I'll try to be really quick here. Top of the list is Dr. Kang's letter. I don't think that's sufficient. Affordability, we have the letter from Coastal saying that they need an analysis of whether the proposed project meets the definition of luxury overnight accommodations, et cetera. There's more analysis in there. I've worked on some numbers and, and the whole affordability thing doesn't add up. The CUP requires a market analysis indicating a clear and compelling economic and social need in the city. They did give us a two-page analysis previously, but it doesn't mention residents at all, except that it might help with Airbnb. But that, that's not an issue now. And residents don't, don't need hotel rooms as much as they need parking at the beach and, and so the analysis doesn't state any economic or social need in the city. And so that needs to be revised. There's been new geological data since the MND. In particular, submitted by Suzanne Goldman previously, the new, the USG, USGS map showing the Malibu Coast Fault right there. And we just had the three point eight quake in carbon a few thousand feet from there a few weeks ago. That, none of that has been analyzed. So I think we need an update to the geology. Also, the state of California map of seismic hazard zones shows this to be at risk. It is a liquefaction zone. And when the IS was done, geologists believe the fault was capable of producing a Richter four or five. USGS has now updated that to a potential seven point oh on the Malibu Fault. That science isn't in the initial study and it seems like that's a critical thing if you're talking about a fifty-foot wall. Hydrology. We have statement in the record that there's potential, what was the word, seepage or, or something that needs to be pumped out when the excavation occurs, because we're not sure really where the water table is. And the nearest drainage culvert is over at Sweetwater with multiple businesses in between. So if you need to pump this out, like had to happen at the La Paz development when they dug that parking lot. You know, they had to pump it over into Legacy Park. We don't have that option here that I see. So that needs to be studied. Joe Drummond raised the point of what's in the ground at Jack in the Box that was built on the side of a Texaco gas station. And when it was, became Jack in the Box in the sixties, it, there was no EPA, there were no cleanup standards like we have today. So the question is, what kind of latent toxicity remains from the gas station? Could it have migrated through sand lensing or water mounding or other horizontal structures? We don't know about that. We don't know if here, there's some pushing of the limits of what the dispersal fields would be in terms of, well, I, I think Joe pointed out, I think correctly, I think that they're kind of trying to double count the dispersal area for the Malibu Inn and for the motel. That would be subject to confirmation, but in any case, we're putting a lot more liquid into the ground in the general area. So if there are toxics in there, we don't know what might happen to them. Do they get washed out to Surf Rider? To borrow Jack in the Box's old slogan, if you never go, you'll never know. The, so. On the slope, the, we pointed out previously, and this was never followed up in the reports, that the debris retaining wall is proposed for the one-to-one areas of slope up above. That can't happen by code. So that triggers a change in both the FAR, what's available. And because the setback lines have to wrap around those excluded areas, that changes what the setback availability is. So that would need to be reanalyzed. We were told before by staff that when, I think we raised this question about you have to subtract the one-to-one area when you calculate the FAR. And we were told, no, no, that's only when it's a residential. But MNC seventeen four zero point zero eight zero, commercial building standards, two D, for the purposes of calculating yards, slope, slopes equal to or greater than one-to-one shall not be included in the lot dimensions. Similar language also appears in the LIP three point eight at A to D. So that changes what the actual FAR is here and there at the, there at the limit. So that, that needs to be reexamined. Getting there. The traffic analysis. We now have the letter in the file from Caltrans saying no left turns out here. No use of that pocket going in the other direction. And I remember from a previous hearing, Commissioner Jennings said, well, you can do that from Jack in the Box. And that's true, but Jack in the Box has that bit of, of center lane that there's enough to pull in there so you can merge out. Whereas here, you're trying to pull out of this spot and you're right into the pocket turn lane that's heading west. So it just doesn't work. And so what we're left with is the first legal U-turn going west to then go back east is that Webway. You can't, you know, you, you can't, you, you have to go two miles to do that U-turn legally. You can't even make one at Cross Creek. No U-turn there. I suppose you could turn into the state park there and do a, do a turnaround there, but that's not much closer than going to Webway. So on a busy traffic day, on a beach day, that's adding another half an hour at least to somebody's eastbound trip. And adding more traffic and congestion in that whole center area. So that analysis has not been done. The traffic study itself focuses a lot on vehicle miles traveled, which, which this would affect. But it doesn't really study on the complexity and complication around the stoplight at the pier. And people wouldn't be doing this U-turn. They would not be going up to Cross Creek or Webway. They'd be pulling a Uie right at Surf Rider, right in front of the beach, right in the place where a lot of accidents happen. And you know, this being, this general stretch being the second worst, most accident prone area in town. And we're talking about putting in here an inducement to make illegal U-turns. So that needs to be studied in the traffic report. Similarly, the, the, the MND was done before there were any effects of the stoplight of the Malibu Beach Inn. That didn't exist. So we don't know how that might play into any of the traffic chaos around the area. Archaeology. The, the MND may be correct, that the site may be covered with stuff, slough from the hillside above. But it doesn't consider that wave action also washes that away during storms and sea level hasn't changed radically in five hundred years. So it's quite likely there'd be a lot of Chumash evidence right here, given that Malibu was the biggest Chumash village. Maybe there was one bigger in Ventura County. And, and also given that when the clock tower building was done to the east, they actually dug up a Chumash cemetery. So there's, there's very likely something here. Once you start digging, you know, five or six feet down, you're going to find that. So the archaeological report needs to be revised. There's been no percolation testing since two thousand and three. That should be redone. The cumulative effect of having events at both spaces has not been addressed in the initial study. Water table questions, I guess I mentioned that. Texaco, Chumash, no, no evacuation plan? I think we need to do that. And then the carpenters' union attorney's letter mentions another dozen things that they feel like are information missing. I won't read all those because that's already written down, but you know, I, I look at this and I, ideally I see a, a full proper EIR being done. I don't know that we're going to ever get the votes for that unless, you know, it finally gets to Coastal and somebody up there says that's what needs to be done. But as much as I hate to do it, I just feel like we need to continue this. And you don't necessarily have to accept all those things as things that need to be done, but seriously, just off the top of the pile, the fact that we waited so long for the approval from the water board and we still don't have that. We have this, well, it seems we could, informal little thing. That's, that's, that's just not a, a, a proper finding in my view. So I'll leave it there for further comment. And if we have to go through everything in more detail, I, I could, we could be here all night with what I've got here.
Nice chair, Malzahar.
I think Craig did an incredible job of what's missing. I think we need to emphasize the fact that the EIR was never done and there's an MND done fourteen years ago. Okay, things have changed in fourteen years down there. No question about it. And you know, remember we got told that traffic hadn't increased in twenty-five years when they built La Paz. So we have to be careful of avoiding those things. I know Jeff's shaking his head, but that's a direct quote that's been played many times on TV on the city council. Well, the guy said it. Now, the other thing about it is affordability. Even Hakeem, I think it was Stephen, just gave out the fact that, quote, we're going to get a million dollars in TOTs. Well, in two seconds, I can calculate that out to six point six six million in a year. Or an average room rate of nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars per night. Okay? That does, that's not low income. Not even middle. So we need to look at those numbers before we say, before we believe them. Now, then there's some other facts that were given like nobody named any wall that was built along there that was built prior to city. It wasn't built prior to cityhood. So we get these facts that aren't facts. It, it's, we need to tighten it up, get it down to what's really there. We we are looking at approving a project that's going to Coastal. Coastal's already determined that this zone doesn't allow pools. They listed off one, the only pool that was ever built in a motel since we've become a city is in use because the one at Nobu is not in use because it's not allowed to be in use was the June Hotel and it never came before us. It just appeared. So if, if we get this right, we can save ourselves many, many hours because it's going to Coastal and it's going to city, then it's going to Coastal, then it's coming back and it's going to go to us and then back to city council and then probably Coastal again. And around and around we go unless we get it right, semi-right the first time. And we need to consider that and we need to consider the fact that there are some details that aren't here that are necessary. For example, we are providing one of the only exits out of this on another property. There's no joint, there's no joining of the two properties. We are changing the CDP for the Malibu Inn for their water flow, their excess water flow. We're changing it, but we're not changing their CDP. So it's not official. We're doing, we're, the, the Jupa for the Malibu Inn included the fact that nobody used that property at night. So therefore they could use it as part of the adjustment for parking. Well, now there's a motel going in there. They can't, they have two events at one night. They'll have an excess of four hundred and twenty-five people in forty-six spaces. That's, that's an environmental concern for Malibu. And the fact that if you're running a nightclub or a wedding, everybody leaves at the same time, we have a traffic problem. And we don't know where it's going and we don't know where it's going to park. We don't know. They don't say, but we turned down the hotel right across the street because it was seven feet too far to the old Hertz building, seven feet. And now we're doing, looking at approving something that has no destination. Just somewhere out there in the world. And that's, that's, we, 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 we are setting ourselves up to all these other people. Parking list, five different projects turned down. But I can't even find it in here, but apparently we're approving that. So we need to. I can't even find it in here, but apparently we're approving that. So we need to straighten all this out rather than spending. You know, till midnight tonight and then probably continuing it again. And if we get the right information. We can get it done in one night. Um. I've got Craig's got, I don't know how many pages. I've got twelve. Um. And then on top of that, we're looking at precedent setting. Fifty to sixty foot. Retaining walls. Uh. Above ground, underground parking. Things like that that have never been done in Malibu. Never. If you look at the 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 description, the drawing of the motel, you can see that the parking. Structure. Is taller than the Malibu Inn next door to it. It's not underground. So we have all this stuff to straighten out. I hope. I hope we straighten it out before we go discuss it and. Send it off to the city council and then it gets sent off somewhere else. That's all my comments on Craig's motion.
All right, very good. Commissioner Jennings, I'm going to go to our city attorney real quick. His hand is up.
Thanks, Chair Smith. Um, I just had one question for Commissioner Hill. You mentioned as a basis for some um reason for additional study is a Chumash. Graveyard being unearthed nearby. Is that in the record somewhere or is this a? Additional extra record evidence?
Uh, it it's additional evidence reported to me independently by two longtime Malibu people. So.
Where uh I can answer that. You can Google the L A Times. You'll find it. What happened is when they were doing the clock tower building, it used to be called Rainbow Nursery Grocery. I don't remember this. It was run by the Guru Maharishi or whatever he was. And they dug it up and they found a full graveyard. It took them, they shut the project down for a year and a half. They took out like thirty bodies. Uh, it was a big deal because it was our biggest building. Built at that time. This is. Probably thirty years ago. Um. It was the old where the old train station was and it's only, it's where the clock tower building is, which is. What, two hundred feet away, three hundred feet away? Something like that. Um.
Okay, um. Chair Smith, given that this is was not part of the record and it appears to be, may have some implications on the decision of Commissioner Hill. Uh, I would advise giving the the applicant a minute or two to to just they want to respond to that that evidence.
Okay, um. I guess the Hakeems, but maybe uh Mr. Birds that might or. Yeah, I suppose Mr. Birds maybe.
Yeah, if we're just talking about the archaeology. You know, again, this is Malibu and we have to do on every single project. You know, we have the different phases and you have an archaeological report. If there's nothing on the surface, then you you don't do one report. You know, there's sections in our code that basically say that, you know, if one finds anything, then you have to let it be known. And so. There's nothing that we know of that you can by any current reporting. And and that's the way it's site set up. But if it ever were, then you you have to abide by the current rules that we we all have to design and build from. So again, it's 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 part of any code and and any building code and the planning code. But there's nothing that's been brought to our attention from any report, any archaeological uh specialist that's done there. So that's my answer to that question.
And just just to follow, I I I in terms of any influence on me, that's one point about among many, many. And. Uh, it's it's in the category of things that the M N D. Should have looked at as part of the E I R, the sequel process and and didn't. That's all, that's all the concern is there.
I'd like to point out also that and and disclose that I'm president of Malibu uh. Uh, Adamson House Foundation. We have a museum with all the artifacts that were found on that property. It was a major Sumash village. In fact, it was the biggest village in Malibu. For thirty, forty miles. Right across the street.
I I have a question. If you guys both know all this stuff, why wasn't this brought up at pre prior hearings?
Well, and uh, oh, okay, um, two, two reasons, two things. One. We have not gotten into a lot of the substance of this previously because we because we were hung up on the the waterboard thing and it was like, okay. Well, let's talk about some things that need more information. And I think a lot of the things I just mentioned have been brought up before. They just haven't been followed up on. Um, and I, but I should say now. I would be, you know, I just said I've got twenty four pages of notes here. I would be happy to meet with staff and go through it and say, look, what about this? What about this? What about that? You know? And and so next time. I don't have to come back with twenty four pages of things that haven't been addressed that at least will have good answers on things.
Okay, oh.
Yep, Chair Chair Smith, thank you for um allowing that, you know, just because it's a, it's not a request for additional study, but but it was actually an assertion. You know, based on of a fact that what I didn't see was in the records. I always want to give them the chance to respond. Thank you for allowing that. We just need to give her an app, uh, an opportunity to address any evidence that is presented. It's going to be relied on by the commission. Can you just confirm that we have now reclosed the uh the the public hearing and then uh continue with your discussion?
We'll close that public hearing. We'll come back to us. We're open here. Um, Commissioner Jennings, a long waiting. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna. Say what I was going to say before Craig and John um spent the last, what, twenty five minutes talking about how it should be continued. It seems to me that this project, it naturally falls itself into um. A a series of sort of basic questions. If. If there's three votes to say that this is a hotel, not a motel. That ends the discussion. We don't have to go any further. If uh if they're not, then that's off the table and we can go on to the next issue. Uh. Should uh if you accept Commissioner Mazza's argument about whether uh what really it's supposed to be a freestanding. Uh, pool is not allowable under the L I P. Then the pool doesn't go forward if there are three votes to support that. But if there's not, then you move forward on it. So that was what I was going to suggest because it seems like this would actually could be used, it could be. Uh. Run through relatively quickly with some organization. Um. Now, turning to the motion that's on the table, which is to continue the thing, this is this. This is familiar. Uh, we we, there there is a body of thought that. Uh, a delay is a win. Uh, and um, uh. We have gone through a similar. Situation with when the A D U ordinance came before us, we need this, we need that, we need the other thing, we need to know. Uh, what the global warming effects are going to be of this, that and the other thing. Um. We're just the planning commission. I, my own view is that we have to do the best job we can of moving through these issues. And send it on up to the to to the city council, which is the ultimate decision maker. Uh, on uh. This matter, whether whether it's a denial or an approval. Uh, and of course, finally, I suppose the coastal commission or somebody else or some court system is going to have to to make decisions later on. But I've never been convinced by uh Commissioner Mazza's argument that. No, 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 we have to, we have to take more time now in order to avoid doing this again and again and again. That argument. Has never seemed to me to prove enough as being true. So I'm not going to support the motion. I'm going to vote no on the motion to continue.
Okay, um, we could take a a quick roll call on that, I guess, with that.
I would like to answer that assertion.
That's what I.
Hang on, let's, let's, I'm going to take Commissioner Jennings. Thought there and let's ask for a roll call on the.
I'd like to counter that assertion by Mr. Jennings first. If he wants to make an assertion against me. I want to counter it.
You can wait till after our vote.
No, I can't. He didn't wait.
Well, he did. He waited for his turn. Um.
I think he was addressing my motion and I I would just say that I am not at all interested in delaying this. I I'd and I'd be happy to see a motel there. I just don't, I don't see this as a motel.
And my, all the only one I think want to say is there's a fact. Four items we've heard in the last thirty days have been appealed because we're slack. And that costs the city council hearings, that costs the coastal commission hearings. So if you want to be slack and just load up the staff with work to do. Don't consider. What Craig's saying.
And Commissioner Hill, could you clarify whether your motion is to continue to a date certain or a date uncertain?
Whatever uh staff's pleasure would be.
Okay. Then we're gonna. Take a vote. Um, Rebecca.
We just need to clarify if it is to a date uncertain.
I I it sounds like it might have to be uncertain just because some of these things like how long is it going to take to here to get a proper letter from the waterboard? You know, or if there are other things. Again, I I could meet with staff and we could kind of go through and figure out what are these things that actually do need to be updated or really are missing or. You know, kind of pin some of these things down and hard to say then with would any one of those take, you know, two weeks or two years? I don't know.
So a date uncertain, is that what you're saying?
I think I, yeah, I mean.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, um, Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
No.
Commissioner Peak.
No.
Chair Smith.
No.
Motion fails.
So I think. Commissioner Jennings also brought up a good point about. Whether we think this is a hotel or a motel. So with that. I think we should probably take a vote because I know that a couple of our commissioners feel it's not. A motel. And let's take a vote on that and we'll get that out of the way one way or the other.
Do I have a second for Commissioner Jennings' uh motion?
Oh, I need.
A straw poll? What would you like? Thank you.
Well, don't we need to discuss what the evidence is?
Um. Chair, yeah.
No, we have not yet.
Commissioner Peak.
I just wanted to offer, um, I could try to work through a couple of these things and get consensus if we go, if you'd like that or whatever, whatever you want to do.
I think that's a great idea. I'm open to that.
I could do that, too. I've got my list of.
Yeah, you had your twenty minutes already. So Commissioner Peak, if you'd like to, go ahead.
Okay, so I I'll I'll start off with the idea of it being a hotel versus a motel. Um. Craig, do you feel whether this is a hotel or a motel?
Uh, it it's clearly a hotel and I've got.
Okay.
Let me just hear why.
Well, clearly by L I P table. Five and the definition of what the coastal commission requires. And the. Definition of the L I P, which states exactly what a motel is and what a hotel is. There's absolutely no way this will go through coastal commission as a motel. It's not defined that way.
All right, uh, Jeff.
I uh. I am not persuaded that it is necessarily a hotel. I think that it falls, it it's close, but it falls within the definition of a motel.
Dennis, do you feel?
I agree.
Okay, that that's kind of how I fear too. And I think it very much does skirt the line and I want to be very clear about that.
Well, skirt the line, it's written down. It's it's already been decided by the coastal commission once.
Chair Smith, may I, may I open the case for why this is a hotel since we haven't heard that yet?
Believe you made your case, but go ahead. Just a couple of short bullet points, if you would, please.
I gave you a bullet point. Now I'm going to get into some detail. I don't know that I necessarily need to read the L I P definition. Do you guys want to hear that? I think you've probably read it already, but um. The Beach Inn's attorney points out that it doesn't meet the definition in multiple ways. Uh, the rooms have to have separate entrances on the outside of the building, leading directly to the conveniently located parking space. None of the guest rooms are even on the same level as the parking. Uh, leading directly from the outside implies no indoor parking structure. Also, their plan requires the use of valets, especially if there were parking lifts, especially, but in any case, it requires valets. And in any of those scenarios. The guests' access to the cars isn't direct. It's mediated by the valet. And think of how a real motel works. You 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 stay in them, you you park, you you hump your gear to your room. Typically, it takes several trips because you've got a suitcase or a backpacker or something and you've got some other gear. Couple trips to the room, couple trips when you leave. If if that were to happen here. Well, and and so the car has to be directly near the room so you can do that shuffle back and forth. For that to happen here, that necessarily implies the existence of a bellhop type character too, to help you with your bags. To get them from the car to the room because. You can't just like park and leave your stuff sitting out on the. Uh, driveway there or in the in the garage and walk away from it where you can't even see where it is. Um. It includes accessory uses that are. By definition excluded uh to be a motel. They repeatedly refer to it as a hotel. They're saying it's going to be like Surf Rider, which sells itself as a hotel. Um, can it has room service, a kitchen, you know, they call it, whatever they call it, it's food service. They're going to serve brunch. They're going to have a bartender. They're going to be selling alcohol. Including room service alcohol. Uh, they're talking about T U Ps for use as an event center. That's not a motel. Even just the valet alone is is an accessory use. Um, so you know, you you can have your. Uh. Also, to meet the C V one zoning, it's supposed to be resident serving and not just incidentally. Uh, we didn't get any analysis of the how how much parking we would lose. For the. Approximately hundred visitor cars that come on a beach day and use that lot now. Um. So I'm trying to, okay, so. Those are the, those are the hotel points mainly.
I want to add add one thing, though. It is specifically stated. That. Use a pool may be used permitted only if available to the general public.
True.
Hakeem's called the the tenants of the hotel. The general public. That is not true. That means. I can walk in there off the street. Park my shopping cart. Go in and use their pool. That's what it means. And coastal has affirmed that. Hotels have pools.
And just, just to finish up. Just to finish up. I mean, we can all look at this and say, you know what? That doesn't look so bad and. That maybe that would be great or whatever, but that's not our job here. We're supposed to look at the code. And clearly, these, the code says you can't do these things that are being proposed. I I don't see where there's the gray area to say, well, we can kind of. You know, so I'll leave it there.
The other thing is, the only reason this is applied for is a motel. Is because a hotel requires two parking spaces per room. And they don't have them. So they call it a motel. And they don't want to go through what Norm went through and change the zone. And pay all the fees. And. All the valves and the. Hand for. Camping and all this craziness. And. One guy waits. Nine years and pays. Two and a half million dollars and another guy pays zip because he just changes the name. That's, that's the difference.
It would be way easier to evaluate this if it had a zone amendment attached to it.
Hang on, guys, hang on, Commissioners. Commissioner Jennings.
Yeah, when we started off this hearing, Craig, you said that it was really important for us to get all of our. Our considerations out on the record and. All of those things, everything you mentioned. As you've taken what now forty minutes to discuss on this issue, it's all in the record already. Now. I really implore you guys. To not hijack the meeting. And. To allow us to move forward the way we have to move forward in order to arrive at one decision or another on this. Uh, everything that it's important to get everything in the record, but it's not important to talk about everything. That's already in the record and repeat it over and over again.
I take your point, but I think I added a few new things.
On this issue, we've already had our little straw boat. I don't think you really intended to be or thought you were going to convince anybody to change their mind. So can we move on to another subject?
Why don't we do what Dennis did on the uh. On the uh. Motel at uh Westford Beach and just to prove it without any discussion at all.
Done.
I don't think it's going to move us anywhere.
On this subject, this item and and this, I make it personal, you know, we have a lot. There's a lot, you know, to get through here.
Okay, um. Can we to the next, is the stop at the pool? Uh, uh, right?
Yeah, I I think a key thing here. Gets to the the very, the the baseline, the background to all this is the project need. Um, and that that that's what you have to look at in the secret process and everything. And. Uh, the problem that the applicants face here is that. We've already seen Lester Tobias has provided us a design. That shows that you could. Develop out, build out this site uh with zero variances. So all the discussion about how variances are required. And you can only, there's a lot of discussion in the staff report and in the resolution about how you can only do certain things. With it because there's a slope and so you have to have the big retaining wall because of the slope and da, 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 da. Well, Lester's shown us that, you know, if you look at the slope study. Um. I I. I could give you the page. I, I could give you the page number.
No, I, I get that, but how, just specifically in regards to the pool. Are you okay with a pool in a motel or no?
A pool in a motel, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that question. I thought the question was about other, other, uh, uh, list, other straw poll things. Oh, you said.
I'm asking you on a straw poll if you're okay with a pool going in a motel, yes or no?
Yeah, I don't know about that off, off the top of my head. I, it, it, yes, if, if, if a bunch of other things were met and we decided it was a motel, blah, 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 blah. I, I, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't see that that would be prohibited.
Okay, John?
Well, it's specifically prohibited by the Coastal Commission. It's in writing on the use table.
Well, the, the public would have to participate, it'd be, be.
There, there's a difference between a, a motel where you don't let anybody in except guests and one where the general public has to go. I mean, they can't have it both ways. They're gonna say, nobody can come in there and use it, but are paying guests. But, but the general public can use the pool. You, you, that's two different things. Uh, and the other.
Do you think, do you think that it exists in our city right now where there's other motels that have?
There is no motel in this city that was legally permitted to have a hotel prior to cityhood, not one.
The, the, per the CV one zoning, the pool must be independently resident serving.
No, I under, uh, understood. I, I hear what you're pointing out. Uh, Jeff?
Yeah, I think that the, I looked at, at the, uh, chart that John referenced and, and I believe that, that the language he's talking about being required to be open to the public has to do with freestanding pools, freestanding, uh, sports courts, things like that that are developed on, on the site. And I think that it is implied. Every, I've been traveling around the country since the sixties. All motels have pools. Uh, it's just within the definition, and so I, I think that it's fine.
It's already been adjudicated by the Coastal Commission.
John, you made your point.
And, and, and we also have to consider the fact that it's thirty feet from a school. Thirty feet. Thirty feet and, and the motel is adjacent to a synagogue and adjacent to a house thirty feet away. But the pool itself is thirty feet from the school.
Okay, uh, Dennis?
Yeah, motels, motels have pools.
Okay, um, yeah, I just, the way that I see it, I, we have motels in our city that have pools. We have motels in our city that have been granted pools in this, since the city's become a city.
That's not true.
Well, then what happened at the June Hotel at the bottom of?
That never came to us, did it?
I didn't, you didn't answer the question. My question was that that pool was built after the city became a city.
Approved. Items at the June Hotel, which they promised to bring to us later, including palm trees in the river, new septic tanks, patios, everything without ever getting a CDP.
Okay, well, in the essence of time, we can agree to disagree on that. Um, what about sound? Where are you at with music, Craig?
Uh, I think there, there are some issues that with their noise study. I think the neighbor did a better noise study. I think in the big picture, that's something that could be addressed with conditions, potentially a wall like Norm has done. I don't think that's the deal breaker here. There's a lot of bigger stuff before that.
Okay. John?
Well, all I can tell you is when they did the sound study, they excluded specifically the house and the synagogue and the school. Excluded them. They just put a line down there and saying, we're not gonna study this. They're thirty feet away.
Jeff?
Yeah, I understood that. I, I, I think that this is one of the few times in my experience where we've had an applicant submit a study and the opponents actually come back with a contesting study. Uh, nice to see. Um, and I think that there's, there's an argument to be made there. But my understanding is from the staff report is that the, and, and from the Hakim's presentation is what they're looking for is simply ambient music, not uh, not live performances, uh, in that area. And so with, if, if that's the project, which is as I understand it, then I don't have any problem with the ambient music in the hallways and in the pool areas. It's basically by definition, a low level of music. It's not a rock band up there.
Got it. Dennis?
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna have loud music. I think they'll keep it where they can keep it. Um, you know, during the day, we all know it is busy down there, that's for sure. And I don't think, I don't think the music up on, up around that pool is gonna hurt anybody or make anybody down below. I don't think they're gonna even hear it. So, uh, music is fine with me.
Now, Scott, are you asking in general or for TUPs? Because they're doing weddings.
I think that that would be a separate issue. What I'm talking about is sort of in general.
The, the, the request was that the condition prohibiting music, um, be removed. And then the question as to what it would be replaced with, it sounds like.
I think the extent of that, I don't, I don't personally see any issue with any ambient music. I mean, I think that the, the highway is significantly louder than anything that is ambient music that would be there. And you're also gonna have a if you had a pool, you you know, that maybe make, creating more noise, but.
To, to clarify, that would be to change the condition to allow ambient music.
Correct. And any other music would have to, they'd have to get a TUP for.
Yeah, so the, but ambient music, um, in the hallways and pools would be allowed. Is there a decibel level that it could not exceed?
I don't, I'm not aware of that, but what I, what I was gonna request, um, is if we were to grant that, that there would be some sort of a review for the sound. Um, I don't know exactly how to do that, uh, other than saying that using the word ambient music. I know that if we were to set it at, at a decibel, um, I would be cautious of just doing that without having some kind of a study related to that.
Okay, if you don't want to have a decibel, I mean, we should have some kind of limit of what, what that noise, otherwise it's, it's hard to enforce. Uh, would it be, would it be, uh, you know, you could use a reasonable standard or if you can hear it at the property line? I mean, these are standards that you can use, um, if, if you don't have.
There, yeah.
There's, there's, there's a ton of material we went through, but there's something that sticks in my mind about uh, not being audible, uh, within five feet of any neighboring property, something like that. That was, that was the standard device.
That sounds very reasonable.
Does that work? Okay.
Yes. The next thing I was gonna go into, um, is sort of in regards to parking, and there's sort of two elements of that. Um, the first element would be how you feel about, um, whether the, there should be a valet plan that's reviewed by Public Works or not, if we want to grant that. Whether or not we should allow, uh, parking lifts. And I'm kind of sort of under the opinion that we should try to get as much parking as we can on the property. Um, because I think that both serves the guests of the hotel. Um, and I, and you know, the joint use thing with the parking from the Malibu Inn, but Greg, how do you feel about that?
Uh, I feel like there are a lot of, I, I, yeah, more parking would be great. Another design on this lot could create more parking like Lester's original design. Um, but the, the lifts are really problematic, both from a, an emergency point of view in terms of, you know, and from the, who's gonna use them? The public, going to the beach isn't gonna want to use a lift.
No, but I, I would imagine that they have employees that are probably there for more than two hours of the day and would probably be used by them. Um, and it could.
That's what I've got. I thought if you're worried about employee parking and as one of their callers, uh, residents had mentioned about people parking down the street like we know other places have had to do. Though the employees can use the lifts, it would really help the, help the situation, I think.
I just, and then in, in regards to the argument about power, you know, I would put a condition on the property that it has to have backup power. Uh, obviously, to, to be able to service those, um, and elevator, et cetera.
Tyler, would you, would you consider having a, uh, they don't count an employee to operate the lifts? You, you want to add that employee as necessary?
I mean, I don't see an issue with that. I don't, I, 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 I don't have, I don't personally have an issue of restricting the amount of employees to a business, provided they have the parking. So if you have the parking, why should we be restricting how many people you have working there?
Well, no, you count them. You have, you make them provide a spot for that person.
Well, you've got that in the lifts. That's what the lifts would do. I think the lifts really make the big difference here.
They're saying, the lifts, the lifts are open for the public. They only have to have cer- certain parking spots.
Well, if we change it and we have them say that one of the lifts or all of the lifts are designated for their employee parking, I don't see that as being an issue. My, my question is more that I think that reasonably, it's in the community's best interest to get as much parking on the site as designed as possible. And in order to do that, we need to get to a place where we either decide if we allow lifts or don't allow lifts. And the second part of that is if we're going to allow lifts and we're gonna have a valet plan, we need to make sure that that would get approved by Pub- Public Works in order to be sufficient for both safety and to have the best use of the property.
Okay, now, what, number one, why would you need a valet if only the guests this motel, this hotel will only take registered guests?
You would really need, you, you more need to, if, if you're gonna have lifts, I believe that you need to have valet. So.
I'm saying, well.
I, I just don't, I don't see people that live here, not maybe different in New York City. Um, people that live in California, going to a place, being comfortable, or I don't think they're allowed to put their car onto a lift and move it up. You're gonna need a operator, that being valet, to deal with that.
And that's what I'm saying. You're not gonna count that person as an employee though.
I'm happy to account that person as an employee. I don't have an issue with that. My point is that I don't have a problem with that, and I think that it's in the community's best interest to get as much parking as possible.
A part of being a, a planning commission is be consistent. Okay? We took a hotel right across the street and said, no, you can't have a pool because you don't have enough parking and we won't let you have lifts.
But I think that, that you need to make the clear distinction here that this property has enough parking and we're saying, get us more parking. And I think that that's the most important difference when you're looking at the two different properties. That's the reason why I'm willing to do that.
Parking and they just wanted more so they could have a pool. Okay?
You don't, well, you won't see these lifts. These lifts, these lifts will be covered. They're inside the garage. You won't see them. That's the other thing, I think. That was the difference too.
Tyler, I would argue that.
Okay, hold on, but I, I, I'm I know all of us.
You're saying now that Malibu isn't gonna have, we've never allowed lifts, but now we're gonna let everybody have.
John, that's simply not true. There are homes that have lifts that we have allowed. So that's, you're lying. So let's just not do that. It's, there may not be a lot of them, but some of them do exist. So let's be consistent with that.
Well, it's not.
Jeff? You kept trying to get in there and I felt like we were talking over you. Yes, Mr. Jennings?
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna reiterate your point. The, 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 the point is that you cannot use lifts to meet your parking requirements. This property has enough parking to meet the property requirements. So we can add lifts, it actually provides some more capacity beyond what's legally required. Um, but I think it is important to, to keep in mind, you do have to count every employee when you're calculating how many parking spaces are required.
Yep, and, and this is my, my, my concern here is they expect four spots for employees. In their letter, they said, well, we would like six or eight. But I can count easily eleven at a time. Um, and the MND was saying there'd be twenty-four throughout the day. That implies eight at a time anyway, at least. Probably, probably more than eight at a time, given that the twenty-four wouldn't be distributed evenly in three, eight hour shifts necessarily. But, um, yeah, I mean, I, I counted.
I, I, look, I think that we're all in agreement. If you have an employee, we have to count the parking. I don't, I don't, I don't think there's a disagreement in that. Um, anything else?
I want to point out on lifts is they do not qualify under our parking code. And we've determined that in the past as a planning commission. Because they're not big enough. Okay? And so you're now saying our parking code doesn't have to be followed.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that our parking code is being followed and we're trying to add more parking.
But there's some standard parking that's not allowed.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. If there's a way for us to get more parking on this property, substandard, whether it can fit a suburban or if it can fit a small car, I think it's in the community's best interest to get that parking there. And I think in this particular project, if those cars are parked by a valet, that's gonna be the best use of that parking lot in the most efficient manner possible. And and does anybody disagree with me on that?
No.
I do.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Uh, there was some comments in regards to well, Airbnb and the need for, for motels and lodging. Um, I think Craig, you said that you don't think that Airbnb is an issue. I think that Airbnb will continue to be an issue in our community. I think that you probably would agree with that.
Yeah, no, I, what I was saying is we, we thought we would cut them way back. We were gonna have. We're not, that's not gonna happen.
Okay, so in light of that, I, I, I do think that there's an a- argument to be made for the community that a motel like this is very much needed, and a motel does serve our residents. So I think that's something that's just important for us always uh, to remember in this. Um, there was some, uh, request by the applicant in regards to uh, food and beverage and alcohol, uh, service. Um, is there a reason as to why we would restrict the service on this property as to the neighboring properties or as to why we would not grant um, seven to midnight, Sunday through Wednesday, and seven to two AM Thursday through Saturday? Is there any objection to that? Okay, and what's the reason, reasoning?
Reason is, it's thirty feet from a residence and, and a synagogue and a school, thirty feet.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Craig?
ABC has rules against that.
Okay, Greg?
Uh, it, it, it's not part of a motel. That's a hotel. It's, it's not allowed, period.
Okay. Uh, Dennis?
I think if we're trying to bring people in and, and show that it's a nice place to say, I, I don't see any problem with it. They, they should be able to have, uh, a drink or two around by the pool, I guess.
Jeff?
Yes, um, when I talked to Adrian this morning, um, one of my questions was, well, what are we doing? What do we do with everybody else? What, what, you know, why should we have every, every hotel, every motel, every, every restaurant have different hours? And we don't really have the data on what's going on with, with, uh, everybody else, but he made a very good point, or at least a point that's, I considered a very good point. Um, the way that they have structured their staffing from ten PM to seven in the morning, I believe, they only have one night person on duty. And if you're going to be serving alcohol, you at least need a bartender and you're gonna have to have, uh, somebody cleaning up and all the rest of that stuff. Adrian, maybe you can, uh, fill in here, but it did seem to me that by the way they structured their, their own staffing to meet their, to meet the parking requirements, uh, we couldn't allow the, the change in the hours because it just simply doesn't, it would be, wouldn't be consistent with the staffing.
Got it. Anything else on that?
Well, I want to point out that we approved the Surf Rider Inn with three parking spaces and they immediately went to the Malibu Inn Aviator Nation and rented six more. Because they're, they didn't have enough for their employees.
Sounds like more of the reason to grant lifts here.
It, it has to do with whether you tell the truth about when your employees are working and how many you have. They asked for twenty employees in their letter.
Understood, um. I very much, uh, understand the concerns in regards to, and my dog's barking aggressively, so I apologize for that. Um, what about the items in regards to the archaeology? Is there anything specific that we would want to condition this project? Knowing now or having it bring, brought forth that the stuff was, um, found on a parcel?
I think it's a standard procedure. There's a standard procedure which everybody has to go through. They've got, they've got people from, from the Chumash tribe will be there. You've got an archaeologist, you've got, it's the same thing, as I've told you guys a million times. Hang on, Vice Chair Mazza, I'm speaking, thank you.
I'll tell the truth when you do it.
I do tell the truth. You gotta have these people on site. I had to have those people on site twenty years ago when we were digging in the, in, in the Island Empire. It's the same thing everywhere. So there'll be monitors there. If they run into something, then they've got to stop. It's that simple. You can't move forward. Lake Elsinore High School back in the day, they found a real graveyard by the creek. They were held up for two years. Lake Elsinore High School back in the day, they found it a real graveyard by the creek, they were held up for two years. You can't move forward, so there's really nothing to talk about on this.
That that is not our condition. Our condition is, if you find something, you gotta call somebody. Well, of course. Another condition which we use. When it's obvious, and that is, somebody's gotta be there when you dig.
Of course they are.
No, but that's not what our condition is, read it.
Is, if I were to ask the applicant if they would be willing to have somebody there. Uh, during excavation, um. Is that something that we would or?
That's to me, to me, as as much as that irritates me because of the depths and the things you can fight about, you gotta have somebody there, so you can ask them if they want it. But they need to have somebody there, that.
We don't need to ask them anything on this, we, I think we all agree that when we're in a sort of Chumash sensitive area, we've, in the past, we've done a lot of saying. Yes, you need to have somebody on site, that's just our policy. I think we can move to the next issue.
Okay, that's fine.
And I I, so you you've been taking a few, I would like to propose we either talk about grading or affordability.
Okay, let's talk about grading.
Grading, okay, this one, this one's problematical, I think, because um. We've got this LIP eight point three E, grading shall be designed to minimize the alteration of landforms. Uh, it should conform to the natural topography, contour grading shall be used to reflect original landform and result in minimum disturbance to natural terrain. Uh, we've talked about this a little bit before and and Commissioner Jennings said, well, this is kind of a stepped design, so that fulfills that, but. Uh, the rejoinder here, I think, is that it it's a. The code is concerned with landform alteration, it's not about view impacts, it's it's about. Terrain disturbance, those are the, those are the language that we do there. And. There's a requirement, uh, there's other language in that same section, um, building paths on sloping sites shall utilize split level or stepped pad designs. To notch development into hillsides. This is not notched into the hillside, this is basically cutting one big. Giant, we you know, we've seen that diagram where it's like a tall vertical and a thing, they're creating a wider flat pad to put this. Design that you could put on any flat side anywhere. With that fifteen foot horizontal distance behind it, it creates a lot more, as John has pointed out, more um. Grading that's been labeled. Exempt understory, but it's actually not, it's it's. A separate amount of non-exempt grading there, so. They're they're neither notching into the hillside nor uh complying with the maximum. Non-exempt grading, and again, this is problematical because we have a design that Lester has shown us where literally no grading is necessary. On this site to make an an economically viable use of it.
I want to add uh that. We exceed a thousand cubic yards, I mean, I haven't seen this new calculation, because I guess it's somewhere in here on a little piece of paper, but. You take. Fifty feet by. By a hundred and forty feet by fifteen feet and you get over a thousand cubic yards. It's just, just that one little part. So we need a variance. I mean, we have to use real numbers here. And uh, and the other point that's really the main point, and it's gonna be a big point at coastal is. You may not. Excavate a coastal bluff. Period, the only use for a.
John, hold on, i- if we were to talk about co-. Coastal bluff here, all of the Santa Monica Mountains was a coastal bluff that sometimes, you're just not allowed to build a house there?
No, you can't, you can't build into the bluff base. Okay, it's true, every single approval we've done in Malibu on a bluff face, the only thing you can use it for is a public trail. Okay, and this is the most prominent bluff face in Malibu. The most prominent. With the pier right across from it, and there's s- specific sections in the LIP that says. You may not do it, especially when it's viewable from a public viewing place or a protected highway. Both of which are in this case. And. It's. What you're saying basically is, let's forget what coastal said about bluffs, we've had hundreds of hearings on houses on bluffs. And all this kind of stuff. And never once have we said, go ahead and carve into the bluff. Never once, not one time, and now we're gonna say, okay, well, you can do it here, and you can take every apartment building there down to. To uh Santa Monica and do the same thing. Essentially, you're setting a precedent. And it's not allowed, it's just the number one rule on coastal bluffs. We've had hundreds of hearings on it, hundreds.
Jeff?
Yeah, I wanted to, there there's a, there's a bit of confusion that's going on here, uh, uh. On this issue of um Lester's prior design, because um. When that came up, a- a- and it it there, a- at one iteration of this project. The justification. For the um, for. Some or all of the variances, I can't remember specifically which one, I think it might have been the wall, was that. You couldn't have an economic use of this property without the variance. And Lester blew that argument up. Because he showed a design that he had prepared. Which did provide an economic use. And it didn't require uh the 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 very, yeah, thank you, it's a little blurry.
Um, yeah, let me, I can change my setting here.
But the point is, the the point is simply that. This project no longer. Uses that justification for the variance. The idea that it has to be there in order to uh provide an economic use. Is not really part of the justification that's provided in the staff report now, now it's simply a straightforward variance. Analysis under the state law and under the LIP. You know, are there other people who have had this, you know, other uses, is it a, is it a privilege, is it this, is it that? So, we're no longer, we're no, we're no longer talking about. The fact that Lester had uh an alternative use, I was, I was very well persuaded by what he said. But the project is is morphed on from that, and that's no longer the argument in favor of it.
There there's what Lester did.
Yeah, but Jeff, I want to point out, when you go through the resolution, and I'm gonna read every one of these that says it. There's no less than twelve times where they say. That you can't build on this unless you do this. Okay, it's all over the resolution, there's there's. I I guess there's at least twenty. It's not been eliminated.
It, well, if you're right, John, if it's, if it's all over the resolution, then we can go through it and you can, you can point them out to me and we can take them out if if that's what's needed.
You mean, take them out so we can approve it?
It is cha- it is changed, it is changed in the staff report itself.
Well, you gotta remember that the staff report is made by that application. This, this project. That dates back to two thousand and nine, when they considered Lester's application for them. Okay, it's always been there, all these findings.
Okay, the 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 point I'm trying to make. Is is, and this is really pretty fundamental. There are standards for granting a variance that have to do with whether. Everybody else in the neighborhood has already had the same privilege. But there's another one, even if nobody else in the neighborhood has ever had the privilege, if you cannot have an economic use of the property. Without granting the variance, you have to grant the variance, because by definition. Coastal acts cannot be uh used in order to affect a taking, if you don't have an economic use, there's a taking, so on and so on, so. Tho- those are two separate and distinct justifications for granting a variance. This project, as I recall it originally, used that first one, that that you couldn't have an economic use without granting the variance. I no longer see that. In this, in this project, what I see are the standard routine. Analysis, the the variance analysis, does everybody else in the neighborhood have one, is it a special privilege, all of that stuff. Those are the only point I'm trying to make, I'm just trying to draw the distinction between those two types of variance.
So, are are you saying, and I, and this is a real question, are you saying that? Uh. Lester's plan was not an economic use?
I'm not at all saying that, in fact, Lester's use, I'm saying the opposite. That Lester's plan was an effective economic use, and it therefore destroyed the argument. That you had to build this project or you couldn't have an economic use. But this, the argument has changed, this project has changed, it's no longer depending. On that argument, it's now we're doing a straightforward. Variance analysis, does everybody else in the neighborhood have one, that kind of thing.
Well, but there there's a lot of language in the findings, repeatedly in the findings saying, paraphrasing now, but basically. We can't do anything else on this because of the slope, too much of the site is sloped, so we have to do this big wall, et cetera. But. And and I don't know if I said this before, but a third of the lot is flat, and if you had a twelve foot wall, that gets you to half of the lot, which is three times the FAR, so. You could do whatever you're allowed in the FAR and still do it on the flat, so a lot of the findings are based on this, like, well, we're next to a slope, so. We have to use this, this is our only option, but it's just not true.
I'm not sure you're understanding me, but I I'm just gonna leave it there.
Okay, um. Craig, what is the next item that you'd like to move towards?
Well, I I don't, I I don't really fully understand what we need to get at in terms of affordability, um, and and we do have the coastal letter saying that we need. More information about that, about uh. A r- report about luxury overnight accommodations, et cetera, but you know, I I looked at some numbers. I averaged the. Six places in Malibu that came up with six hundred and nine dollars a night, which by coincidence is exactly what the June motel charges. And then I looked at what a, what a motel six and a days in and a Best Western are. In places nearby, either Santa Monica or the Valley or Camarillo, and those numbers are in the range of eighty dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars. And so when we're talking about. But we also have this language that says. It's not luxury unless it's a hundred and twenty percent of average. That would be. A hundred and twenty percent of six hundred and nine is, I don't know, seven, seven hundred and thirty or something, so, yeah, seven hundred and thirty. So. The code is saying that affordable is anything less than seven hundred and thirty, I I don't understand what. What they're getting at, but I think the point is. I don't see how anything on this could be affordable. And it it seems sort of disingenuous to just say, well, they can just pay into a fee. Where that will provide it somewhere else, and in lieu fee, when we don't have, as coastal points out, we don't have a mechanism. For applying that fee anywhere, so we wouldn't be achieving the affordable result regardless. I'm I'm just kind of confused about. What what we can expect there.
The applicant testified tonight. He was going to provide a million dollars a TOT. That comes down to nine hundred and sixty-three dollars a room if it's rented every single night.
John, I think you said five hundred thousand to a million dollars.
Oh, nine, divided by two.
Re- regardless, it's 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 still up, it's at least five hundred bucks a night at least, and what what is?
Full occupancy.
Yeah.
No vacancy ever.
What are we supposed to do with the affordable thing, do, I I mean, in my mind. Coastals told us what we're supposed to do is to get get a report here, but I I don't know, short of that, how we just gonna say, eh, you know, it's it's good.
Jeff?
Isn't. Isn't that the issue that they, that coastal imposed the. Whatever it was, eight million, eighty million, eight hundred million dollar fee on Norm's Hotel, was on the basis of providing. Um. Providing affordable accommodations elsewhere. Wasn't.
Yes.
That that, I I'll just leave that question out there, Adrian, explain to us what, I know you 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 changed something in it and you. Put in a pro- provision that they have to make an in-lu payment. Not really clear what the in-lu ma- payment is, but maybe you can explain it, and before I turn it over to you, let me say that. With. It seems like Malibu is doing its part for affordable overnight accommodations, particularly with Joe's uh. Tent city down on the Bluff Park, uh, it seems like we're doing our part.
Adrian, I've been approved yet.
So, um, I can, I can see if I can find the actual language, but um, what I said in the presentation is that. The, this is a mitigation that was put into the uh local implementation plan, and there's uh at least. Two ways of uh complying with that mitigation, one is to provide. The affordable overnight accommodations uh within the project, and the other one is to pay the in-lu fee. So, the applicant, as always, uh planned to pay the in-lu fee that was included in the staff report originally. And now we received a letter from the coastal commission that says that they instead should be providing the the um. The affordable overnight accommodations on site. Uh, and so. Uh, the point I was making is that. Um, by pro- by paying the in-lu fee, they would be consistent. Uh, with the local coastal program, which is what the coastal commission adopted for the city to enforce. This uh specific mitigation.
So you're saying that the requirement of of. Of uh. Making an in-lu contribution is. Is sufficient to meet what you understand to be. The requirements of the LIP?
Have the language here in front of me?
Well, that's what the language says, but in Norm's Hotel. He he went to coastal after the city. With the in-lu fee, and they said, no, 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 no. It's too low. It's eight hundred grand. They they, it may be in the language that you can pay in in-lu fee, but they denied it. And that's what they're saying in their letter.
No, what they did was approved it and. And they approved it and sent it back to the city and the city denied it, but but.
No, they approved the eight hundred thousand and the city denied it.
Yeah, I that's what. But I guess my question is, isn't the, yeah, this is obviously gonna get in front of them at some point, they're gonna tell us what the fee is and what the amount is gonna be. Um, I don't see that it's something that should hold us up.
That's sort of where I'm at with it.
Well, where are we at with norms, it's. It's dead in the water.
Yeah.
Because, because we didn't provide for it.
No.
That's what I'm talking about.
So we did. John, let me rephrase the question, what would you propose to deal with this?
What I would propose is something the coastal commission would accept.
Okay, well, what is that?
I think it would be.
The same as Norm.
Where twenty percent of the, twenty percent. Twenty percent of the rooms have to be, you know, say, under two hundred bucks.
I think, I think we need to listen to what Commissioner Jenny just said, it's not gonna be our call, so it's really nothing to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, what what coastal did was, you know, Norm agreed voluntarily with his arm twisted, you know, to. Put this money into an escrow, it was not actually added as a condition, I don't believe it was just referenced that um this money had been paid because they felt the in-lu fee was insufficient. So if the applicant here is willing to um. You know, provide that to the city rather than to the coastal commission executive director. Um, you know, that that would, that that could be found by the coastal commission to satisfy the condition if they act consistently with, you know. Um, how they treated Norm's Hotel, but we haven't heard um any offer from the applicant to do that, it wasn't imposed on them to do that, um, it was voluntary.
Still think. Not our call, it's gonna be somebody else's call ultimately. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, so the the next question, I I raised it already. What do we do about it? The fact that Caltrans wants right turn only signs at all the exits and. It expressly says we can't be pulling out to go east into the pocket that's designed for U-turns there. Um.
Could not agree more to that. They they need to make a left turn out of that place.
It's nuts, and and so the question is, how does this work, how does it affect traffic flow, if if the the next legal turn is either. Cross Creek and pulling into the state park, because you can't do a U-turn at Cross Creek, you have to drive into the state park lot and do that maneuver, or Web Way. But if there are valets on the scene, or you know, tourists who, they're not gonna drive a mile to Web Way. We're gonna, we're we're inducing. Uh, illegal U-turns like right in the Surf Rider Beach zone, so what 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 do we do about this?
Well, I I think.
What are the people, what?
I think. Personally, I think that there won't be a lot of people driving, I believe, because of where this this motel is, right, right. Dead center of of all the action restaurants, the pier, uh, you can get over to the lagoon, you can walk out over that way, it's real close to. I don't think people, I think once people get there and they realize where they are. Uh, if they haven't figured it out before, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of people pulling out of there and starting to drive around, I believe. They're gonna walk everywhere, because it is one of the few places in our city where you can walk to some. A couple of places to get dinner and whatnot without having to worry about that damn road out there, so. Um, I, to me, yes, they're gonna have to, if when they pull out, they're gonna have to go somewhere and make a U-turn and come back to go home if they're headed back east. But do it while they're stay, is there Commissioner uh Hill, I I I believe they're just gonna stay. But while they're stay, is there Commissioner uh, Hill, I, I, I believe they're just gonna stay there. The car will stay parked and they'll enjoy our city as we would hope they would.
Well, most of them will be going back east eventually, and a lot of them might be doing it on a Sunday afternoon when the traffic is so stopped right there. And they're gonna go. No way am I gonna ride all the way up and as even as far as they can see, they're gonna go, I'm pulling straight out into this. Pocket that it goes the other direction and I'm gonna weave my way into traffic and somehow bowl my way in here. Right in the zone where we have like the most accidents apart from Los Flores.
Well, plus, there's one important thing you're missing. You're, you're saying, oh, the motel, forty people, random entry and exit. You're not saying the two hundred people that are gonna be there for the T U P for the wedding that all leave at the same time. Or the three hundred and seventy next door. We're gonna leave at two o'clock in the morning drunk, okay? None of this has been studied, okay? You could have two events at the same time. You could have as many as five hundred people there. Okay? Not forty. We're not looking at forty. We, we have to look at the worst case scenario and we haven't. What do you, and you're not gonna have a valet handle three hundred and seventy people. At one time. It's not gonna work. And then, and then the proposal on this property is. Let him park seventeen hundred feet away, I think it was. And they're supposed to walk there in the middle of the night? No, not gonna happen. That's why we needed a traffic study. We, we needed a, a circulation study. We need to look to the fact that there's now. A restaurant across the street that pumps out business, okay? It's the, the pier is a lot busier than it used to be, a lot, not fourteen years ago. Fourteen years ago was. Basically had a failed restaurant. Um. You're talking maybe a thousand people leaving at the same time. Who knows?
I, John, I don't think that that's gonna happen, but uh, Jeff, you were trying to speak for a minute there.
Yeah, well, I, it just, I, I, I just don't know where you go with this. I mean, uh, it, the, the people who park in that dirt lot now. Um, have the same problem, right? Except that they don't have a right turn only sign. Uh, we can put in that the Caltrans is, okay, it's gotta be a right turn only sign. And then we can study it with, to, to what purpose? The, you know, that, that, okay, gee, I guess that means that you can't build the project because people might try to make a U turn. I mean, where do you go with the fact? Uh, with, beyond the study that's already there to, to examine this new possibility? And, and if I could just take one moment, uh, can I ask um. Adrian, can, are you in control or Andrew or Alex rather? Can you put up the picture that I sent in um, today? Uh, is it possible to get that up on the screen? This is purely ser- serendipitous. A high school friend of mine sent me this picture of Malibu in the nineteen sixties. Um, to, you know, remember old times. And I thought, ah, boy, there's a coincidence for you. And the point is. It was a mess then. It's a mess now. It's not ever going to not be a mess. Uh. This was what, what forty some odd years ago? Um, and. It, it's because, folks, we live at the beach. There are going to be fifteen million people coming out to the beach. Uh, and it's going to always be like this. Plus the fact that now, I don't know what the population of Southern California is, what, fifty percent more than it was in, in the sixties? This, the communities of Westlake, Agura, Agura Hills. They didn't exist at this time. It's, it's not going to get any better.
And free parking.
So I, I, and I guess that the point is that, you know, I, I, I. Over the course of these hearings, I, I get the impression that people feel like, oh, forty, fifty years ago, Malibu was just bucolic. Town with people square dancing in the median, you know, and, and it just wasn't. It's always been like this. So that was my point. I just, it was an accident and this picture was sent to me and I just thought I'd throw it up. Thanks very much. You can take it down.
Beautiful. Thank you. But it, it, it has changed, but, but I think more to the point, the problem now is we didn't have the Caltrans determination previously that they, the, the. No turn signs are required. So it, by implication, your solution might be for them to go to Caltrans and get whatever the equivalent of a variance is with them. To say, we're gonna do X, Y, and Z so we can figure out how to get cart. Cause as it is now, Caltrans has created a big problem here that none of us have a solution for.
Well, let me add something. That picture was taken. Obviously on a summer day. On a weekend. Okay, it is dramatically different now.
Yeah.
And, and when we, as a uh, planning commission say, oh, we can't do anything about it. It's screwed. Just think back to when we approved Nobu. With inadequate parking. And let them lie to us about how many employees they have. They have now admitted they have a hundred and twenty employees on one shift. Okay? And you don't think that screwed up Malibu? Drive down there on a Sunday or Saturday. You're back. Hey, you could drive to Point Dume. And yeah, maybe it's slow down to fifty going by the pier.
The traffic is always. Traffic is always.
Look at, John, I don't think that any of us are gonna stop all the traffic that's in Malibu.
What?
Right here on this call. We're, we're not gonna put an end to it. I think of the traffic.
But you can't make it worse. And that's what we did with Nobu.
Another thing that we have that's coming online, hopefully here soon, is gonna be a nice traffic signalization.
Oh, that's.
Synchronization that may even improve it. You may, you know, be careful with.
Yeah, and then without a discussion with us, they put in a, uh, one right across from the hotel, three hundred feet down, that every time somebody pushes it. Lambs ship, okay?
Um, so, uh, Craig, what did you want to discuss next?
You're muted, bud.
Craig?
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that. Um. Getting down to smaller details here now, but note that the uh, the dark sky and there's a condition here. Night lighting for sports courts or other private recreational facilities shall be prohibited. Um, here we have a pool and a bar that would presumably be used at night. Um, you're not allowed to light a pool at night. And yet you would be required, I think, and under, I don't know, OSHA or somebody would say. You have to have the pool lit if you're gonna have guests in it at night. Um, so.
I would imagine that the pool would have limited hours to probably ten P M. And if they were gonna have a pool that was not lit at night, they would probably require to have some kind of something around it or a pool cover. I'm not sure exactly what that code is.
Or lifeguard.
Well, so would you put in a condition that says uh, after dark? Uh, people could use the bar up there, but they couldn't go swimming.
I'd say, I'd say ten P M on the pool.
If you're gonna be allowing the beverage service till ten P M, then you would be, I, I mean, we can put the restriction on the pool that it would be allowed. Till ten P M. But then, of course, Craig, that would imply that you would be approving. The welcome use of a pool in a motel. And I just don't wanna, you know.
No, I, I.
Know how we're doing with that.
Issue of a pool in a motel is not, I, I agree with everybody that a pool is a feature of motels normally.
Okay.
Malibu, it's prohibited.
Well.
Thank you, John.
I, 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 I don't have to find a, a tight solution on that because there's so many other issues, but.
Okay.
But it, nonetheless, it says night lighting, it, it shall be prohibited. So.
The, the property, as with any commercial property or residential property for that matter, that will come before us now or in the future. Is governed by the dark sky ordinance.
Yeah.
And they do not have a way around that. So I, I, I don't think that we need to make that a real issue other than saying that. When the pool is not in use, we don't want it to be lit.
Well, except to say, maybe put in the condition that says you can't use the pool at night.
You can't use the pool after ten P M.
After ten P M.
Well, th- this says not, not at night is what dark guy says, so.
People, people are gonna wanna be in the pool. I think ten o'clock is fine. Everybody's supposed to shut their lights off at ten o'clock anyway. So they'd be following the rules that are in front of them.
Well, people are gonna wanna do all kinds of things in the pool. Our, our question here is just what is the code say and what, how do we respond to it?
I understand that. I'm comfortable with ten P M. John, are you comfortable with ten P M or no?
Well, I don't, I, the poll is not gonna pass anyway, so I don't care.
Okay. Uh, Jeff, did you have any comment on that?
No, I think it goes along with uh, with uh. The ten P M limit seems to be appropriate and it, and it's dark skies compliant, so I don't see what the issue is.
Okay, um, John, was there anything else that you specifically wanted to go over?
Oh, yeah.
We, we have it.
We need to, we need to look at the fact that. We have. We need to put up the diagram of the building and, and show that you cannot call something subterranean when it's above ground.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a minimum of a three story building. Minimum.
Is there a specific slide that you wanted to put up? Did you wanna put up?
The one that's got the yellow lines on it that says the measurements of uh, the uh. The, the diagram of the hotel.
Like the elevation from the side?
Yeah, the elevation from the side with the measurements in yellow.
Alex can.
Beginning of the meeting.
Uh, let me see if I can, I can, I can show a couple things or at least.
There, there is a slide that uh, Chair Masah provided to us.
I didn't provide that.
Well, you, you, you emailed it to us last.
I did?
I believe so.
Well, that was in the original report, original, uh, somebody put it in the original one. Last time we had a hearing. I didn't draw that, but anyway, it's a, it's the simplest diagram to look at on how the building is built. Okay? And uh. If we could put that up, you showed it earlier in the meeting.
Yeah, I, Alex is gonna look for it and make it available. There you go.
Here, this, this one is actually even better. If you could find.
That's it, okay.
No, 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 it's different. It's, it's um, PDF five oh four. But why this one is better is it shows the relationship to the highway. Now I can't see because your screen is on, so I'm not sure if I'm showing you, but.
Oh, that one you're showing us.
Yeah, it basically sho- it's like the diagram you have up there, but it extends all the way out to the highway. So you see that the parking garage is basically the same level as the highway.
Yeah, and basically. You have, and if you look at the, the, the rendering of the building, you can see how much taller it is in Malibu in. Okay, and what you did here is you put in, you're not measuring from lowest, lower of finished grade or natural grade. And you're calling this a garage, I mean, underground par- uh, unders, whatever the word is, uh, parking, and it flat out isn't. Okay, it's, it's a natural grade. And, and therefore the building is. What is it, forty-four feet high? Okay, and then there's, there's, that's a big problem. That's saying to people. Oh, you can build a six story building as long as you pile some dirt on the front of it. It's not the way it reads. The, the, the underground parking entrance and all that stuff was done for hillsides. Uh, so you can pull your car in to park. It wasn't done to make buildings taller. And, and. Then you can see there's a lot of problems with this, but number one. The, the, in the back of the building that you can see where. This building isn't held up. It is not an integral part of that fifty foot wall. Fifteen feet away. And uh, it's not integral part, doesn't hold anything up to the building. But it's fifty feet tall. And then it was excavated to the finished grade. A roof was put on it and then dirt was piled on top of the roof. To make it look shorter in the back where you can't even see it. And this. There, this is so far off. From the measurements given in the staff report. It's not even close. You, you, that would, if we pass this, what we say is, well, anybody that wants to have extra. Extra F A R can just build their parking structure, put the building on top of it and pile some dirt in front of it. It's not the way the code's written. It just isn't. And um.
Is there a?
That is a huge deal because every commercial project in this town. Uh, it piled a, pile of dirt up or build a parking structure and put it on top of it.
Adrian, is there another slide that, or, or Richard, that has the uh. That where you can see the actual dimensions on that a little bit. That one was a little bit fuzzy. Wasn't there one from your presentation that had that sort of side profile?
Is that the one Commissioner Hill was holding?
This is, yeah, maybe. I don't know if you can see it bigger now.
I'm not sure if we have that as a slide, but uh, let me check.
There's also a rendering that, that I can show you in a moment that shows how a car coming out of that bottom garage is at the same level as the highway. I don't know how long you guys need to look at this, but.
That's okay, you can put that down.
Yeah, I looked at the survey too and, and the um. The, the, the elevations on the highway vary a little bit from here to there. And so you can't put an exact number on it, but basically the highway and the. Flat area of the garage are plus or minus half a foot or so above and below. They're basically the same height. Um, and here this rendering is possibly illustrative. This is. You can see the car coming out of the garage. And you can gauge that the garage that's coming out of is basically at the same level. So basically they're just pumping up that big mound of dirt for the front parking lot. It's uh, I forget offhand, it's two and a half or three feet high. And then. Um. Where that, yeah, anyway, there's a four foot difference between the street level or the garage level and what they're calling. The first floor or no, I'm sorry. Wh- what they're calling the. The first floor, yeah. The first floor is four feet higher than what they're calling the basement. And the basement and the street are the same elevation. So the first floor is four feet higher than the street.
And, and this is really an important issue because what it does is it re- it. If you call it what it is, it's a structure above, above grade. Then it adds to F A R. And it's over the F A R and. It provides parking. That you're not counting.
I don't know what plan you guys are looking at. The garage is lower than, than the street. So naturally, hang on, when naturally, when you pull out of the garage, you're gonna be up higher. And they gotta have flow for the water, for the drainage. So. That part of the, that part of the driveway is gonna be higher than what the street level is because you gotta drain your water off the lot. But that garage is lower than, than, than when you pull out and, and pull up. So um.
That's not according.
Lower than the property.
Well, look at the plan that's in the, Craig just showed you. You can read it.
I got it, same one.
Okay, well, where do you see the drop?
I see the drop as soon as you get out of the garage, Vice Chair. It's got, you have to do that so the water will drain.
Uh, like we did on uh, uh, on La Paz.
I didn't do it, but. That was, that drainage, I remember that being in the meeting. That was, that was, that was set up different, a lot more room.
Yeah, and it was two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day dumped in the river because it didn't drain.
Adrian?
Thank you. Yeah, um, there are some cross sections in the architectural drawings and I did look to see if I could find. Um, anything in the presentation. Unfortunately, I don't have the cross section. Um, so, but. If you look at the cross sections in the architectural drawings, there is a, a, a bit of a drop. Between the uh, finished floor elevation of the garage and the parking lot. Um, uh, the parking lot is uh, you know, three or about three feet higher. Um. And the street is maybe about a foot lower than the um, the, the, you know, the parking lot in front of the, the building. Um, but yeah, this was designed so that uh, from the street, um, you know, you would be able to access the, the garage. Um, you know, so they can't really change the grates that much. Um, otherwise you would have a very steep slope that would not comply with the final point requirements.
The street is about two and a half feet lower.
You know, they, they, uh, depending on the cross section where you're, you know, that a particular one is two feet. I think the one I'm looking at is maybe a foot, maybe less than that. Uh, which is section, section A. Um, but um. The garage is built into the hillside. Um, and there's very, if you look at the cross section, there is a section uh, in the front. Of the garage um, that. Yeah, it's above existing grade and they are uh, putting. Um, soil there in order to um, make sure they. Cover that uh, exterior wall so that it qualifies as a basement. One of the conditions. To um, the project was, was added uh, that requires that. The grade immediately in front of the garage is raised up so that the bottom of the first floor and the top of grade. So that the bottom of the first floor and the top of grade is no. It's, it's, it's uh, three feet or less in order to comply with the basement. Um, one of the points that was made before is that the basement ceiling height is over twelve feet. And twelve feet is a requirement for residential uh, basements. And so that doesn't apply to commercial basements. Uh, we unfortunately don't have a, a definition for. Uh, commercial basements, uh, but we do try again to uh, make it comply with um. It not daylighting more than three feet and uh, making sure the garage opening is no wider than what. It's allowed for residential, um, you know, uh, subterranean garages. And the other point to make is that garages, whether below ground or above ground. Are exempt from FAR, uh, so that's not adding to the FAR. But it would add to the overall height of the buil- or excuse me, the overall height. More importantly, the number of stories. So if the subterranean garage doesn't qualify as a subterranean garage, then it would be a first floor. And therefore, the floors uh, above that uh, combined with the basement uh, would be three. Um, which would not be uh, allowed in the, you know, in. Would not be allowed here since the code only allows for up to two stories uh, and a basement.
So in other words, if your car, you park your car in there. And about halfway up to your, halfway up your hubcap is subterranean. The rest of it, the other fourteen, thirteen feet is above grade. There's no question about it. And it counts as a floor.
It's, it's a.
Can't, you can't just change the codes we've used for thirty years and say. Oh, let's start building parking structures and put buildings on top of them and not count it. Except, and, and it is not dug into the clip. It's got fifteen feet behind it. Okay? It's free space.
Let me just point out the survey. This is, the survey is PDF four eighty-seven. This is a tight shot in on it that uh, you can see, it might be hard to see, but. The gutter of PCH is at uh, different numbers around twenty, let's get that straight. Twenty point five, twenty point six, something between twenty and twenty-one-ish. And the floor of the garage is spec at twenty, elevation twenty feet, let, straight up. So we're, we're within a foot or so here from the, from the road level.
Okay, Dennis, did you have any comments on this specifically?
No, I, I think I made my comment. The, the garage is, is lower and nobody mounds dirt. You gotta compact dirt. Um, and uh, yeah, you gotta dig into the hillside. You can't work on a vertical, so it has to be stepped for safety.
That, that mounding of dirt is in the grading table. They have a lot of uh, fill that they're adding to.
Yeah, has to be compacted, has to be certified.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, no, I, I think, I, I think they've got what they've got here and the water will drain away from the building. And, and uh, go where it's supposed to go.
Yeah, it's nothing to do with the height of the building. The building is way over height. Above natural grade and. That's what the rules we've been using for thirty-three years or twenty-three years or whatever it is. Lower of natural or finished. And you can't have it. Not add to it, lower of natural finished or whatever we figure is, we'll call subterranean that's above grade.
If there weren't, if there weren't twelve or thirteen other buildings going down to the east that didn't look just like this in the back. I tell you, you might be on to something, but since everybody's got a wall on this thing going down that road, I don't think so.
No, there's a certain thing about following the rules when they're made. None of those buildings. Were made prior to city. None of them, not one.
I think that you're saying that most of them were made prior to the city.
Well, name one that wasn't.
Well, I just, maybe it's a play on words, but in any event, uh, Adrian, you had a comment?
No, I, sorry, lower minded.
Okay, uh, Jeff, how do you feel about this?
Well, the, everybody's ignoring the line that, in that picture that, that, that shows. All the way to the street that says the dash line indicates existing natural grade. And when you put that together, all you're really talking about is whether that mound of dirt in the, in the front is right and whether it qualifies. Uh, as a, as a basement or not. Um. I, I, I. I understand. The, the, there is a larger issue here. And, and, and I understand that there is a feeling that the development standards. Um. Were revealed by God and delivered on tablets uh, back at the beginning of cityhood. But, but really, when you, when you remember what happened and the way these, these, let me just digress for just a few minutes. Um. The, i- in the theory of the way that development standards are supposed to be uh. Made or created is that whoever is making the decision, the city council or the coastal commissioner, whoever it is. Looks at an area and says, we'd like to have this, when it develops, we'd like to have it developed in this fashion with. With, this is the way we want it to look. And so you create development standards so that when people follow those standards. You will result in what the vision was originally. That's the theory. I don't know if it ever is done that way, but that's the theory. When these standards were developed, there was only one piece, one area of town that everyone was looking at. All, all the residential standards are done early on. When it finally got around to doing commercial standards. Everybody was looking entirely at the civic center area, all of that undeveloped land. And the development standards were not developed, uh, it, it's demonstrable. They weren't developed because this is. By following those standards, people would, that develop the, the vision of the city council. Instead, those development standards were developed to uh, to the largest extent possible, prevent that area from being developed. That's why, although the FAR was originally point two five, when somebody actually suggested, hey, you know, we could develop at that level. Uh, it was immediately reduced down to point one five. Uh, it was not designed to uh. By, by, by forcing wide areas and, and allowing FAR, it really created a, an impulse to, to go up rather than out. So, having said that. Nobody was thinking about this strip along the coast. And to imagine that this strip, which is constrained by the highway on one side and the hillside on the other. Would feasibly be developed with those standards, um, is just silly. And so what you're probably going to end up with for the rest, until somebody. Dramatically happens, uh, what you're probably gonna have is, those buildings will remain the way they are forever. Because nobody's gonna be able to meet point one five FAR and uh, and the setback requirements and so forth. So that's really the reason why we end up with this project, which requires or which is asking for variance from those standards. Um, if the, if the standards, if standards, development standards have been developed specifically for this area of town. Um, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be an issue. Now, I'm gonna come back to that later in context of, of another one of the variances, but in this particular case. I think that the, the architect has been uh, invested in trying to come up with a way. That gives a, a, a working project, a working building. That meets, stretches a little bit, but meets the standards of the development standards as they uh, are in the code. Uh, and that in, indicates, is indicated by the dash line indicating the existing natural grade. What's going to happen is that that building will be dug into the hillside. And that is going to be the natural grade on the uh, the eastern side of that building. So um, that's a long-winded way of saying that, I, you know, I'm not troubled by uh, this design.
Well, I, I just wanna say, what you just said was, in my opinion. We didn't, thirty years ago, we didn't consider this, so. Uh, despite the fact that we've turned down. We, we made everybody else for the last sense we've had a code, everybody else. Follow the heights requirements, follow the FAR. And by the way, the FAR was dictated by the fact that. The county zoned this for a hundred and sixty-five thousand people. And if we had a, a point five FAR, we'd have millions and millions of square feet of commercial land. So that was an adjustment for that. But to say, gee, I didn't think about this thirty years ago. Uh, so we can just change it now after we've made every commercial building in town follow the same rules. Uh, and.
No, I'd be grateful if you'd just express your views without putting words in my mouth.
Well, I'm just saying, that's the way I heard it. Uh. That's the way I heard it. Let's, let's ignore the, the rules that have been followed forever. Because this is different. We've never done this one before. Uh, and, 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 and part of being a planning commission and part of having codes is, number one. We don't get to decide. The, the legislative body gets to decide. The city council gets to decide with the approval of the coastal commission. We don't make up the rules. We follow them. Uh, and when it's as obvious as this. Where it's, you call something subterranean when it's above natural grade. And we've told people for twenty, thirty years. I asked the natural grade or finished grade or lowest.
John, it seems.
We go, well, let's change that.
But John, if you look at the natural grade line that's on there, you're clearly ignoring that that even exists when you look at this. And that's, that's where my biggest difficulty is with your analysis.
Skylar, the front of the building is not in the slop zone, okay? You can go to the back, you go fifteen feet behind it, yeah, you're in the, you're in the cliff, not the front. Not the front, not the finished grade, okay? It flat out is not. And you've inspected the property, uh, and you can see it from the aerials.
I know, but if, but if I'm looking at the natural grade line that's on the section, section A, A three point one, okay? It's a dotted line that goes on. Ninety percent of the volume of the garage. Is below natural grade.
That's not what the code says.
I, I, I think the, here's the, here's the problem.
Finished or natural, finished or natural, okay, lowest of. And also, it, it has to do with the circumference of the building, not just part of it. The whole thing. And all you see is the front of the building. The front of the building is three stories. No question about it. One foot below grade doesn't cut fifteen feet of building. And there's fifteen feet, okay, you take a foot off for, for the grade or a foot and a half or two feet. It's still thirteen feet, a whole story above natural grade and finished grade. It's not even close. And.
In your opinion, it's not even close. Okay, so I think we've kind of exhausted this, this.
If I may, if I may just respond to Commissioner Jennings, it, it, when he said that. Nothing will, can happen between the highway and the slope, uh, because there'll be FAR issues and whatever. Two things. One, we've, we've seen, we've said this already, but we've seen Lester's design that required zero grading. This design and what the other people would do in developing in here would be to not require the excessive grading variance. Nor the uh, construction on, well, I guess you'd still need the construction on slopes. But you could affirmatively notch into the hillside like the LIP requires. Rather than doing this giant one cut for everything. You could build in the same site, you could build this basically a very similar structure, but put the parking further out front. And notch the rooms back up against the hill. And then you wouldn't have all that excess grading. And it's, so it, I, I think there's a way that answers your question there that, that, that you don't require this gigantic cut.
You, you're aware that there no longer is a variance for grading.
Plus you get with the building like this, you get all the parking where everybody wants. It's.
Wait a minute, I, I just wanna make it clear. We all understand that the variance for grading is no longer part of the project.
Right, they did not count.
It, yeah, it should be.
So, so here, we're, we're back at this place where John and Craig are saying that what is before us is not true. And that we're just being prevented with false stuff. And I have a really hard time buying that.
Well, Skylar, show us on that diagram where it's false, that this, this is a under, underground parking lot. Show us where it's above, not above grade.
I mean, we have. Asked you to look at the natural grade line and that's what I was comfortable with.
You have to look at the four cor- the four corners of the building. The only entrance to underground structure can be the entrance thirty-six feet. Not the whole front of the building, a hundred and forty feet, not twenty-five, thirty percent of the building. That the code's very, very clear.
Okay, I don't, uh, um, is there, Jeff, is there something else that you would like to cover in regards to the project?
Um, well, yes, uh, we do to cover the um. Regional Water Quality Control Board issue that uh, we have dealt with. Several times, uh, I personally, um. I, I think. Demanding that the uh, Regional Water Quality Control Board issue a letter. Uh, saying, yeah, 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 this is okay, um, is probably a fool's errand. I don't think that they are gonna do things like that. I think what we've got. Uh, after extensive conversations between staff and uh, the, the. People on the board or, or the, the staff members of the board, uh, is about as good as anybody is going to get. And I know that it's not ironclad, but I never have understood why, uh. Why we don't say to the applicant, um, I wouldn't try to build this building unless you know that the Regional Water Quality. Control Board wasn't going to have a fit when you did it, because otherwise you're gonna have an unusable building on your hand. So I think that, that I'm satisfied that, that uh, that that requirement has been met. Even though I realize it's a little informal uh, to the standard that Craig is uh, is looking for.
Craig, what do you feel about that?
Um, I'm sorry, my dog is whining. Um, I, I feel like that's one more thing that we, we need to have an affirmative determination on. That that's required.
But, but, did you hear what Jeff was saying in regards to the fact that if they don't get that sorted out? That what they have been, would be potentially granted is worthless? Without their blessing?
I, I, I think, I don't think we are in the position of asking them to just take a big gamble. I don't know. I think we're supposed to get it straight and, and, yeah, I, I don't, I don't really get.
Do you, do you see a scenario whereby you're gonna get somebody from Regional Water Quality Control Board to issue some sort of a letter? That we've never seen, that says that this project is okay, that they're gonna just start doing that on properties?
Well, I think we decided that that, that we required that. And that being the case, I don't think we've gotten that yet. If we gotta like, it seems, literally quote, it seems.
Do you see a scenario where we will get that?
Yes.
I, I don't, I don't know how the re- how the board works. I, I, so, I don't know.
I guess my, my point of what I'm saying is it doesn't seem like they operate it that way.
Well, why do we have an MOU? Why did the city? Vote, city council vote five zero to do an agreement with the water board on how we would proceed with our projects? Why did we do that? It's an MOU. It's a legal document, okay? And. If you say, I can never get approval for this in writing from them. Why would the city stop them from building if they wanted to have twenty thousand gallons? Okay, if you say.
Because it, it goes back to a real old principle of development. If you don't have water, you can't build. If you can't get rid of water, you can't build. It's pretty simple.
Well, that's, that's a question I wanna bring up, but basically, if you're saying the city never gets approval. Then what do the inspectors look at? They've got nothing to get approval from. So, but the, the other point, th- this is, one of the problems I see with this is it makes no sense mathematically. Okay, what they're saying is they're gonna put seventeen hundred gallons of water in the ground. And I believe they're gonna produce four thousand and fifty a day.
Per day, gallons per day, yeah.
Okay, and they're gonna have a ten thousand gallon tank to take the overflow. Well, the overflow is twenty-three hundred and fifty gallons. That's four days' capacity on the tank. What do they do with the water after that?
Okay, maybe we should bring, uh, is John, is John still available?
Mr. Yerkes.
Uh, can we mic John up real quick? Who, who designed this system and have him give us a two minutes on why it's gonna work?
Um, yeah, thanks for having me. Um, so the way that we designed this, or I designed this is, um, what you do is you, you look at the actual flows. So you, we look at, we went through and if you look at my report. Actually went through, um, and with, with the client and, and with other hotel uses and we came up with percent occupancy, worst case, worst week percent occupancies. Normal percent occupancies and so that, and the flow fluctuates throughout the week. Um, what I did is I took the worst case scenario and I put those on back to back weeks. Um, in the summer, you know, and I actually mapped it. If you look at my report and, and in my spreadsheet, it actually shows that and uh, some flows are lower, some flows are higher. I set the average flow at seventeen hundred gallons per day. And use code flow for, for peaks and went through and evaluated how much, like you're saying. A certain amount of water goes in. If it's over the seventeen hundred gallons per day, we store it. If it's less than seventeen hundred gallons per day, we, we use it. And that spreadsheet comes up with the size of an equalization tank that you need to, to make sure that you have seventeen hundred gallons per day. The water board is gonna, we can only discharge, just like the pier, we can only discharge what the water board will allow us to discharge, which is seventeen hundred gallons per day. So if we have more than that, then it goes in the equalization tank. If we have less than that, then it, then it comes out. And it, it's all based on a spreadsheet and then there is a buffer in, in the E Q tanks. It's not sized exactly for that flow. We have additional capacity. Yeah, and, um, the water board did, they did write a letter. Um, and I think Paulo's on the line too. They did, uh, send an email that, um, they agreed with our, uh, and I, I can't, I don't have the letter sealed in front of me. I think Paulo might have it. That, um, talks about how we're not, we are on that list, so we um, don't need concurrent approval from them. However, they did go over, go through my, our application and all of my calculations and design reports. And we actually modified my report to meet some of their required, requirements and modify the design. Uh, and they are in agreement on our, on, uh, on, on the system. And Paulo would speak, could speak more to that in Tetra Tech.
Are you, uh, are you comfortable that the system will work as designed?
Yeah, totally. I would, I, I have, I have, I have an engineering license and I stamp it. And my license is a lot more, worth a lot more than one project.
And how many of these have you designed in Malibu?
Uh, well, I did, um, Nobu, Soho, McDonald's, uh, Malibu, Malibu Inn. Um, Tranqus, Pavilion's, Ralph's when it was still there, um, all the commercial ones that actually work in Malibu.
So needless to say, you're, you're pretty needless to say, you're pretty comfortable with the design that you have here that it will work?
Yes.
Yeah, do any of those projects have overflow tanks?
Yes. Equalization tanks? You talking about equalization tanks or overflow tanks?
That is, yeah, what do we call it?
It's an equalization tank. An overflow tank would be for overflow.
Okay, well, restricted tanks. Let me ask you this.
But no, it's not restricting it either. It's equalizing it.
Okay, equalizing it. When you calculated the flow during the summer. Did you calculate that they would be full for three months of the summer?
Uh, they won't be full for three months of the summer. Nobody is. But I, if you look on my spreadsheet, that was part of the application and part of what was approved by Paulo and by the water board. It, it's all there. I can't tell you
We don't have it in front of us. I'm just asking you some basic
Part of the, it was part of the application.
Well, this thing's a thousand meters long, uh.
Well, I thought this is really important.
I know, it is really important. Do you want to, do we, I'm asking the specific question. Tell me what page it's on. What I'm asking is what? You say it's never full, okay?
I never said it's never full. I said it fills up and then it empties out.
Okay, but in the summer, what rate did you use for occupancy?
Um, it's, I can't off the top of my head. It, it's in the spreadsheet. I think we used, um, I think it was eighty, eighty to ninety percent. I could look, uh, I can get my report up. I have it right here. Let me look.
What I'm after is what, what was the at eighty percent, what is the, uh, outflow?
Um, the occupancy, I had a Mac oc, max occupancies in my report on, um, uh, Friday, worse, or Saturday, worst case was thirty, thirty three hundred gallons per day.
Okay, and then, so worst case is thirty three hundred, so
Yeah.
Uh, if you, you have sixteen hundred gallons extra every day on a worst case scenario, so
That's, no, that's on a Saturday, on, uh, the same week. On, let me, let me just tell you, uh, okay, let's go through the worst, worst case, the spreadsheet that you have in your report. Um, on the worst week that we could predict, uh, on Monday, which is always low, you would have sixteen hundred gallons per day. Tuesday, you'd have, uh, fifteen hundred. Wednesday, you'd have seventeen hundred. Thursday, you would have two thousand five hundred and fifty six. Uh, Friday, you would have thirty one hundred. Saturday, you'd have thirty three hundred. Sunday, you'd have two thousand. And then if you have two of those weeks back to back, which is how I modeled it. Then that's when you would store flow and that's when you would get your peak uh, volume for the equalization tank, which in this case is about eight thousand five hundred gallons. Um, and then the next three weeks after that, your flows on a Monday would be eight hundred and twenty eight gallons per day. Tuesday, eight hundred and twenty eight. Um, the peak on that, uh, the best case week would be twenty eight hundred on a Friday, twenty eight hundred on a Saturday, and then Sunday would drop down to twelve hundred.
So you're saying that on, on, on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it's going to be one twenty five percent occupied. And Hotel Across the Street says they average eighty eight percent.
I don't think Hotel Across the Street says that because I, I worked on it.
Well, they did when they applied for their extra swimming pool.
Oh, wait, I John, I think the other important thing
Max occupancy. They're not going to do it all the time, but they have to design their parking for their max occupancy.
No, I'm just telling you water. You're saying that in general, hotels and motels in Malibu are only twenty five percent occupied in the summer, one week days. That, that is my body.
Uh, yeah, that's not what I said.
Well, eight hundred and twenty eight gallons is water of, is a quarter of your maximum.
Look at, look at my spreadsheet. It's all there and then you can, you, you can figure out how, you know, the days that go. I don't, I don't want to go through.
Well, John Maza.
What?
I don't think that going down the rabbit hole with an engineer that's licensed and professional and has done this on all these systems that continue to work is getting us anywhere productive, other than him saying, when asked straight out, are you confident that the system's going to work? He said yes. He's presented it to the regional water quality control board who agrees with him and has approved numerous of his systems and somehow you're still questioning it.
I don't remember the M O U restriction.
Let, let me, let me, uh, let me just say this. These values that we're using, the values that I'm modeling are also code values. They're higher than normal values. McDonald's, for example. Uh, we use the standard fifty gallons per seat for restaurant in Malibu. During COVID, um, we actually had less water going into the wastewater plant that was coming into the restaurant. And that's because everything is going out in ice and cokes. In a hotel, we're going to, excuse me?
I, I want to get down to the real, what really happens in this
Okay, then look at my spreadsheet.
Okay, no, I want to ask you something. If, if, for example, you're wrong and we have a period of two weeks of, of full occupancy of that motel. We have over twenty thousand gallons in excess. What happens to that water once it gets filled up to ten thousand?
Like any other place in Malibu, like, like any other wastewater plant in the country. If they're over capacity, they're going to have to, if, in Malibu in particular, if they're over capacity. Just like the pier, if they get to their max capacity, they can't discharge. They have to pump and haul it, just like you would if your septic tank failed.
Okay.
They can't discharge.
Now we have, we, we're being told that this has, can only discharge seven hundred, seventeen hundred gallons a day. Is there a meter on the tank and is there anybody watching?
Yeah, there's meters, there's alarms, there's everything. It's, it's got a, uh, uh, P L C that actually calls out emails. Has a graphic display on, on, uh, on people's phones, computers. This isn't a, uh, standard system. We have duplex pumps. Everything is redundant. You know, this is set up, just like Nobu, Soho, McDonald's, all the other ones that are high impact or in areas that, that need additional monitoring. It's all set up to be remotely monitored. And they'll know. Every, they, they will know if they're having a problem.
Well, when we do this for houses, and I don't know about commercial buildings, we put a restriction in our, our resolution that says you have to report, uh, have to have a management plan and report to the city.
This is one, this is one step above that. This is, this is governed by the water, the water board. So they have to have a licensed, an actual licensed operator. And in, at your house, you don't have to have an actual licensed operator. That operator has to have the same type of license that I have. They're responsible for this and they can go to jail if they, if they're, if they're violating.
So, but why don't we require it?
It is required. What do you? This is required here. It's required, it's, it's not required by you. It's required by the state.
So who, who, uh, who?
The regional water quality control board requires the building to have the license or that, use an operator that has the license, John. We're, we're going way into things.
All I want to know is who inspects it because
It has to be reported. They have to do reporting to the water board.
All I'm saying, Skyler, is he may be the expert. I disagree with Dennis that the expert's always right. Uh, but it's inconceivable to me that we have a hotel right across the street from the pier that's twenty five percent occupied in the summer. It's inconceivable to me.
I never said that.
That's all I'll say.
All right. Yeah, I have one, I have one question for John. Um, we, the understanding, my understanding is that the water board's list for this, it runs on a per project basis, not a per site basis. And that the project that was on the list was the commercial structure from two thousand nine, I think it was. Um, and now this is a completely separate use, apart from the, the numbers, uh, what's going into the ground or not, but the project itself is different. Can you definitively say, or do you know enough about the water board's, like, legal administrative process on this to say? Yeah, you know what? It's, they can actually just substitute a different project and that's not a, that's not an issue.
Um, Paulo's on the line. There's a letter that went out that from the water board. After all of our meetings, it actually states that this is still the project that's on that Z Z list. Or W W list or whatever, the, the list of the exempt projects, um, on the exempt project list that they will, uh, that they're going to review, um, I think concurrently. Uh, Paulo, Paulo is on the line and, and he's probably the one that should talk about that.
Rebecca can't, or yes, that's unmute Paulo.
And, and is that the same letter where they said, um, uh, how, how do they phrase it? It seems, it seems that this will qualify.
Let's ask Paulo. He's up, he's right here. Can we unmute him, please? You guys do know who he is, right?
We do, um, if you could unmute Pete Chinto.
Paulo actually should be able to unmute himself. Um, he's set up just like you guys, because he's staff.
Okay, I have asked him to unmute.
Maybe he fell asleep because we weren't talking so long.
He's in the fridge.
But John, do you have a comment on that if, if Paulo isn't here?
Oh, I think
No, you're, you're Scott, Larry, you're Slaski.
Uh, I'm looking for that letter right now. I'm sorry. I'm going back through emails.
I think, I think their water quality boards had their way with us. We, we have a sewer system that's going in town. And what, what Mr. Yaroslavski's had to design and has to go before them. There's, there's really nothing to talk about here.
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out whether we satisfied the conditions of the M O U or not. And, and
Uh, well, the M O U doesn't apply to this. So the M O U applies to, um, because the M O U was replaced in this area by the, uh, by the prohibition and this was on the original on that Z Z list. Um, so it still does need to meet the water board standard. Let me, let me try to get a hold of Paulo.
Uh, should we, while he's doing that?
I mean, I just, I, I, I just don't think that this is going to change anything.
Okay, well, let's move on.
Am I missing something here?
Oh, absolutely not.
If I, if I, if I can find the letter, I'll raise my hand.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, John.
Yeah, cool. Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Uh, thanks for hearing me.
Jeff, did you have any other comments on anything? Cause I was going to get to the point where we could try to make a motion or something.
I have a couple
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Uh, and I, I want to get to the way I approach these things is to look at the discretionary uh, applications, the, the, the excess grading was removed. That gave me a lot of trouble. The last time we heard this thing, I have no trouble with the variance for parking, um, on the street side because uh, because of the nature of the, of the configuration of the land, there isn't any other place to park. Uh, except there. And so I find that meets the requirements of, uh, of a variance. And then you come to the wall and the wall is something that has hung me up for as long as I have been considering this thing. And my actually, the person I agree with most is on this is, uh, Lester Tobias. He probably doesn't want me to agree with him on this, but his his idea is, you know, you shouldn't do this. You should, there should be a comprehensive examination of this area of town. Uh, that, he called it the hospitality zone or something like that. And, and, and I agree with him that in, uh, in, in and not even in a perfect world, in a pretty good world, that's what would be happening. The, the, the city council would, would look at this area, realize that the standards that were developed for, uh, the civic center area are not applicable in this stretch of town and new standards will be developed that would allow these properties to develop in a, in a coordinated way. Um, that's where I was for a long time. And, and, and and then I realized that it's not a perfect world. It's not even a pretty good world, uh, and the city council is never going to do that. Uh, it just is not enough time to, to have that happen. And so that left me saying, well, you know, uh, th- this is, to me, this wall is is really a leaner. I, I think that I can find by, if I close my one eye and kind of hold my nose, I think I can make the findings that that will grant a variance, uh, on this wall. For a long time, I thought I shouldn't do it, that that really is something that's going to create uh, a problem that, uh, the city council should deal with. And then I realized that this thing is going to go to the city council anyway. So if the city council agrees with Lester and with my former position that this is something that the city council should deal with and not us. Then they're going to have a perfect opportunity to tell me so. And, uh, so I, 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 I think I can make the findings uh, for the, for that variance as well. Uh, it took me a long time to get here, but, but but that's where I am.
Wow, commendable. Nice. Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
Well, so it sounds like you've got three on that one. Um, I, for the, for what it matters, I do agree with Commissioner Jennings about the parking in the front. I think that variance is justified. And I agree with the comment about Lester about the hospitality zone. That's all good. I have six potential conditions that you guys might want to, uh, entertain.
Well, are you adding those to the problems? Are we going to discuss the rest of them? Or you just, you're done with that and you're going to add those?
Well, are there other big problems we have? I mean, these, these partly touch problems, but I think from my perspective, we've at least touched on a lot of the big ones or I, I think maybe all.
We haven't touched on hazard at all, for example.
Hazard. What hazard?
The hazard and the fact that you had an earthquake last month.
If, if there's, if there's a seven oh earthquake, the first place I'm heading to is this building, because it'll be the still, it'll be the one that's still standing.
John, I, I, John, I read some stuff into the record about the seismic stuff.
It's not that. It's whether we agree. Are, are, are we, did we get consensus that we can have above ground parking? And call it below ground?
It is below ground. You go ahead, Commissioner Hill. You got a couple of minutes here.
Okay, um, there is no condition in the document right now, uh, endorsing Caltrans requirement of a no left turn signage. That, I mean, if they've required it, we should condition that. Right?
Well, I mean, why don't we just say follow Caltrans recommendations as opposed to
Okay, okay. I'm just saying, you know
Any, is there any opposition to that?
No, it's their call anyway.
No, it's their call anyway.
It's just, I'm just saying.
That's what we don't have. They have that jurisdiction. I guess that's how I'm looking at it.
Okay, but you know, if. Uh, con- uh, condition seventeen. I'll just, it's quick. Motion sensor lights shall be programmed to extinguish ten minutes after activation, period. What motions? Are we gonna say all exterior lights should be on motion sensor lights or just the ones on the? Roof or what what is what is this pretend, what which what motion sensor light?
In this kind of a building, the only area you would use for something like that would be probably like a a trash area or something. An area where people aren't going to so that the lights aren't left on. But you're gonna have to have probably per, there's gonna be some kind of requiring in regards to the. Motel that you have to have some sort of light when you walk out of a door at night. That's on the good thing about this is that that hallway is on the backside of the building, so you're not really gonna see that. Right, from the public.
Yeah.
You're, I think the biggest issue you have with this has to do with the garage, right? And if and how that's lit, if you're making a point for one item in regards to lighting here, that's it.
I'm just asking, it just says motion sense, it's like what which ones, should we have motion sensor lights on uh? The roof so that if people walk off the roof, they're not just left on all night or, right?
Those lights are only gonna be on when people are, you can only have those lights on when people are occupying the space.
Exactly. So if people all leave, uh, the light's gonna go off automatically?
In time, yes.
In time.
A building like, a building like this is likely gonna have a commercial lighting system because it's gonna go through Title twenty-four. That's gonna require those kinds of things in occupancy sensors in all of its spaces.
It'll be on the plans. Don't have, it'll be on the plans.
It's also got to comply with the dark skies ordinance.
And the dark skies ordinance is ten minutes after nobody's moving around, they shut off.
Yeah, that's right. Okay.
All for that.
Um, do we wanna, I guess you, I can see where this is going. You don't wanna put in a. Condition that says no TUPs for use as an event center.
An event center? I don't think we want it to be an event center, but I don't have an issue if somebody has a wedding on the top of the thing.
Well, a wedding is an event. Uh, do motels have events?
When you say event center, I'm looking more like a convention center.
Well.
A venue, a venue.
Remember, we did not allow this surf rider in to have one.
Then we shouldn't allow it here.
Well, that's, we didn't allow Norm to have them either.
We shouldn't allow them here.
Well, then that's, we have a consensus on that, I believe.
That's a, that's a condition to add, a condition that says no weddings at at the.
Director Malika, do you remember it like that?
Adrian's got his hand up.
Okay.
Yeah, there's already a condition uh that we added last time. That um. Requires them to comply with the um, the TUP requirements. And um, so in other words, they could only have. Six events a year only um with an application for a TUP.
There you go.
And that was consistent with the condition that was added to uh the Seaview Hotel.
No, they don't get any, they don't get any TUPs. Did you hear what he just said? I heard what he said and I was at the hearing. And I also know Norm doesn't get it.
Yeah, I don't remember. Anybody remember more clearly?
Well, that's reason I'm asking our director and our AD to just double check that. Well, then let's double check it.
Adrian, didn't you say that was the condition pulled from Seaview that 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 they were only allowed to have weddings through?
Um, that's what I remember, but um, I also remember having that discussion at the last meeting on this item uh where. I think we specifically crafted something. For this project, uh.
But there's nothing specifically crafted. It just says you gotta get a TUP.
Right, but that condition didn't exist before last time this was. What's that?
What condition is it?
I'm looking for it. Just give me a second.
Can we just say?
And I'd also like to know if that was counted in the the water flow. You get a wedding with two hundred people, what happens?
Yeah.
Con- condition eighteen, um, says no live entertainment or amplified sound. Uh, so I understand amplified sound is something we're changing. Today. Um, so we would strike, strike amplify sound uh is permitted on the property accepting compliance. With an approved temporary use permit provided, it can be demonstrated that the noise generated from the event. Okay, this is a different condition.
I don't have eighteen eighteen, I have uh sequential violations of.
Yeah. Me too.
Oh.
And there's. We create amplified sound and ambient music. Okay, big, big, huge difference.
All right.
Ambient, ambient and everything else. And this, remember, this is thirty feet from our house.
Sorry, I have a few resolutions here and that was not the right one.
One we're looking at is twenty-nine pages long.
Are you looking at condition thirty-three? Is that what you're looking for, Adrian?
Yeah.
No live entertainment or amplified sound is per. Permitted on the property accepting compliance with an approved temporary use permit. Provided can be demonstrated that the noise generated from the event, we're being compliant with condition number thirty-eight. And off-street parking spaces can be secured to accommodate the number of people expected in the event that the.
Error in that because.
Problem with that because.
Has to do with signage. It has nothing to do with.
Number thirty-eight talks about signage.
And I I I highly suggest you you do not have amplified music. Right next to a school, a a a, in a church, in a house.
I think, I think you need to craft.
Probably out and the church is probably out if there's a wedding on a weekend.
Adrian, it does appear that that thirty-eight is the wrong condition to reference. Do you know what that's supposed to reference?
I believe it might be referencing condition thirty-five.
Yeah, that looks correct. Okay.
Yeah.
But it does, does, does condition thirty-three, um, is is that acceptable to deal with this issue to the the commissioners?
It it needs a little finesse because amp, I mean iPad iPod is amplified sound. I mean, you you need to be able to say, um, I think what they're asking for is just very low level sort of subliminal ambient. Something and that's that's.
Uh, we we we, we have an ambient condition that we'll read back uh when we get to that issue. What I meant is to deal with the the wedding. Use permit issue if this is sufficient to deal with that issue or if it needs to be adjusted.
Like a PA with a rock band, a rock band with a PA.
Now, yes, Director Malika, you got your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. If if there is an interest, I I have pulled the Seaview uh hotel resolution as approved. So if there is an interest, I'd be glad to answer any questions about TUPs on that resolution.
The question is whether, the argument was that they're not allowed to have weddings or bar mitzvahs or whatever.
Yeah, what's?
They're not allowed, we shouldn't allow, we shouldn't allow it here either. That was the issue we were trying to address.
Yeah.
Certainly. So condition fifty of the city council resolution allows for the issuance of a TUP. In addition. There was. It we, uh, the condition forty-three says that they. Um, property owner tenant shall not use parking lot for any other uses other than activities expressly prohibited for the subject parcel. Or is permitted by a temporary use permit. Except no temporary use permit is required if the occupancy of the prod property does not exceed the number of guests up to ninety. Um, I thought there was something that might say weddings in there.
Norm has twice as many rooms.
This is a condition on a hotel, okay? What about the Surf Rider?
Okay, so may I?
Yeah.
Say this, that if we're gonna implement this kind of a condition on there, maybe we want to do it. If we were looking at, there's twenty rooms, there's two people in a room, that would be forty, maybe some of them have a kid, so we go to fifty and say if there's any event. That's requiring that is more than fifty guests, they would need a TUP and they're no. Given no more than X amount of them a year. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, but we should also see what Surf Rider has.
Yeah, Surf Rider is the guiding light because they're a motel. Even though they call themselves a hotel, they are a motel. This is a motel.
Yeah, well, they're a motel.
Motels are not.
With less parking than this motel's gonna have.
What?
They're a motel with the same amount of rooms or similar amount of rooms, but with less parking than this one would have.
No, not true.
Really? How many spaces do they have? How many spaces do they have, John?
How many spaces this hotel have? It's the same. Okay, they have the legal parking requirements.
Okay.
Question is, motels are supposed to be no ancillary services, right in the definition.
Yeah.
Okay?
Correct, no ancillary services. But if I want to go and rent out the motel.
No, etcetera.
No, no, the language is no accessory uses, accessory uses. An event or party is not people in a motel.
Right, so we we have a example of what we did to another motel. Three hundred feet away. And we see what that restriction was. And I believe it was no TUPs. You know, Mr. Burgess is probably still on here. We should ask him. What? Said Doug Burgess is obviously still here. We should ask him if he remembers what that was. Well, I'd rather.
Better if we have staff.
I, yeah, I just, I pulled up the resolution for that project. Um, there's condition fifty-seven says special events. Involving non-gas shall require a temporary use permit.
Okay.
So are we comfortable with just having the language reflect the same thing, John? Maza?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, good. I'm I'm going without anybody else.
You might wanna put your fifty-person limit in there just to.
I don't have an issue. I don't. I was just, I was only saying that because I thought that that's what the other one said.
My statement is. This isn't gonna pass as a motel because of these things. Uh, did we?
Adrian, can you read that condition again?
Special events involving non-guest shall require a temporary use permit.
Thanks.
It works for me.
I I have two more conditions you might care for or not. One is, uh, we mentioned before that in high Chumash likelihood zones, we've had both in archaeology. And Native American monitors.
And we have the language for that. We've done it many times.
We we, yeah, we don't even need to our uh discuss, I think we can just pull that from one of the by Chumash zones.
Let me ask this. If that language goes in there, are both of you guys gonna vote to support this project? Absolutely not, okay.
Last, uh, in terms of uh potential conditions is is what could we say if anything about fire insurance? Uh, with respect to the neighbors immediately above and to the east in particular. Uh, if, for example, their premiums were to go up because of the proximity to this, could, would there be any way to have the? The. Except excess cost underwritten here or accommodated in some way cuz the.
I think we're going into a realm that has never been decided and that'd be very foolish of us.
Well, I don't think you could. I I have a question on on water that I don't think we ever got done. The Hakim has mentioned they're putting three hundred thousand dollars in the water system or something. Norm put four hundred and something thousand into a new valve. Is it required?
Yeah.
Where's this, where's this going? Money going? Is the city, is it part of this uh application? And it is accredited against Norm's contribution to the water main?
I highly doubt it. It's probably going to their will serve lever and what the water departments can require them to do or in order to get the proper water pressure there.
Well.
Can we hear from staff?
Providing that, I mean, uh. When you do it, when you do something like that, you pay for it and if somebody comes along and uses it. They they kick in their proportional share. And that's usually in the resolution. There's no resolution saying they're gonna spend the money on anything. We don't, it's it's, they just said we're gonna spend some money, but. Uh.
It it's.
Uh, you know, we did it.
Really not our jur, it's really not our jurisdiction.
It isn't?
Water board is, the water board is gonna, is is going to charge them whatever they wanna charge them. Uh, with whatever justification they wanna give and we have nothing really to say about it.
Then why didn't we do it to Norm? We didn't, they did. No, we put in the provisions. We told him it was a good idea. We all agreed it was a good idea to put the valve down at Topanga Canyon, absolutely, because it helps everybody, but. The water district came back to these guys and told them what they wanted. There it is. Three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, please. That's what they did. That's simple. And that's what they did to Norm.
Okay, well, it's a non-issue. What's next?
Nothing to talk about.
I just wanna make the state, since we're getting to the end here, I feels like. I just wanna say it seems like the bottom line from my point of view is that this would need the zone change amendment. And that, you know, otherwise we've got four variances or the three variances now and SPR. Uh, and with factual issues on all of them. And to me, the the draft resolution is just, I I've I've never seen anything so overreaching. Since I've been on this commission. I went through the findings and I counted forty-six paragraphs of the findings. And looking at the facts and the law, not ideology or anything other ex, other considerations. I couldn't make forty-five of those forty-six findings. The only one that was okay with me was the, uh, you you can. Put the cars out by the street cuz that's that's how it's gonna go there. But everything else and a lot of it had to do with, you know, you said you, because we're building on a slope, you can't do this, you can't do that, well. Or or we have to do it this way and it's just, I I didn't feel like any of it was justified. So I got that off my chest. Now, I think I've said the rest of anything else I need to say.
I have one, one other question and and this is of Trevor. We passed a CUP. For the Malibu Inn nightclub. And we placed the. We placed the uh overflow field, hundred percent overflow field on this property and then we moved it in this hearing. Or we're going to. And we also placed the exit for this property on the Malibu Inn's property. They're two separate lots. I would assume, number one, you'd need a CDP change for the Malibu Inn. For the location of septic system. And you'd need a uh uh. Lot joining. To assure that there's an exit. Because there, these are two separate properties could be sold separately. Now.
Couldn't you also just do that recording and easement? Couldn't you all also do that by just recording an easement?
Whatever, but I don't think.
Ingress and egress?
Yeah.
Yeah, and 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 that's a question of Trevor. Isn't that required when you do things like this? This place is a way in and not a way out.
Adrian, we're we're proving through this application, changes on a property that's not part of the uh application here?
Yes.
So, um, there is already uh the access that exists uh on the adjacent property. Um, the adjacent application. As you may remember, uh, included a joint use parking agreement. And so, uh, there was a requirement for a covenant. Uh, to be recorded against both properties. Essentially holding their end of the bargain on making sure that access and the parking spaces were gonna remain available. Um, for the Malibu Inn uh project. That agreement can be changed to include the access uh or. As uh Commissioner Peak suggested, we can add a condition. Uh, excuse me, an easement uh requiring that. Uh, and then regarding the. The septic system dispersal. Um, expansion for the Malibu Inn. They have a floating easement on the motel site. And so, uh, it's an easement, uh, they're not changing the easement. Um, they're essentially not changing the location cuz the location was never identified in the first place. They're just uh identifying an area where that future, should they need it, uh, you know, be provided on. The motel site, uh, and 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 that is uh represented on the site plan. And so, um.
You're saying neither the CDP nor the CUP for the Malibu Inn property adjacent to this.
Uh, proposed project requires any change. This is not requiring a change, that's CDP or the CUP is what you're saying.
That's right.
Did you say that there is a recorded easement? Or exit, exit, I did not remember that. You said they actually file recorded an easement for the driveway.
They have an easement for the future expansion, um.
That's the separate take, I'm talking about the exit.
They have, they have, they have a covenant agreement. Uh, for the joint use parking agreement.
What, what about?
And, and that document needs to be replaced, uh, and so what I was suggesting is that we can replace it with a document that requires. That they share access essentially in perpetuity or a separate easement can be. Uh, required in order for, you know, the access for the motel to. Use the Malibu insight.
But that's, that was my question to Trevor, it does not exist. The Jupa agreement can be, because it's between the related parties can be extinguished at any point or changed. And there is no easement on the Malibu Inn property for exit. And that property can be sold.
I, I, I just realized, Trevor, they can't record an easement because it's the same owner currently. Alright, so all they could do is a covenant agreement.
Yeah, um, well, I'm a little confused here, um. We're actually, we need to make the, 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 a, a new en, exit or entrance on the PCH on the joint property?
No, it's an exist, existing entrance and exit, uh, on the Malibu Inn, but they're using that.
So no development needs to occur on that property, it already exists. So then what's the, the concern? If there's no development, then that would require coastal development permit, what's the problem?
Well, we are, they, they are closing one exit. As part of this deal. And having their exit for the motel on the adjacent property. Okay, now. I don't understand all the law here, but I, I know that if they sold that property. There's nothing there that, that protects that eas, that, there is no easement. Okay, and, and can you approve a property with no recorded easement to exit?
There, there's an analogy here in terms of the access about whether they are needing. By an analogy, a tenancy in common or a joint tenancy with respect to how they own that access. Um, I, I, I thought that there's a, there's, there's already a Jupa in place, I thought. There cannot be any sale of these properties unless the, 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 uh, Jupa is unwound, isn't that correct, Adrian? Would bring the properties into non-compliance, doesn't that already exist?
I'm not sure if the Jupa prevents the sale of the properties, but it, it keeps the agreement with any future. Owners of the property. And, uh, again, that, that agreement needs to be revised because now the. Offsite requirement has changed to thirty-one, that document has not been prepared.
What needs to be prepared? The Jupa needs to be modified or?
The Jupa entitlement was approved, but the covenant agreement that gets recorded against the properties. Has to be updated.
And that's, that's not a, a condition of our hearing. We're hearing this.
That was a requirement for the Malibu Inn, not for this project, correct?
Right, but this project needs a valid. Recorded, Jupa is a parking agreement. Nothing more than a parking agreement, joint parking agreement. Not an ingress, egress, recorded easement.
I, I mean, what I remember from that one was that, isn't there?
A simple way to.
Isn't there a condition that if the Jupa expires, they have to reduce the size of the service area or something on the other property? There's, there's no parking from this property on the Malibu insight, this is only an access issue, right? And the access already exists?
Seeing the Jupa and the access issue, and all we have to do is put a condition in there. That requires the applicant to, to provide to the director, uh, sufficient proof. Of, uh, permanent access, uh, uh. Egress from the property over the Malibu Inn property, uh, as a, as a condition of this permit, doesn't that do it?
Maybe a covenant, covenant for easement, Adrian?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that, that, that works.
So, we, that's, that's something we actually, Adrian and I added to our code a few years ago to deal with the situation where you have joint ownership. So, um, staff can go back with it, with it, with a condition that would, uh, require covenant or eat for easement or some similar. Uh, restriction that would keep that access open.
Awesome, um, can we go bef?
Wait, hang on.
Some questions for Palo, and he's back online. And I just wanted to make sure, Craig, that you were able to ask your question of him about the board, so that we could.
Yeah, let's do that. Also, there was one hanging out there with Adrian still, but let's go to Palo, he's here.
Palo, you can unmute yourself if you can. There you go.
So what's the question that you have of him?
Are you there, Palo, you're there?
I am.
Yeah, hi.
Yes, uh, good evening, Charles Smith, and, uh, good evening, uh, planning commissioners.
Yeah, what we were. Oh, you heard the question?
Yeah, so I, I just want to address, um, the white documents we have obtained from, um, the state water boards. Um, the, the one, uh, document that we have. Uh, that dates back to November fifteen, twenty eleven, is basically a notice, um, that addresses the waste flow. Um, that will not exceed or cannot exceed at seventeen hundred gallons per day. So, uh, um, and, uh, the other document that we have, it's, uh, through an email, um, which. Uh, Stephen Akim, um, presented, um, and that was sent on August fifteen of, uh, twenty-two. Now, um, just to make, uh, clear that the regional board did. Um, review, uh, this, um, uh, this project on September. Uh, twelve of last year, and, uh, there were no formal.
This is a real B and H customer story.
Alright, so there were no, um, letter, uh, that was sent. But there, there was an email that was sent to me and, uh, uh, Yolanda, um. Basically, uh, stating that, um, that, that they have, uh, comments. And, um, suggestions, um, that, uh, could. Uh, up, for, for this project to be approved, for instance. Um, addressing the waste water flow from what was originally submitted, um, with the limitation of seventeen hundred gallons per day. And, uh, the regional board recommending an equalization tank of ten thousand gallons. And, uh, the implement, um, uh, that will be passing through a ten thousand five hundred gallon equalization tank. Um, providing a twenty-four hour detention time.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, uh, excuse me. I think we've, we've gone over a lot of the technical stuff, and I think there's a lot of, at, at least enough understanding of that for the moment. The question was, the understanding is that the water board, uh, in, in its ZZ list. Uh, from, what was it, two thousand nine, I think, um, they put that in. That list is comprised of projects, not parcels per se, so the question was, could they transfer? From that list, uh, what was originally a commercial proposal for a completely different project? And now, you know, twelve years later, or however long, say, well, actually, we're gonna substitute in a different project now. Is that, do you know, is that something that, that's permissible under the MOU that that list accompanied?
Um, I'm not aware of how, um. How it was, um, approved, um, with MOU, but all I know is. Um, with the table four ZZ, the, if. If, if you're in that list, then you, um, are able to, um. Develop, um, that, that, that parcel.
Okay, that, 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 that contradicts our understanding, that we thought it was per project, you're telling us it's per parcel.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Alright, well, then, thank you. I don't, I don't know, uh. I feel like we don't have a definitive answer on that, so I don't know what you do with this lack of, of, of approval, other than it seems this will be okay.
Well, they, they, they looked at the system that, that, uh, your, Mr. Yaroslavski designed, that, that's. That's your answer.
Alright, well, and, and I guess the answer is, this is for the guys with the big bucks to be fighting about later, so. It's, uh, we put it on the table, they'll, they'll sort it out.
So what do you think about a motion here, guys?
Want to make a statement before the motion?
Wait, Commissioner Jennings? Your hand's always up, you never take it down. Commissioner Jennings, go ahead.
The, um, I want to. Talk about the conditions in the, in the Jeffers Mangles, uh, letter that, uh, applicant's attorney, I want to make sure that. We've got it clear on the, on, uh, given them a clear answer, yes or no with regard to what they've asked for. Um, they, so, they, business about revised plans, it's been taken care of as I read it in, in the, uh. Uh, the, the resolution that we have. The night lighting for sports courts, their solution was the condition of, of approval, this would be, uh, thirteen. Uh, to read, except for pool and deck lighting that must be compatible with the dark sky ordinance. Night lighting for sports courts or other private recreational facilities shall be prohibited. Uh, I think that's where we were going, is that, is, is that a problem for anybody?
Yeah, violates the.
It allows, it allows, we talked about dark sky compliant lighting of the pool and.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Uh, then, uh, they, they had some complaints about the, uh, the, uh, hours for the ser, service of. Sale and survey of alcoholic beverages. Their complaints were of both ends of the spectrum, they wanted to be able to, uh, serve mimosas at brunch, starting at ten o'clock in the morning. And they wanted to go on till two o'clock. I, I have no quarrel with them. Beginning to serve alcohol at ten in the morning, but I don't think we can allow them to go past ten o'clock in the evening. Because of what I argued earlier, that Adrian explained to me that they, they're, they've scheduled their shifts. So that they've only got one person, uh, onsite from ten o'clock till, or the four in the morning or something like that. So I don't see any way that we can allow them to have alcohol service after ten PM.
Agreed.
Everybody. Agreed, okay, uh, then, um. They, uh, had an issue with regards to low, the, the, uh, the low level ambient music. Um, and they wanted to have, uh, the condition thirty-three read. No live entertainment is permitted on the property, except in compliance with an approved temporary use permit. Low level ambient music is permitted in the common areas. Is that consistent with what we've decided?
I, I think we already had a, a condition for the ambient noise, I can, I can bring that back when we're done here.
Alright, good, and then the next one they wanted was none of the parking spaces may be used as public parking, I think that. At least, uh, the three of us thought it would be a good idea to have as much parking as possible. Uh, so. So that, they wanted to have that admission that was forty-three deleted, does anybody have a problem with that?
Well, I, I do, because, I do, because. Well, as long as we don't have lifts, lifts are, are, are not in our code.
I, I know that you disagreed, I'm, I'm basically talking about Skyler and.
Yeah, well, okay.
We'd be agreed on.
We'll hear.
No more than six.
Right.
From Commissioner Peak and Commissioner Smith on, on deleting forty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
And forty-four is no more than six employees can be at the site on anyone's shift. And their argument is, there's no reason to restrict the number of employees. And I think where we were is that. They can have as many employees as they want, as long as they've got parking for them onsite, was that?
That's correct.
That was what I was thinking.
So we have to pick a number to determine that number.
I don't think they're, as long as they have the parking.
Well, they have to say, we got twenty employees, do you have twenty extra spaces? You know, you can't just speak on anything, they can have forty employees. Nobu started out telling us they were gonna have fourteen employees.
Nobu.
They, they have, they have, they have suggested a solution. Which is the condition of approval be modified to read no more than eight employees can be on the site at anyone's shift. Which doesn't seem to be a big deal to me, but if they have, if, if they have parking for eight.
They're well with lifts.
Well, then, well, then, we need to say. They're required parking, they're saying they can rent out their non-required parking, but we need to raise the number of required employee parking. I think right now it's four.
Yeah.
It, it needs to go to eight.
The, the, the question I'm asking Adrian is if, given the number of parking spaces that they have, and, and the non-lift parking places that they have. Can they have, uh, are, are they sufficiently parked to have eight employees on the site at anyone's shift?
So. The total number of employee parking spaces that they're proposing is four. So, uh, now, again, they, they've provided their shifts so that the average. Employee per shift, uh, works out to be three. And so they had originally designed to have three, and then we found an extra parking space, so there is a surplus of one parking space. But, uh, so there's a total of four. And so the concern that staff had, and I think, uh, Vice Chair Mas is kind of pointing to it. Is that we haven't traditionally allowed lifts to be used as required parking spaces. And if we allow employees, more employees than the four. That, um, in the four parking spaces, uh, on an average per shift that they're, they accounted for. Then we're saying that their employees could park on the lifts, uh, the lifts, uh, spaces. Which are not required parking spaces, and our concern about that is that now we would be allowing lifts to. Uh, a, a, account for required parking spaces. And the way we would advise to do that is through a variance, uh, instead of just allowing it, since. We have consistently not allowed lifts, yeah, the last, you know, uh, probably ten years. Um, uh, to meet the, the, you know, a required parking space.
So can we?
Okay, fine, I.
That's what we have to do, is add four required spaces. That's what they're asking for.
Uh, John, I, I, I understand what you're saying, let Jeff finish.
Uh, uh, my question was, how'd you get to six then, on, in, in condition forty-four?
So six is the, the, that's what they came up with, and there's a calculation in the last staff report that. That gives a breakout, and, and so, um, what they, what they are showing is that. Uh, as you explained before, on one of the shifts, they only have one employee, on their peak hour, they have six. And so they're averaging all the shifts, uh, over the, the twenty-four hours. And the average is three, uh, is three employees, and so. That's what they accounted for, adding any more employees would require more parking spaces.
I don't, I don't think we can make any change in forty-four then.
Can, can, can I, can someone check my math on this? I, I count eleven spaces needed for employees. Maybe, maybe you could change that, but I count one clerk, at least two cleaners of rooms, that, one bartender. Two busboy slash room service slash bellhop gophers. One delivery guy, there's a vending machine and food and, and kitchen stuff there, he's gonna be there. One maintenance tradesman, somebody just working on stuff, one security guard. Uh, and three valets, if you've got two valets or three if you have the lifts. That's eleven people, I don't know if they're all happening at the same time, but it seems more than six for sure.
And more than likely, you're probably required to have a lifeguard. But again.
Yeah, right.
You know, we, we go around and around on this, they ask for, uh, eight. It's not unreasonable to say you have to have eight parking spaces, they have extra parking spaces. The question is, are they required, are they open for anybody to use, and can they count them for other uses? So if they're saying they want eight, give them eight. But you have to up the amount of required spaces. That's all.
Adrian.
Fourteen and they hit a hundred and twenty.
Adrian, how many extra parking spaces do they have?
They have.
One?
They have one, yeah.
Okay.
Give one. Can I give them, uh, six, seven instead of six?
You're saying that they have four rather than three? So.
That's, that's how we got there.
As I understand.
But, but, but it does sound there's three votes to make a change anyway, so. Right?
I mean, I, I'm, I'm okay with giving them a, one more employee. If it doesn't change their average and put their average above four.
Well, they, there's, the, the, the average of four, the. Is impossible. It's impossible. You can't run in a hotel with one.
John, you're saying that that's impossible, and maybe I agree with you, maybe I don't agree with you, but it's more important is to be consistent with how our staff has calculated. How much parking is required, and that's what we need to follow.
Well, our staff is calculated by what they wanted. They gave us the hour, the number of employees. We didn't come up with them. And the same reason why we made a mistake on the surf rider, we said three. We obviously knew there were more than three. Well, they immediately went and rented six more. Okay? Uh, you can't run a motel with three people. You gotta have somebody there to greet the guests. You gotta have a bartender if you got a bar. You have to have somebody clean the rooms. I mean, you have to be reasonable on how you count these things. And if they say they want eight employees, fine. But, but don't say, well, they want eight, but we'll just count three. That doesn't make any sense. They are admitting that.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. I think that we're all at the same conclusion.
Well, we don't appear to want to be requiring more parking.
So A D Fernandez, if, 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 if you get. If you get eight employees and you take the four lifts. And it takes up four parking spots, are they out of parking spots? So you got lifts that handle the eight, right?
Yeah, so. There's, there's two issues, and I think, again, uh, Vice Chair Mas is kind of pointing to one. It's, it's the practical. Use of the parking. And during your peak hour, your, it's in essence, will have all your rooms, uh. Uh, rented out, and then you're gonna have eight employees. And yet. You're only gonna have four parking spaces for those employees. So you're not gonna be able to. Provide the required parking spaces for that peak hour. Now, the code has a requirement. That says average per shift, and we struggle with that because. That can mean a lot of different things. And so, um, and so what staff was comfortable with is even though there was a surplus of one parking spaces, one parking space. They had a total of four parking spaces for employees. And during their peak hour, they would have six employees. And so that meant that only two of the employees wouldn't be accounted for. And we were thinking, well, um, you know, perhaps, uh, two was, you know, uh, can find a, a parking space on. On P C H or, um, they can carpool or, you know, have, uh. Um, you know, pu- public transportation. And so because. The difference was only two, we were okay with. Now, if the difference is four. Then, uh, or more than, than we, you know, then obviously there would be a, a greater impact. Um, but. To Chairman Smith's point. Is that, yes, they could accommodate these. These employees using their lifts. But the code requires. That. The. Required parking spaces would not be provided through the lifts. And so. Again, our recommendation would be if that's what you wanted to do, is that we do that through a variance instead of allowing them. Because it would set a precedent for the next person to then ask for lifts in order to comply with the required parking spaces.
So why don't we give them seven? And use the one space and require five?
I was, I was gonna ask a question of Adrian, which is. What's the maximum? Amount of employees they could have to meet that average? So like however you did the calculation where you got from. Coming up with. They can have six max, but they only have three spaces. Does that mean if, if we have one extra and we're using that for employees, do they get eight max? Right? That's kind of what I'm understanding. Is that correct?
Yeah, they, they redid the numbers and, which is why they're asking for the eight. Right? They want us to change the condition to eight because they reworked the numbers. Knowing that there was a surplus, right? That they found one additional parking space.
Are we, are we then comfortable just giving them the eight, knowing that they have the four, and then we're not messing with any of the list? Parking spaces or anything?
It's too easy. You're right. It's too easy.
But you know, there's analogy, an analogy here with the mean high tide line. Where it's not the average that matters, it's the highest number that might be expected with any typical frequency. So it's like the mean high tide line. What is, what is the sort of normal peak? On a daily basis.
They're, they're asking for eight, Commissioner.
That, that's actually a bad analogy because that changes every single day and is a moving target. So I'm not gonna go with that.
No, but, but as a concept, as a concept.
Yeah, but the concept, Craig, doesn't work because the code says average. Okay?
Yeah, true.
It doesn't say.
How about this as a solution? Okay? John votes to approve the project, approve the lifts and have a requirement in there. That for all of those employees that are gonna be there, they must be required to park onsite. Period.
When this goes to the Coastal Commission, one of the biggest arguments is going to be. That you're taking public parking away. When you, we sit here and talk about, oh, let the.
How are we taking public parking away if we? Have never and do not permit parking as a standalone use on a piece of property that you are. They've never wanted to allow anyways, but they've been parking on it. How can you ever say that that wasn't allowed use if we've never approved it?
You misunderstand what I'm saying. We should not say in this hearing, oh, we, we know there's an extra two employees. We, we're giving them eight. But they could park on the highway. That's a no-no with the coastal.
I, I'm saying that we require them to have all their employees park onsite.
They can't do it. They don't have enough.
And if you give them a variance to put lifts in.
No, you can't put variance for lifts because they're not allowed. So give them eight and, and, and park five instead of four. They've got the space.
Give them eight and they can park four instead of three.
Uh, you know, it's a average, average, you know, that one is legal and one is variance bending the law, opening up.
I think that, I think that the one's legal because, John, hold on, we, we have.
Project across the street that has sued the city about this.
I, I'm not going into that right now. What I'm talking about is specifically no lifts. They have one additional parking space. Grant them the eight employees. They can use that one parking space, end of story.
That's what I was suggesting.
We'll move on. Let's just, it's midnight. Come on, let's get this done.
Five instead of four, that's all we, so.
We don't have five. You only have four.
You have one extra. That's the.
No, we had three and the one extra makes it four.
Okay, uh. I want to get, see this, it is, is, is Commissioner Jennings on board with, with changing it to eight or did you still want it six?
No, I kind of went down the, talking about the rabbit hole. I, I, I basically, I'm gonna go with what Skyler said.
Okay, so change it. And do you, are you also requiring all employees to park onsite?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, condition forty-four.
And can we?
Allow eight max, um, but all employees must park onsite.
Now, to avoid this situation, friendly amendment on that. That we have at Nobu, can we say three violations? Causes a cancellation. Because.
Cancellation of what? What, are you gonna tear it down?
No, you're gonna make them find additional parking for those employees. Nobu has started.
Okay, yes, I understand. Okay, I understand what you're saying. If the park, if the employees are not parking onsite. You, after the third violation of that, you must secure long-term parking. In the immediate vicinity. Whether you're paying for it across the street or somewhere else.
Well, it's gotta be within three hundred feet according to code, but whatever.
Exactly.
Can, can we acknowledge, can we acknowledge that the record, uh, for the record, that the M N D states there will be twenty employees on site, onsite? Section four point sixteen point two. I assume that's a peak number that, that they would have put in there, but that's, that's in the M N, M N D.
Yeah, well, we've acknowledged it.
If we're putting a max at eight, then it would be less impactful than what's, what's in the M N D. The, the conditions are gonna control the document here.
Be careful what you wish.
But every appeal from this matter is de novo, so. The record is the written record and it doesn't matter anyway. That game.
Okay, I, I have. Do we have more or I ha- I can read back what we have?
Yes, we do. We do have more.
Before we do that.
Okay.
This is from.
The next.
This is from, uh, a, a letter we received. It says, this project represents a total disregard of the Coastal Act, the Malibu General Plan. L C P and the thirteen thousand Malibu residents. Investment in the welfare and future of our unique city. The staff report and planning department inability to respond to this. Intrusion only emphasizes the need for internal review of the existing properties in Malibu which can. Absorb this use seamlessly is identified. Under the present city's general plan and its conv- convoluted attempt to manipulate. Geotechnical realities, visual mass, wastewater at all is an insult to the community. And the effort behind the meaning of the general plan. This constitution of land use power policies is not to be revised or land. Prostituted for personal financial gain and approval. Will only legitimize the balance of Malibu land into indiscriminate subdivision of use. Ed Niles, not exactly a. Pro-growth or slow-growth guy.
He's got the, he's got the amount of. Anyway, where, where.
I sent a reply to Ed, say, don't quit, quit soft pedaling it. Tell us how you really feel. Um, the next one is. Fifty-one, which, uh, suggests that we add. A reference to a valet service and underground lift parking semi-utilized to facilitate additional parking at the site. Additional spaces created through the valet and lift parking services upon approval of the planning director shall be deemed to count towards the total number of. Parking spaces for the project. Seems like this is a pretty heavy lift, but, um, uh, they raised it, so. I'm reading it to you.
Well, I just pointed out that Adrian said we can't do that.
Yeah, I, I don't think that we can do that, but I would say that. I don't think we can do it and. Calculate that as parking for the project. In the sense of how projects calculated and what's required. But what I think we can do is say. You can put in the parking if, and have a valet plan and do stacked parking and have lifts. If that better suits what your need is to manage your property.
Well, Skyler, we just determined. That. Well, valet's an employee. We just determined the number of employees to do this parking, and now we're increasing. Are they gonna have to stay on, onsite? Are they gonna have to park onsite?
Absolutely, and I don't know the exact number of cars.
There's no way to do it.
To do stacked parking with, but I believe it's more than the amount of employees would be required to, to make it happen.
So that bumps it to nine.
Okay, and then the next one fifty-two. Uh, is.
I'm confused. Are, are we making a change to condition fifty-one?
No, uh, uh, well. I, I, I don't think there really a cha- a change is gonna do any good there.
Okay, so no change.
Fifty-two. This is a weird one. Says the conditional use permit may be modified by the city without the consent of the property owner or operator. If the planning commission finds that the use is creating a nuisance. And there is, so this violates due process, contradicts the Malibu municipal code. Procedures regarding permit modification and permit revocation. It also contradicts conditions of approval forty-nine and fifty-five. Which are consistent with the Malibu municipal code. It seems. Kind of on the nose to me.
Seems like Trevor's told us before that that's not true.
So we, we found that language in the municipal code, and so, um. I think. We made some minor tweaks from the last time the condition was written to tonight's meeting. And we made it to be the exact language. It was almost identical. There was only a couple of. Very minor changes to that condition, but we kept it identical to what is currently in the municipal code.
What, what condition? My, my condition fifty-two is not reading what Jeff just said.
Same with me.
This, this is not brought from seeing the proper resolution, I don't think.
Uh, yeah. Well, yeah, if, if the reference is wrong, uh, but it does seem to me that. If we have provisions in the, and I know we do in the Malibu municipal code about permit modification and rep- and permit revocation. Then. Those are the rules. I mean, putting it in a form of a condition to the project. Adds or subtracts nothing, right? The rules are the rules.
You're, you're referencing fifty-four, is that correct?
It's fifty-six.
Yes, fifty, it's, it, it is fifty-four, yes. That was, they, they put fifty-two, but it really is fifty-four.
Okay.
So what's the request to remove it? Or to keep it in?
Request is, is to remove it altogether, which.
It's redundant because it's sort of implied regardless.
Well, it, it makes it clear because we've had real problems with. These types of facilities in that neighborhood. And no harm, no foul to leave it in, in my opinion.
I mean, I don't think it hurts anything by leaving it in, Jeff.
Yeah, it gives them a reference on how to, how to behave.
First, first of all, does. What is, what does the code say particularly about, here's, here's one of my problems. If you put a condition in that says that it can be modified if it creates a nuisance. General law without regard to, uh. This condition or even the municipal code. Tells you what you can do to evade a nuisance. Uh, but what you do is you put a provision like this. There are lots of reasons why you can, uh. Amend or, or, uh, modify, uh, a, 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 a permit like this. So you're only calling out one of them.
You're saying that you don't need to write it down because there's so many areas by which you could potentially have to change it.
True.
Yeah.
Then remove it.
Well, uh, you gotta understand that I don't know of any time. In the history of Malibu, it's ever been done.
And that's. So what's the reason to have it?
Well, that's the reason to have it because it's specific.
Because it's never been done?
That, that mean this. Uh, there's no harming keeping it in. It's already allowed, but it has to go, it can't just be. You know, Adrian sees a nuisance and just changes the condition. They have to go through a revocation hearing process. That's what's the process that's set up in the municipal code. Um, you know, for this, this just gives them notice that it, that it, that it could be done. Um, you know, but that, that provision is in our code, and that is one of the, the actions that on a revocation hearing, the planning commission could take. They could revoke it. They could modify it to, you know, get rid of a nuisance issue and there's.
Well, their, their suggestion is this. That the condition either be deleted or that it be modified to read. The conditional use permit may be modified by the city pursuant to the procedure set forth in the Malibu municipal code. And conditions of approvals, numbers forty-nine and fifty-five, forty-nine being. Reclaiming, no, forty, we got the wrong numbers on here now.
This is all wrong.
I would just try, I would just say that it'd be read, the condition of approval should be modified to read. The conditional use permit may be modified by the city pursuant to the procedure set forth in the Malibu municipal code, period. That would be my suggestion.
That works for me.
Yeah, there's no, there's nothing wrong with saying that.
So add.
No.
Pursuant to the procedures. Uh, designated.
Pursuant to the Malibu municipal code, which.
Yeah, modified by the city and then strike without the consent of the property owner or operator. And add pursuant to the procedure set forth in the Malibu municipal code.
Well, that, that language without the consent is actually in the, the language, because it wouldn't be with their consent. It'd be through a revocation hearing.
Yeah.
You might not want to take that out to give them an, a, a kind of. Argument.
Okay, fine. Yeah, all right. Yeah, sure. But it doesn't matter because you. You know, the, the, the municipal code is premised on the fact that it's not with, not necessarily with the consent. Finally, there's one, there's another one that's one twenty-one, which apparently deals with prohibition of amplified sound again, which I thought we dealt with. Finally, there's one, there's another one that's one twenty-one, which apparently deals with pro- prohibition of amplified sound again, which I thought we dealt with. But it basically um. Is designed to improve low-level ambient music in the common areas, including the outdoor pool area.
And, and I have that one already from you guys.
One twenty-three.
Yeah.
One twenty-three. Okay, and that's, that's, that's what they were after. I think we dealt with their requests. And I'm done.
Uh, Jeff?
You want me to?
I, I just wanna wonder if you wanna change this. I, I didn't have time to look through all these. And uh, uh, findings and conditions, but finding G three. Says there's no alternative to develop this property and avoid construction on steep slopes. You wanna eliminate that to say we never said it?
I'm, I'm, I'm reading it.
There's others, but I didn't have time to find them.
Yeah, I, I would. Yeah, I would strike everything after P C H.
Which, wh- what are we talking about? Which finding?
Finding G three. The fourth line down, one, two, three, four, I'm sorry, fifth line down, it's P C H, period.
G.
Then there's this, this is about no alternative, which is just not true.
So, uh, delete everything after what?
P C H.
After P C H.
Okay.
My recollection is that there are a number of findings that refer to.
I was scanning through it and I was trying to find them. I didn't see any, I didn't even see that one, so.
There's a lot in here that are changing and that is interrelated. I'm gonna suggest that you um, have staff. Make these changes and bring it back and make any consistency, um, consistent changes, consistent with the modifications that you've made. I, I think this needs to be gone through, like through everything.
So are you saying that they could go through and eliminate? All findings that say that there's no alternative?
Right, what I'm saying is, is I, is, is I would recommend the motion be to, um, you know. Direct staff to return with a um, with a resolution on consent, moralizing. Um, the resolution with following changes we'll go through and then any other changes required by staff for consistency with the modifications.
So would that, would that include these references to uh, no alternative?
The, the G three, if that we're eliminating there, then.
Anything like G three.
It would be, anything to be consistent with that. So you want me to go through what I have from you to make sure that's complete?
Yes, we have to. Yeah.
Okay.
As that, we should.
Okay, so I, starting with condition one twenty-three, this is about the ambient sound. We have to be careful with this one because um, it's actually a mitigation measure from the mitigated negative deck. And we can't just allow the sound because they refuse to do a, a sound study. And so um, in order. We can modify the condition to allow amplified sound upon, um, you know, them conducting a sound study to. Um, demonstrate that there is no.
That sounds great.
Conflict with the code, so, okay, great. It would basically be changed to, I could, one twenty-three would be. I would start with amplified sound is prohibited except that ambient music is allowed in. Pool and hallway areas so long as it is not audible within five feet of any neighboring building. And the applicant prepares a noise study and then the rest of the uh.
That sounds great.
Is the rest of it, uh, is the rest of it approved by the planning director or any, anybody approve it?
No, you can read the, you can read the condition. It is already, you know, just pulls directly from the mitigated negative deck. I wouldn't want to alter that language. Uh, let me keep going. Condition thirty-three should be changed to allow ambient music consistent with condition one twenty-three. I believe you wanted to add a condition to allow lifts, but not to satisfy required parking and only a backup power sufficient to operate the lifts is provided. Was there consensus on that?
I'm good with that.
I believe so, yes.
Is there a third that's?
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Okay, um. Uh, they can't use the pool after ten P M and pool lights must be turned off at that time. The project shall comply with all Caltrans requirements. Um, condition thirty-three has a typo and needs a reference to condition thirty-five. Special events involving non-guests shall require T U P, which should be a condition that will be added. Add a condition requiring a covenant for easement or similar restriction that requires access to remain over the Malibu insight. Um, alcohol service can begin at ten A M. Delete condition forty-three. Condition forty-four be modified to allow eight maximum employees, but all um, employees must park on site. And condition fifty-four. Will be added at the end of the phrase pursuant to the procedures designated in the Malibu municipal code. And um, finding G three, delete everything after P C H. And was there a condition about a s- uh, sport court or something? I, I can quite catch that one if there was something.
That was about the lighting on the pool.
Okay, we got that one.
It was in that paragraph.
Okay.
Uh, there's one, there's one more. I'm just, I'm quickly going through this in uh, the findings. For the variance uh, in retaining wall height in excess of twelve feet. Uh, paragraph B three, there's a sentence in there that says, therefore. Approval of the variance will grant relief from a technical development standard, which is strictly applied would prohibit commercial development on the project site. That, in my opinion, should be stricken when the, when the uh, uh, resolution comes back. Along with C three, which has the same sentence in it. Those sentences should, should not be, not be retained.
B three and C three, and what was the part that has to be uh, removed? Can you give me that?
The sentence, I'll read it again. It's, it is the. Um, the sentence that starts, therefore approval of the variance will grant relief from a technical development standard, which. If strictly applied, would prohibit commercial development on the project site. Period.
Yeah. And he's eliminating restrict commercial development? Is that right?
Yes, that's right. And the, the same language appears in, in C three.
Okay.
And any other language like that when they review it?
Is a motion then to direct staff to return with a, with a resolution? Um, making these changes and more and um, any additional change required for consistency? Um, to be put on the consent calendar?
Alright, friendly amendment, if, if possible. Or you can explain this, uh, the, what really, really bothers me is the three-story. Above-grade garage. Can we? Can we at least say that this is not precedent-setting? Or something like that? Because this is, this is like changing the world.
I mean, we, we. Saying, saying something like that's not gonna do anything, you know, I mean. Every project stands on its own. It doesn't require any future change. We do need to, you know, try to interpret our code consistently. Uh, but every project is, is unique and different, particularly when there's a variance involved.
Yeah, John, I think that's one reason we're voting no.
Well, yeah, it's definitely a reason, uh, but I, I'm just trying to, you know, I can count. I'm just trying to keep. Five-story buildings from Malibu.
Yeah. Hey, there, there was a question that was left on the table here about Adrian started to look at it about the. Uh, are the expansion fields of the Malibu and, and the mo- the motel hotel overlapping? Are they basically? This was, I think Joe Drummond raised this point, right? If that's, there's no, in your view, there's no issue there?
Uh, no, uh, if, if you look at the site plan, they're showing them separate. So they're, they're not overlapping. Um, they are showing the future. For the motel separate from the, you know, the dedicated future for the Malibu.
Okay. Thank you.
So I will make that motion if you, uh, that Trevor just recited.
Second it.
Okay, so the motion is to uh, direct staff to uh, to, to return with a resolution of. Uh, with the resolution approving the, the project with the modifications. Um, as I have read and any further modifications that are required for consistency with the uh, changes made by the um, planning commission.
Yes.
Hey, Rebecca?
It would be my pleasure. So, um. Commissioner Jennings?
Uh, yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
In honor of Ned, Ned Niles, no.
Motion carries.
I never have understood.
I make a motion.
Vice Chair, I, go ahead.
I make a motion, be adjourned.
Okay.
Did I get a second?
A second.
There you go.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Now I'm hanging out.
Dissenting. Motion carries.
See, everybody in five days.